Ready to go? I mean, it's ventriloquism everywhere.
Good morning. Are you ready to get the meeting started?
Yes, let's go ahead and call a meeting to order.
Okay, give us just a second. Okay, we're ready to call the meeting to order.
Great, I'll call the meeting of the Reno City Council Workshop on 11/1. Happy November, and hopefully everyone is not still in a Halloween-induced coma. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And you know, I'd love to have Taylor Adams, the new CEO of Edon, who's joined us this morning, lead us in the pledge.
Right here? Thank you so much, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, welcome, and thanks for allowing me to put you on the spot a little bit. Madam Clerk, before we begin, I just want to sort of recognize we've got a lot of interested and diverse folks in the room. So it's always a privilege and an honor. Lieutenant Governor Kate Marshall has joined us today. Always nice to see you in the room. We've got people from a pretty broad range and cross-section for an important topic. But I'll turn it over to you, Madam Clerk, for our roll call.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We're starting roll call. Councilmember Breckis absent at this time. Dewar?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Ebert?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Shevy, absent at this time. Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Reno City Council.
Thank you so much. Let's start with public comment.
All right, our first item today is general public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings. HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash L I N K S period R E N O period G O V forward slash four zero three capital S V V O. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with Council Rule 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disruptive behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If the behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. Our first public commenter is Gordon Gosage, followed by Barry Hall, followed by Thomas Tate.
For the record, my name is Gordon Gosage of Regenesis Reno, and I'm very proud we're responsible for introducing Shane to Reno. And not surprisingly, he's created a very actionable report. A year and a half ago, I wrote this article, listing the 20 policy options adapted from the 50 policy options listed in Shane's book. I recommended taking a positive regenerative approach to exploring these options. Shane lists 27 primary recommendations and another 28 secondary. As in my first article, as in my article, let's first ask our key stakeholders. Do you support all 27 of the primary recommendations from Shane's report? If not, which ones do you specifically not support as written? Of these, how would you reword these specific recommendations to offer your support? And I guess there might be neighbors who reject all 27, but I doubt it. The conventional approach emphasizes rejection and boosts negative emotions of fear and anger. It's degenerative to our community. The regenerative process makes our community stronger by replacing conflict with cooperation. I'm certain some of the 27 recommendations have broad support. Others will obviously have supporters and opponents. The positions of housing activists and the real estate industry on rent stabilization are not a mystery. Let's not make that the first focus. Some recommendations will require input from local experts like Alicia Barber, helping us understand the issues. For example, she mentioned the need to determine specifically what is meant by allowing by right approval of multifamily infill housing except for large projects. We can have subsequent meetings for those complex issues. Other recommendations are clearly understood, yet might have significantly lopsided yet very local oppositions. And for example, a woman said online, "I live in Newlands. ADUs are not appropriate for my neighborhood." But didn't we cover that in 2018? Many recommendations revolve around vastly increasing density within the McCarran Loop. Full disclosure, I strongly support these, as in this article. Here's a few. Allow up to four units per parcel in single-family residential zones inside the McCarran Loop. Eliminate minimum parking mandates citywide. Upzone parcels with maximum homes per acre from 14 to 60. People my age who've owned their homes for many years want current low-density dominated by single families to continue indefinitely, yet 54% of our neighbors' rent. We can't continue to take away housing from them. It's not fair. And the seven of you should not shoulder all responsibility. Why don't the top employers help us? It's simply because we don't provide specific requests. You can't be responsible for everything. Look at the people in your community. Please ask us to help you. Thank you.
Barry Hall, followed by Thomas Tate, followed by Leah Sanders.
Good morning, members of the council. And my name is Barry Hall. And before you make the decision to change Reno City zoning codes, I want to encourage you and all the concerned citizens, whether pro or con, to make a visit to the Carlin neighborhood, or the neighborhood known as Carlin, Carlin Street and Sixth Streets between Elgin and Stoker, near the CVS and the new car wash that is being constructed on Seventh Street. Carlin Street is a residential street with single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and apartments. There you will be able to get a glimpse of what Reno will look like if you change the zoning laws. Sixth Street is part of the neighborhood, Sixth Street and Carlin. It is very crowded, and the street is overflowing with vehicles. Many buildings are in need of attention. I'd like to show you a photograph on the corner of Sixth Street and Elgin. If I put it here, will it?
It'll take a minute for them to put it up there and just rotate it, and then they'll help you to get it. Keep going. There you go.
Okay. When I moved to Reno nine years ago, this is what the property looked like. I took this photograph yesterday. It's been like this for nine years. It's not in my neighborhood, or I would have taken action. I don't know why it's been allowed to be such a blight on the community. Many of you might be familiar with the broken windows theory of police work. When small problems are not taken care of in a community, it's a signal to criminals that folks in the neighborhood are not paying attention or don't care. That might explain why the Carlin neighborhood is a major crime area in Reno, according to the police officer with whom I spoke, the Reno PD police officer. When you visit Sixth Street and Carlin, try to imagine your own neighborhood and ask yourself if this is what you want for Reno. A crowded street that looks like a parking lot at night with vehicles parked on every inch of the street, with garbage cans overflowing, dumpsters in the front of apartment buildings. I think a good compromise would be to allow older established neighborhoods to keep their current zoning codes, and all new construction allow for the changes you are proposing. That way, the buyer knows what they are agreeing to when they purchase their home. I also want to remind you, remind the council, that a few years ago, when this subject was being debated, a presentation by the fire department said it would be very difficult, if not impossible, to get equipment to the back of properties such as the older homes in the old northwest. Please take that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thomas Tate, followed by Leah Sanders, followed by Bill Miller.
Good morning. I'm Tom Tate. I live in the Newlands Manor subdivision of the Newlands Historical District of Ward 1. I'm here today to oppose ADUs. This seems like deja vu all over again. About five years ago, I stood here and argued against ADUs. Fortunately, the council rejected the proposal. Now we're here again discussing the same thing. It's like an unkillable zombie in a bad horror movie that keeps coming back. It's time we put a wooden stake through its heart and get rid of this bad idea forever. Yes, I know that wooden stakes are for vampires and not zombies, but I don't fear imaginary creatures. I do fear bad land use planning. ADUs are appealing because they appear to be free. No infrastructure is required, just a relatively inexpensive building, and cheap affordable housing becomes available. Just rubber stamp some simple plans, and housing magically appears. This simplistic view ignores hidden costs. I live in a house over 90 years old, and most of the houses north of me are older. The house originally had knob and tube wiring. Their sewer system is old and occasionally backs up. What could possibly go wrong if we added hundreds of new residences? Electrical distribution and sewer are especially hard to upgrade because they run behind the houses in an area with masonry walls and old trees. Costs for improvements would pass to all the ratepayers or owners of the area, not the ADU builders. Lack of planning is expensive. ADUs only work if a negligently small number of them are built. This means that they can never be a significant contributor to new housing. Why risk major costs and disruption for little gain? I believe that the best place to raise a family is a neighborhood of owner-occupied, single-family detached houses. Many people in the San Francisco Bay Area seem to agree with me since they endure brutal and crazy commutes in order to provide this for their families. Single-family zoning is a promise from the city that the neighborhood will not be densified with apartment buildings and ADUs. Changing zoning can destroy neighborhoods and breaks the promise to homeowners. Many new developments have CCNRs that prevent multifamily use, but older developments typically do not. It's not fair to oppose ADUs only on old, established neighborhoods. I've read the report by Mr. Phillips and have some comments about that. We'll defer those to after his presentation. Expect something in writing from me within a few days. I urge you to reject allowing ADUs in single-family's-owned areas. It was a bad idea five years ago, and it's still a bad idea.
Leah Sanders, followed by Bill Miller, followed by Bill Shrimpf.
Good morning. City Council, my name is Leah Sanders. It's been some years since I've been to a council meeting, though I've submitted comments on this and that via email. Forgive me if I'm a bit nervous. I attended the informative meeting clearly presented by Angela Fuss and her staff to explain the cleanup of the text of the code. Cleaning up conflicting or inconsistent regulations, grammatical errors, unintended statements seemed normal from the invitation, until I listened to the more substantive changes embedded there. I am in favor of corrections. I'm also looking for the ways the public can be informed better about surprise changes. My concern is that I am unsure of the priorities and unsure how the code has been doing so far in the housing market. Do we have feedback on what has been constructed? Have the people who need low-priced housing been surveyed about its success for them? Those questions reflect the confusion I have about where there is a need to make more units easier to build with bonuses before the public knows what the code has been doing in the past. These are my points. Please be honest with the citizens. This is not just a cleanup of the code, but new items. If you're going to make changes, please be transparent about them other than email. Maybe the RGJ, maybe Nextdoor. Perhaps there will be an opportunity for more interaction with Mr. Phillips, your consultant from California. It is scary to learn the administrative review will circumvent public comment on property of 100 units or less. The terms staff used, HUD, affordable housing, market rate, workforce, appear to be interchangeable to them and very unclear to me. Where will the public be able to give voice on project sizes that affect them? Density bonus, affordable housing by right, without a hearing, and other projects seem to be in progress. What comes first? Reno is a unique city, not a Las Vegas or New York, not Los Angeles or San Francisco. We have a wonderful natural environment to enhance as well as an evolving cityscape. I believe that interaction with the public can create consensus rather than the animosity of having things put on them. Dialogue and clear information are important. The hearing processes should be welcomed, not eliminated. For example, you might be heading toward permitting ADUs without constraints of short-term housing limits. The community may have an idea you haven't considered. Please put the public in decisions about our city. Thank you.
Bill Miller, followed by Bill Shrimpf, followed by Rob Fitzgerald.
Good morning, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. I'm Bill Miller, citizen activist on climate change. And the first thing I want to do is acknowledge you for the many forward-thinking efforts that you have made to help mitigate this crisis in our town, bring down the temperatures with trees, and other actions. And I'm here to encourage you to continue doing that with my group of like-shirted friends. And in terms of affordable housing, I would encourage you also to consider restricting no gas lines, so that it's electric only, and solar panels. Now, even though that adds a little to the cost, the buyer has no power bill. So it's a wash, and we win as far as the atmosphere. So thank you again for all the work that you're doing and just here to encourage you to do more. Thanks.
Mr. Miller, thank you for your positive comments. It's very easy because we've got a great champion for the environment, Ms. Dewar, who has really pushed us all to be better. So we're very fortunate.
Bill Shrimpf, followed by Rob Fitzgerald, followed by Tony Harsh.
Mr. Shrimpf, welcome. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. My name is Bill Shrimpf. As always, good morning. Thank you guys for being here and doing this job. I really do appreciate you guys doing it. So thank you. Today is Parte Dia de los Muertos. It's a time to recall the memories of those who are no longer with us. Memories do tend to fade over time. So I encourage all of you in this building to find some time, five, couple minutes today, to remember those who have passed. Maybe find an old picture and light a candle. Keep those memories alive. Reno has a good problem. It is a great place to live. It's still affordable by many measures, but trending in the wrong direction. So I'm happy to see the council is taking a serious look at this topic. I didn't see anything about housing in the NAB. No press releases, no calls to actions, no surveys. Nothing yet. I guess there was some of it in the code cleanup, but nothing that said, "Hey, housing." As part of your direction to staff today, I'm super excited to see how the city will encourage engagement with the public on this topic going forward. So thank you very much. Have a good.
Great comments, Bill.
Rob Fitzgerald, followed by Tony Harsh, followed by Travis Sandifer.
I just want to start by saying what you are doing and attempting to do is really helpful as a builder. I'm the one who's providing new housing, easing up on some code issues and cleaning up. Very helpful, very appreciated. Housing's a tricky subject when it comes to affordability because the harder it is to get permits and the more expensive it is at the bureaucratic level, obviously, the less affordable the housing, or the less of it, which is the same thing. I think a lot of people in some existing neighborhoods where you're proposing ADUs may not realize with or without ADUs, the densities and the number of families living in their neighborhoods is increasing. I'm not saying ADUs are the answer. Frankly, they actually compete with me. So the more ADUs, the less buyers come to my neighborhood, or less renters come to my new product. So I'm not advocating one way or another, but it is something to think about because ADUs are a solution, but there are consequences. I'm not here to speak to or for or against them, but should be considered whilst thinking about them. Your efforts in increasing density in areas where it's very easy to do and not overly controversial is great. Parking reduction, I think that also is helpful because parking takes up a lot of land. Land takes up a lot of housing. I didn't come with a big prepare speech. I was just thinking I'd sit here and listen, but I just want to get it out there. There are consequences. Don't, and I just suggest there's the real consequences. I don't think those are on the agenda here. Be careful. Occlusionary housing, rent control, those things have real serious potential long-term consequences in terms of providing housing, because they can ultimately impede it being done. Anyway, appreciate it. Good work. I'm going to hang around for a while, hear how it really, you know, what the real, you know, what the actual details and the agendas are. I think you guys are doing extraordinary work. Glad I'm on this side of the podium. I don't envy you trying to make these decisions because they're tough. Thank you.
Tony Harsh, followed by Travis Sandifer, followed by Donna Keats.
Councilmember Harsh, always welcome to have you in chambers.
Thank you so much, Tony Harsh, for the record. I am coming to you from Ground Central Halloween. So debate. We don't know if we had 2,000, 3,000, or 4,000. Trick or treaters, up for debate. I personally was out there from 4:00 to 7:30 and saw a lot of neighbors. Thank you so much for closing down those three streets. It makes, it's so much fun and so safe. So thank you, thank you very much. I'm here, as usual, to talk about process. So process, process, process. I feel like I've been talking about that for 25 years, I think I have, on one side or the other side of the podium. Just as we go through this, I want to refer you back to your NABs, back to neighborhood plans. I don't know where neighborhood plans fit in this. They were created a long time ago. I think it might be wise to look at them again, back into the real, where the neighborhoods are now, open that up if we're still using neighborhood plans. Also, what is coming out of your town hall meetings that you have? And then what's discussed at your retreat? So those were extremely valuable parts of the process, and just curious about those as well. Thank you very much. That's it.
Travis Sandifer, followed by Donna Keats.
Good morning, Travis Sandifer. I'm representing VOA in Northern Nevada. Just wanted to take a minute, given the topic for today, to both thank you and remind you about the high impact that you've had in affordable housing on a couple of our projects. The Village at Sage Street, you know about it. It's got about 200 units, and I want to remind you that it's changing lives. We've had 440 move-outs. Those folks, almost all of them end up in fair market value housing. This gives people a chance to get back on their feet, build credit, and save some money. So it's truly having an impact. And I have a quote from one of our residents there. He said, "Almost a year ago, I found myself homeless. I got evicted from my apartment. Everything about this place I like. The room is the perfect size for me right now. I've been trying to save up a bit. This is probably one of the best places I have ever lived in. I know it's not a regular apartment, but it's a good place." It's changing lives, and you guys talk is cheap, but you all have committed and invested and taken risks with us. So I want to thank you for VOA and on behalf of the community. And the other project that we're in the midst of is the Highway 40 project. And so we talked to you all about that, and it's a partnership with Northern Nevada Mental Health Services to provide housing. Mayor, I sat at a mental health conference that you spoke at, and that was deeply touching. And to see this community investing in housing for that population means the world to me. So thank you for doing that. That property is going to be sensational. We are working with architects, with contractors right now in that selection process, and we're going to make that a trauma-informed design campus. And it's going to be a resource to this community for 30 years and years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you're doing. Thank you.
Donna Keats.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Donna Keats, resident of Reno, spoken to many of you many, many times, under many circumstances. So I, again, I'm talking about process. I have many, many things to say in support of a lot of things that you're doing. This is my general public comment about process. This confounding text amendments with code cleanups is going to backfire on the back end, I think. I have, I think there's a better way to do this. I went to all your meetings along the way. I never actually saw council say, "Oh, you're giving us another list? Which is the order that this list should be in?" So leave it to staff. Okay, so they do what they can. They have a lot of things in here that they call low-hanging fruit. Those are the same things that were, quote, "low-hanging fruit" for the two years we were back and forth, public meetings about Title 18, like the density bonuses, all those things, administrative leeway, taking away public, or board comments on things in order to facilitate rushing things to development. Now, in the next last two years, did they work? Why do we need to do more of the same if they didn't work? Maybe that isn't the answer, which is what's proposed here. So you've now got a thing in front of you where staff has already gone so far with what they've doing. They've already tied it into the, quote, "code amendment", when it's actually an initiative about housing that belongs as a text amendment. So these things are all wound in together, and it's very disconcerting to me, having gone to all these meetings, then to find out, "Oh, you're going to change the very nature of single-family housing. Is that going to happen in your neighborhood or just mine?" It's really hard to know. That's where you get the fights on the back end. So if these are the things that you really want to push forward, I'm suggesting that there's a better way to approach the public and a better way to do this instead of wrapping it into a code amendment that makes it appear like you're doing a backdoor route to densification, when really you have a housing initiative that was never spelled out as exactly that or put on a priority item. And I did attend the housing workshops also. The question was, is there anything, staff's question for your motion was, is there anything on this list that you want to take off? And then council discussed a lot of things, and as always, it was approved as a bundle. Nobody took anything off the list, but the actual motion, if you go back and listen to the tape, the actual motion was to come back to council with details about all of these things, and then at that point you pick, right? That didn't happen. That was back a year ago or more. That didn't happen. So now, all of a sudden, these things are wrapped into the code cleanup. They're not cleanup items. They're amendments. They're part of initiatives. And I'd like to ask you today to actually give direction about what your priorities are separating affordable housing in the technical federal definition versus things that people who live here can't afford. Those are different things. They shouldn't be put together because you can't just say, "Let's just bypass public process on everything up to 100 units because, heck, we need more houses." That's a disservice to the people who already live here. So separate them, please, and give specific direction. That's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Thanks, Donna. I read your letter last night. Thank you.
Hello, Madam Mayor. So for with that, we have no additional public comment in the room. Additionally, no hands are raised via Zoom. So for the record, we did receive 11 comments, which were general in nature or not directly associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 31st, 2023. associated with an agenda item prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 31st, 2023. These comments were voicemail and/or written correspondence received via our Reno.gov online public comment form or by email to our office. And copies of these have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are available to the public on Reno.gov. Zero in favor, five in opposition, and six letters of concern. With that, we are closing, opening public comment A3 and moving on to item A4, approval of the agenda.
All right, thank you so much. May I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Madam Mayor, I'll second with the proviso. I understand that you will take some items out of order because at least one item, B5, was printed out of order.
Exactly. So we'll go to B5 right after this, looks like, correct?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor, on my second stand.
So the motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Madam Clerk, looks like we're going to go into item B5.
We are, from Monica Cochran.
Oh.
Monica, new last name?
Monica, what is it?
Kirch.
Kirch, Kirch, we've got to get used to that.
Me too.
Okay. Nice to see you this morning.
Good to see you. Oops. We're missing, did Nikki, did you get the new slide deck? From Christie this morning? There was an error. Okay, well, we'll just start without the intro slide. There's a nice, pretty slide before this one, so we'll ignore this one. Good morning, councilmembers, Madam Mayor, City Mayor Thornley, Monica Cochran, Kirch for the record. See, I had to get used to it also. Today, I'm here to give you some fiscal year department updates and a brief housing overview to start off the meeting. Now we'll go into this slide. For a refresher, our mission in hand is to create viable living environments for low to moderate income individuals and families. We accomplish this through a variety of goals, which are not all related to affordable housing. Some examples of some other activities that we do this through are community cleanups, improvements to community facilities, parks, and accessibility improvements throughout the city. We work towards accomplishing our mission through a variety of goals, which also align with regional goals. As you can see, three of our goals are directly related to housing. Goals one, two, and four are intended to create more units, preserve the affordable units that we have, and keep folks stably housed. Last fiscal year, six projects totaling 565 units were approved through the Washoe County Home Consortium, which the city of Reno is the lead for. And three projects were approved through council utilizing ARPA funds totaling 130 new affordable units. These included Dick Scott, which is a veterans' facility, Village 2.0, and Highway 40, which you heard about during public comment. However, I think it's really worth noting and very important to say that since 2017, council has taken action that has resulted in another 2,827 affordable units. That's almost 3,000 new affordable units since 2017 from your actions. As we know, we need all housing types. More housing of all types will take the pressure off the market at different price points, which will ultimately benefit our low-income residents and allow folks to move along the housing continuum. So I thought it was important to also show the residential certificate of occupancy that were issued last fiscal year. As you can see, there was a combination of single-family and residential or single-family and multifamily projects, which resulted in CFOs for another 2,605 units. These are all housing types. This slide lists all of the affordable units in the region and I think it just gives us a visual of the inventory. All of the units listed here total over 8,400 units with 73,45 being in the city of Reno, which is 87% of the affordable housing in the region being within the city of Reno city limits. How do we do this? Because we're amazing. The city, again, is the lead of the Washoe County, excuse me, Washoe County Home Consortium, which is charged with the administration of the Affordable Housing Municipal Loan Program. This utilizes federal home funds and state housing trust funds. These funds are allocated through an annual competitive cycle with that application actually being released today. It's also exciting that this year is the first year that these will be submitted electronically. When we transferred our rental assistance program over into an electronic portal, we've been working over the last couple of years to get some of our other programs into the same portal. So now they will be submitted that way and we won't be receiving binders that are about eight inches thick. They will all be virtually. So that's super exciting for staff. In addition to these funds, the city offers other resources to help these projects pencil. We offer sewer and building permit subsidies. Last year alone, this totaled 4.4, or excuse me, 4 million, and since its inception in 2020, has contributed to approximately 1,400 units. The city also allocates its volume cap to affordable housing, which was approximately 16 million last year and hovers usually somewhere in that 14 to 16 million dollar range. In addition, we offer density bonuses and parking reduction for affordable developments. The city has had a rental assistance program for many years, which was greatly expanded during the pandemic. Pre-pandemic, we typically provided about $600,000 in assistance. However, once we pivoted away from sheltering operations and were really able to focus more on affordable housing, we were able to enhance this program and provide more resources, including additional staff report. So just last year alone, we were able to assist over 1,400 households totaling $4.4 million in assistance. This goal is directly tied to goal number two, which is keeping folks stably housed. We do not want folks losing their place and then experiencing homelessness. As you can see, we provide assistance regionally in Reno, Sparks, and Washoe County. This slide shows the breakdown for the last fiscal year and together totals the amounts that I listed on the previous slide. So I also think it's worth noting that so far this year, for the first quarter, we have assisted over 250 households. That's just from July to September. So we are on track again to help as, probably is the same amount of households this year. So I just wanted, sorry. I just wanted to take a little bit of time and bring up some items that I pulled out of the 2022 Nevada Housing Progress Report. These call out the efforts and progress by the city of Reno. So I would just like to read a few. There were more, but I thought these ones were a good representation. Compared to other jurisdictions throughout the state of, or state of Nevada, the city has emerged as having the most affordable units in the pipeline. That's, this progress report is compared to all jurisdictions across the state. We have the strongest.
Can you repeat that?
Excuse me?
Will you repeat that?
Compared to other jurisdictions throughout the state, the city emerged as having the most affordable units in the pipeline. We've also had the strongest level of assistance and affordable units compared to need. And we also have the strongest level of support for a very low-income residence. This is super exciting. This is, I mean, this is compared to all of our other jurisdictions across the state. You know, this is really great and all of the efforts I previously discussed are showing that we are a leader in this space, but these percentages still show a lot of need and a huge gap. So I'm going to go over a brief overview of housing locally before I turn over the First, just to make sure we're all on the same page, I just wanted to go over some definitions. For the purpose of this presentation, a dwelling unit includes all housing types, whether it's multifamily, single-family. Housing affordability is the extent that residents can rent or purchase a home without being housing burdened. Affordable housing is that, excuse me, is housing that is affordable to those at 60% or less than AMI, and this is a calculation by HUD. A housing burdened is housing, is households that are paying more than 30% of their income towards their housing costs. This includes renters and owners. So again, housing that is affordable in scenarios where, is affordable in scenarios where folks aren't paying more than 30% of their income towards housing costs. If they are, they are considered to be housing burdened and the particular unit that they are residing in is not affordable to them. This slide shows a current snapshot in our area. So the current AMI, again from HUD, and this is for a family of four, is $104,400. This would be, as with HUD's calculation, $59,340 for a 60% AMI unit. The family size, this family size would typically live in a three-bedroom. So those are the examples that we've provided here. As you can see, a market rate unit in the city of Reno is about $2,300 and an affordable unit, a 60% unit, would be about $1,543 to a family in that income range. So our current inventory in the city of Reno is a little over 120,000 units, of which approximately 7,600 are considered affordable. According to the state of Nevada 2022 Housing Progress Report, we need a total of 28,815 additional, or excuse me, affordable units, which leaves additional need of a little over 21,000 units needed. These amounts are determined by analysis of households that are experiencing one or more housing problems. A housing problem is considered if they are housing burdened, if they don't have a kitchen, adequate plumbing, overcrowding, doubling up, things like that. That's what's taken into account to come up with the calculation that we need a total of 28,815 affordable units within the city. Within the region, the city of Reno has 87% of all affordable housing. Sparks has approximately 1,100 units and currently there are no units in the unincorporated Washoe County. However, I'm very happy to let you know that in Washoe County, they have broken ground on their first affordable housing unit, which is the Ridge at Sun Valley, and it will be nearly 200 units for households at 60% and below AMI, several units at the 50% level. Here's an example of homeownership in our region and what this looks like. As of September of this year, the average home price was $610,000. What this would mean in a scenario where a buyer put 10% down, with current interest rates hovering around 8%, they would need to make approximately $161,000 to afford to buy an average home in this area, which is considerably higher than our area median income. So how did we get here? We have a perfect storm of a variety of things that have happened. Of course, we had the pandemic with high unemployment, slow return to work. We have low inventory. Rents were rising. Investment properties were being brought up or bought up by investors and taken out of the market for, you know, new home buyers. We have high interest rates and high raw materials. Just to give you some examples of the increase in raw materials, concrete has increased by 43%, lumber by 35%, and steel by 94%. And just to give you what this kind of all ties together and looks like with a perfect bow or imperfect bow, I guess, is that in 2017, it cost about $215,000 per door to build an affordable housing unit, and today it costs approximately $305,000 for that same So what's happening because of this perfect storm? Fewer residents with making the median income can afford to purchase a home. Housing prices are rising faster than median income. As you can see from this chart, about a year and a half ago, 38%, 38.8% of those households could purchase a home with median income and now in 2023, 19.8% of those households can purchase a home. This is compared to the national average of 40%, so significantly less than the national average. So we're continuing to see a decline in opportunity to purchase a home with median income. What we're also seeing because of the scenario is that households that are renting are more cost-burdened. This has increased by 14% since 2018. Almost 60% of renters in 2022 are cost-burdened compared to 45.7% back in 2018. And the gap between renters and owners that are cost-burdened has also significantly increased. So just to recap, we need more units, more units of all type. Entry-level homes are unattainable. Entry-level homes allow residents to climb the housing ladder. Traditional home buyers are unable to purchase due to interest rates and home costs, which has an impact on creating generational wealth. Renters are suffering. Cost of living has increased. The cost-burnedness of renters and owners has increased between '21 and '22. And renters are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. As we can see, we need all types of housing. And that is all I have for you before I pass it along to the next presenter unless there are any questions.
Thank you so much for the background. Really appreciate that. Just to remind everyone, this is a problem all across the country.
Yes.
Actually, in other, in other countries as well. I was just reading a whole white paper on that. There's another story here too, because I hear it a lot outside and that's on the building aspect. I know you didn't include any of that. I think Dan Morgan is here. I would just love for you to weigh in on the building side and just some of the challenges that you've seen because we continue to hear that materials are expensive. And so there's a, there's, you know, not just this capacity challenge, but there's other challenges that aren't included in this. And I don't know, maybe, Dan, you want to talk just a little bit about what your industry is seeing because, you know, noticing on how did we get here? The other thing is that we don't talk a lot about, but Reno, Boise, Phoenix, they're all breakout cities. A lot of people in the pandemic said, we want to live where there's a great quality of life. And so we really saw a lot of people moving here and building and investing here. So we became incredibly attractive. So, you know, that poses obviously some advantages and some challenges at the same time. Dan, would you just come and just give us a couple of minutes of sort of your industry? Because I think we saw a picture on that side, but I think there's another, you know, side to things that people never hear about.
Good morning, Madam Mayor.
Good morning.
Thank you for putting me on the spot.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, you just touched on something that's really interesting. And if you look at the Intermountain West of the United States, post-pandemic, we've seen a lot of growth and a lot of people leaving large urban metropolitan areas and wanting to migrate, for lack of a better term, to the Mountain West. In combination with that, you know, we've seen significant increases in costs from everything from materials to supply. Land costs have continued to grow. Labor costs are very significant and the availability of trades, specifically in Northern Nevada, is a great challenge to a number of our builders. So it's, I really don't like this word because I think it's very cliche, but it really is a perfect storm throughout Northern Nevada and throughout the Northwest portion of the state. And Southern Nevada is suffering from some of the same problems, but... But, uh, you know, a lot of headwinds, a lot of headwinds. And we've got some very dedicated builders and, and developers throughout this region that, you know, their whole purpose in life is to provide a home for a family. And they're doing every, we are doing everything we can. Part of the reason why we've got a pretty good turnout here today is to listen and to learn, you know, what you all are thinking about and how we can assist you and how the Builders Association and the builders in the region and developers can assist you and let's develop some innovative policy, innovative approach to how do we provide families with homes?
Well, thank you.
Did that answer that?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the background because I think, like I said, there's another story there that a lot of people don't hear about. And the other thing is the workforce.
The, the, the workforce is a big challenge and, you know, that's, it, it's a challenge across industries. And I wish Taylor were still here and he could talk about a little bit of, from the economic development perspective. He and I have had a number of conversations about that, both on his workforce development side and to making sure that, you know, our builders have good, quality, well-trained tradespeople to build those homes.
All right, well, I appreciate you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Sorry, sorry for that. All right, Monica, great job. Thank you so much.
All right, Madam Mayor, at this time, we're going to move back to item B one, boy one. And we do have public comment on this item.
Okay, fantastic.
Our first public commenter is Bill Shrimp, followed by Mary K. Becken.
Hello, good morning again, Bill Shrimp. Thanks for taking B five first. I think that was a great report. It really puts a, lets us know what we're talking about today and the challenges. The report you're about to read and get a presentation on, Shane Phillips, the author, although I appreciate his work, thought, input. And it's important to have academics involved in the conversation because they are often less constrained in their ideas and thoughts than many of us may otherwise be. As a, as an academic only, he has never actually ran anything other than an academic research unit in a university. From what I can find, he has zero real-world experience. He is, however, an excellent researcher and has some excellent ideas, while others can only be chalked up to something that an academic not living in the impact area might come up with. Bottom line, please don't take this report as gospel. He does have some very valuable insight and novel ideas, but again, he's not a practitioner. And one thing from his report that I do think he got completely correct, and I quote, Reno officials in partnership with residents, businesses, civic organizations are faced with the opportunity to leap ahead of peers, taking action boldly in proportion to the challenges before them, end quotes. I'm excited to see what that engagement looks like. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Mary Kay Becken, followed by Donna Keats.
Good morning, I'm Marika Becken. I live in Pleasant Valley, which is currently in the Reno sphere of influence and subject to rapidly encouraging annexation. I also own rental properties in Reno proper, and I have some comments today about attempts to increase the access to this quote affordable housing. You guys run these a little different because normally we have the staff in Washoe County. We have the staff presenting the whole report, so everybody's just seeing what they're talking about. So I hope these, you can follow where I'm making my little comment here. The, my understanding of B one is that it's the issue on compensating developers for infrastructure requirements, that portion. I hope that's correct. It seems odd to me to want to compensate developers for infrastructure requirements. Why should developers be paid for providing infrastructure that their money-making projects require? While existing residents may also benefit from the improvements, perhaps that is compensation for now being surrounded by new dense housing. This action would seem to me to reduce green space within the city and would not be something that the people in those communities would, that would enhance their living situations and their enjoyment of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Keats.
Hi, it's me again, Donna Keats, Reno resident. I didn't realize you were doing public comments before we heard the presentation, so I don't have any details outlined. But this goes, I do have comments from what I saw in the staff report that says there's no recent council action relevant to this item. I find that kind of curious because this also, this list of things in process, ton of them are in your code cleanup. They're not things that don't, you know, if there's a whole apples and oranges.
Can you adjust the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
It moves all the way around like this.
Okay, where do you want it? Can you hear me now?
Anywhere we can hear you.
Yeah, but I don't know where you, can you hear me here?
It's getting better, yes. But this moves anywhere you want it to go.
I don't know where you need it to be, that's my problem.
Closer.
That's great.
Is this all right?
Yeah, much better.
Can I have my minute back?
Yep.
Thank you. Anyway, okay, so on the staff report for item B one, probably half of the things in here are in your zoning code cleanup, which makes it not be no prior council relevant action. It's the apples and oranges problem that you've got going here. And I read through the consultant's report, there are a ton of really great things in there that could be really useful. And a lot of them are things that have come up and never come to fruition in terms of your priorities on your council, like deal better with your infrastructure. We've had proposals downtown area, midtown area, where the complexes couldn't be built because of the rotting sewer lines. Okay, so we're talking about, let's go mash a ton of things here and make these things be three to five stories tall in midtown because we're going to change the zoning code. We don't have the infrastructure to support it. We're going to have more people coming in, reporting a fail because our downtown infill area can't support what we're trying to do with it. So I think some of this stuff, all this stuff is on the list as kind of a justification for low-hanging fruit code cleanups where it doesn't belong. It's really an initiative, but if you go through the details of that report, the things that are not on here, there are some very good recommendations about funding, where to start, infrastructure, fee structures, lots of things like that, that from my reading this report, seem to be really good places for you to start because right now you're just like throwing things on the wall. Let's give, we only gave them forty-five percent bonus increases for, for over sixty percent. Let's give them eighty percent. And let's add a line so that density increases don't count towards hillside development density limits, which is in your code cleanup. Uh, why do you have hillside development? I mean, there's a lot of strange things going on here in the background. And if you need to go do a priority list, look at your infrastructure. Look at what we're really talking about. And I can also say, as an aside, not on this item, you'd get a heck of a lot more support if these things were actually truly citywide projects. Because you just run up in so much resistance because you're trying to slam it all in the same place, everywhere where you don't actually have the, I had the orange pipe that collapsed. Everybody does who lives down there. You, you gotta deal with this. And there are some things in this report that are, that I think would be helpful to consider, not the list of easiest fixes that you're being presented with today as if you've never heard these things before because you have and you haven't prioritized them. So that's my off-the-cuff comment about item B one. I thought I would hear the presentation first, but it's okay.
All right, thanks, Donna.
All right, Madam Mayor, we do not have any hands raised in Zoom. And so with that, we're going to close public comment. For the record, I would like to note that we did receive one comment directly associated with this agenda item prior to four P M. yesterday. And it was one letter in opposition that has been distributed to the Reno City Council and is a part of the permanent record. So our presenter on this item is Angela Foose.
All right, good morning, Angela.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Angela Foose, Assistant Director with Development Services. It is my pleasure today to introduce our next speaker, Shane Phillips. For those of you who have not heard of Shane Phillips, he wrote a book called The Affordable Cities. The Affordable Cities looks at cities across the nation and it looks at the housing crisis. Everything from the, the high cost of housing and also the instability of housing that we see. These are some of the things that Monica touched on that are unique to, to Reno, but also again, something that other cities are dealing with. Outside of writing that book, he's also involved in a, a program called The Housing Initiative. This is a program out of UCLA where they do research and, and strategies to come up with ideas for how we can deal with these kinds of issues, whether it's finding other ways for developers to, to finance their projects or for cities to finance their infrastructure, also looking at some zoning regulations. So these are things that he studies with his team all day, every day. So it is with my great pleasure that I get to introduce Shane. But I also want to take a step back and, and tell you why we brought Shane to the city of Reno. So it was about a year ago, we had had two housing workshops with council. And, and we were saying, well, are we doing enough? Are we moving that needle enough? You know, there's many things we could be doing, but what should we be doing? So we reached out to Shane and said, can you come as really an outsider? Take a look at our city. Start with the regional plan policies. Start with our reimagine Reno master plan policies that talk about infill and talk about density. We also wanted you to look at our zoning code. Again, there's lots of things we are currently doing, but can we be doing more? We also had him go a step further. We had him meet with staff and we had him meet with developers. And he had conversations to say, developers, what are you seeing as barriers to housing? Whether it's staff not processing your entitlements fast enough, whether it's building permits taking too long, whether it's the, the high, you know, inflated costs of, of supply. So he, he really went above and beyond, not just looking at our policies and our regulations, but asking the folks that are building the housing, what can we as a city of Reno do to be, to be better and to help them? So the product then is a seventy-page report. And again, our direction to Shane was think outside of the box. Look at other cities, look at other jurisdictions, but also make it Reno-focused. Don't copy and paste what Cincinnati is doing or what Boise is doing. Look at Reno and look at our needs and help us come up with some solutions. So that's how we got to where we're at today. Again, Shane has about a fifteen-minute presentation. There, there's no formal direction that you need to give Shane. We're hoping that you can ask him questions, get some feedback from him. And then next I'll come up and present about some of the things that we're currently doing to support some of the initiatives that Shane is bringing up in his presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Angela, and we're excited to meet Shane. We're excited to see your presentation. I really appreciate you doing this because I think it's important to have a different set of eyes. And a lot of times also, you know, it seems like we can't do anything right, whether we're building or we're not building, both sides hate us, right? And so it's really nice to have a different perspective and maybe we are doing everything wrong. And I think it's important that we look at ourselves, but having someone on the outside look in is a lot more beneficial because I think a lot of the times, unfortunately, staff also sort of gets incredibly criticized whenever we're dealing with this issue. So, and I know that sometimes it can be polarizing, but I, I think it just makes such a world of difference when you have someone that's not biased or doesn't work for the city. So I appreciate you being forward-thinking. Thank you.
Please join me in giving Shane a warm welcome.
Welcome to Reno. Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Am I in the right place here?
I think you are. It moves anywhere you want it to be.
So I hear. All right, well, Madam Mayor, council members, it is really a pleasure to be here and to share a, a little bit of the work that I've been doing over the past year. I'm going to jump right in here and just, you know, quickly show you an outline of the report and really just draw your attention to a couple sections here, which is the challenges, the kind of the barriers to affordability and the recommendations. That's the, it's the meat of the report and it's going to be the focus of my presentation today.
Before you do that, would you do me a kindness? We've not met before and one of the speakers sort of, I think, impugned that academics were not someone to place our trust in. So I'd just like you to share a little bit about your background. Because I've read it, I know what it is. It's extensive, certainly isn't all academic. We have a, I think, a tendency as human beings that sometimes when we don't like what the message is, then the issue is take issue with the bringer of the message or we denigrate intellectuals over persons who have some kind of experience in the field. You seem to have both of those. So might you share a little bit about your background with us?
Sure, sure. Yeah, and I appreciate that. So I don't really know where to start. I've actually done a lot of non-academic things. I didn't kind of shift into even urban planning until my mid twenties. Worked as a cable installer for a couple of years for Comcast, worked at UPS as a loader and a sorter and then a supervisor for a few more years. Those aren't super relevant, but it's, it's experience for sure. Delivered pizzas when I was in school. But I went back to school, got my bachelor's in biochemistry, was planning to go to medical school, but while working in a research lab, like a tuberculosis research lab, ended up kind of developing an interest in cities because I'd just moved to Seattle from living my whole life in the suburbs. And that's sort of what motivated me to start thinking about urban planning. And that's how I ended up in Los Angeles through grad school. And since living in Los Angeles, you know, I started out as an intern in City Hall for a year. Then I worked for a, a, a nonprofit consultant for another two and a half years, including past graduation. Then I worked for a downtown L. A. Business and Civic Advocacy Organization for another two and a half years. And I've been at UCLA for about four years. So I've only been technically an academic for four years or so and, but it's been a lot of fun, in part because I get to do stuff like this and I get to kind of throw everything out there and not have to restrain myself quite as much. I represent really only myself and so I can, you know, put out the, the kind of controversial ideas that I think are what is actually necessary. And I can take the criticism, but it won't cost me my job, so that's okay.
No, I appreciate that. And I, I think your colleagues at UCLA probably don't hold it against you that you were a USC grad.
Yes, yes.
You know, fight on.
I've been all over the PAC twelve, which is no more. Yeah, my undergrad was University of Washington as well. I'll take, I'll take the, they're paying me though, you know, UCLA, go UCLA. All right, well, um, so yeah, and feel free to interrupt with questions. And of course, I'm happy to answer any at the end of it too. But I want to just give a, a little bit of the approach to this first, which is, you know, first off, this is really about identifying high-level barriers to affordability and then opportunities for reform and emphasizing local action to the extent possible. This is by no means exhaustive, but it is fairly thorough. I also, you know, especially based on some of the comments I heard, I want to, I want to make sure folks understand that like these are recommendations. I don't anticipate all of them being implemented. I don't, even if they were, they certainly would not be implemented immediately or exactly as I've written them. So it's really intended to be guidance first and foremost and, and, and thoughts, things to think about as you do this work and develop context-sensitive solutions. So I also want to be, you know, transparent that, you know, I live in Los Angeles and I think people have associations with that, which are mostly correct. And I'm not here to tell you to be more like Los Angeles. I study places all over the country, on the academic side and just kind of the real-world example side. And if anything, my like greatest lesson from Los Angeles and California is what not to do. And so I am here to kind of help you or hopefully help you avoid making a lot of the same mistakes, which really boil down to let's just sprawl out forever until there's no land left over and then, then we have no answer for what comes next. So those of you who have gone through the report will notice that there is a really heavy, heavy emphasis on infill housing supply and housing supply generally, but especially infill. And I want to just kind of give some reasons for that. So one is just that housing is never affordable in places where it is in short supply. It is not the only thing that matters for affordability, but it is a necessary ingredient for affordability. The Reno city government also just has a lot more authority over supply in terms of enabling, you know, the production of housing than it does over stability policies like rent stabilization because of Dillon's rule and subsidy policies, which are important. But, you know, cities can only achieve so much and a lot of that money ultimately needs to come from the state and federal government. Infill housing is also just more affordable by design. It is, has lower land costs, the units tend to be smaller on average and just more diverse in their, in their size generally. And I'll also add that in this report and just in a lot of my work, I place a real emphasis on smaller scale infill housing. And we'll get into that in a little bit later. My notes are kind of the wrong size here. Lastly, infill supports a lot of the goals that are outlined in the reimagine Reno master plan, from mobility to transportation to health to budget resiliency. It is, it is complimentary to all of these goals and is, you know, specifically highlighted as a priority. I also want to be sure to acknowledge that, you know, compared to many other cities, especially in the western part of the U. S., the city of Reno has done a pretty good job of building housing. It, it builds a lot. In some ways, it is just a victim of its own success because it has increased its jobs even faster. And housing has not kept up. So over the past five, I think from, what do I got, twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two, jobs increased by thirteen point three percent and the housing stock increased by ten point six percent. Might not seem like a lot, but that does amount to thousands of units in a deficit that was already existing that has just grown larger. And coming back to infill, there is an opportunity. And coming back to infill, there is an opportunity by directing this growth inward to the extent possible to, for one, have control over what it looks like because it's within your boundaries. But also to, you know, support your existing neighborhoods. There are certainly costs to growth, but there are, of course, costs to not growing as well and not building to to kind of meet future needs. And so, you know, there's a there's a way for this to work to the city's benefit for sure. What could infill housing look like? I always like to start with this image from Optico's design, but really, you know, it can take many forms. I think there are very good reasons to prioritize prioritize those smaller buildings, which can be anything from accessory dwelling units all the way up to, you know, three and four story apartment and condo buildings. It's often called missing middle because over the past several generations, really, not a lot of it has been built. It's in the middle range and it is missing from our development environment, from our cities. What we have tends to be things that were built, you know, fifty plus years ago in many cases. And I should say there is also certainly a place for larger scale buildings. It's just this is kind of a sweet spot in many ways because infill, missing middle housing tends to have lower land costs than single family homes, but also lower per unit construction costs than larger buildings. So from the affordability perspective, there's real advantages there. Just a few more examples. I feel like it's useful just to show, you know, what this can look like. So here on the left is a cottage court. These are from all over the country, not from Reno specifically, just just so folks are aware. These can be, you know, cottage court, bungalow court, they're different designs. On the right are kind of more modern townhouses. On the left here is kind of a more traditional mid low rise apartment building. And on the right are stacked duplexes. So rather than these units being side by side, you also see three story triplex versions of these all over the country. But again, most were built prior to World War Two. And then on this slide, we have a live work building on the left with retail on the ground floor and then a pretty typical mid rise apartment building and a kind of more modern design on the right. Trying to show a range of aesthetics here in these examples, but they really are just examples. So please don't interpret this as as giving you design guidance because I am not the person to do that. So getting into the two sections of the report I mentioned at the top, barriers to affordability and recommendations. I identified five big picture areas for reform and I structure my analysis and and recommendations around those. So those categories are approval, streamlining and interagency coordination, incremental and missing middle, infill housing production, and then infrastructure planning and development fee reform. And finally, displacement protections and housing preservation and zoning development and other code standards. So I think it was Gordon who mentioned there were twenty seven total recommendations. They're in seventeen recommendation categories and they're distributed across all five of those of those categories. Here, because we don't have a ton of time or I don't have a ton of time to present anyway, I'm going to focus on six of those recommendations, which fall under four of the five categories. Within the first category, I'll discuss facilitating improved, we missed that, there we go, improved regional and interagency coordination. Also in that category is adopting objective standards and by right approvals where possible. Next up are two recommendations in that second category, which is legalizing ADUs and increasing allowable density in your existing lower density multifamily zones. Third up here, oh geez, is updating the capital plan to better manage offsite infrastructure improvements. And in the fourth category, I'll talk about protecting the existing housing stock because I, you know, this is one of multiple that are not about building more housing, but in some way protecting what we have or increasing revenues for them, controlling rents in other ways. For each of these recommendations, I'll quickly summarize the challenges that I identified in the report, the impact that those challenges have on housing affordability and other city goals, and then some proposed solutions. So first up, this is the one that won't get me in trouble, hopefully. The city has actually a really exceptional standard to turn around the review of project proposals within ten days and they consistently meet that goal. Unfortunately, many non city agencies that have some role in housing review or approval or connection, they don't really share that urgency and, you know, or or have as much concern for how their practices affect the cost and speed of what's get what gets built. So as a consequence, projects face delay and unpredictable costs. And housing is ultimately delivered more slowly and less affordably and sometimes not at all. So the proposed recommendation here is is pretty straightforward. It's to start out by organizing a round table of these agencies involved in housing approvals and to try to establish some shared understanding of the importance of housing and housing affordability and how their work has an impact on that and try to identify and resolve some of the drivers of that cost and delay. Next up. So objective standards and by right approvals. Subjective standards and discretionary review, where projects may be subject to disapproval, even if they comply with city codes and guidelines, leads to a lot of confusion and uncertainty. And that's not just on the part of the builders, but also the public. The impact of that is, you know, again, delay and costly revisions for many of these projects. And it increases risk. And that risk has direct implications for project feasibility, even if you can't easily assign a number to it. So all else equal, a project with a greater risk of rejection or unanticipated fees or mitigation requirements will need to target a higher income bracket to justify its construction. And that in turn will mean fewer homes and higher prices. One solution to this is adopting objective design and development standards, which, you know, sometimes is referred to as a checklist approach and I'm not on the right slide, I apologize. And also allowing by right or ministerial approvals, as they're sometimes known, for smaller and medium sized projects. I do want to be, you know, very clear here that, and I emphasize this in the report as well, that this does not mean there is no role for public input or for your input. Instead, it's what it really can do is allow the city staff and council to redirect their time and attention and money toward neighborhood planning and really engaging with that in a bigger and more kind of impactful way and then adhering to those plans once they are developed. Next up is legalizing accessory dwelling units. So challenge here is that, you know, many neighborhoods prohibit any kind of building except single family detached housing. And in most cases, pretty much all cases, single family homes are more expensive than the alternatives. The impact there is that, you know, more affordable housing choices are unavailable in many locations and homeowners' properties just can't adapt to their changing needs. So this isn't just about other people, but the homeowners themselves. If they want to make space for an aging parent or an adult child, if they themselves are aging and maybe want to downsize into the smaller unit, if they just want to add space or earn rental income, I think these are justifiable goals as well. My recommendation here is is legalizing ADUs on residential land citywide. Doesn't have to be citywide, of course, but I think there are benefits to that that I discussed in the report. And at the same time, you know, legalization itself is not always enough. You do really need to have these projects be able to be permitted in a fast, predictable and inexpensive process, especially since the developers are essentially homeowners themselves. They're not, you know, super experienced. So again, some some ADU examples, kind of older style, newer style. Few more here, you know, these are all one story. They they can be taller, they needn't be. There's a lot of choice you can make in terms of size setbacks, all these kinds of things. Next up, fourth recommendation of the six I'm I'm talking about here today is upzoning your lower density multifamily zones. So Reno zoning code is actually, I think, one of its strong points. It's has a pretty sizable share of the city that is zoned for multifamily housing of some kind. The MF fourteen, twenty one and thirty zones account for nearly twenty percent of parcels in the city. There are many cities in the US where eighty percent is just single family zoning, so this is significant. And just to be clear, the the names there refer to the maximum base densities of fourteen units per acre, twenty one units per acre and thirty units per acre, which is really only two, three, four times more than single family housing. The challenge is that these densities are a bit too low and in most cases, they're not going to justify redevelopment on a parcel that already has something built on it, which anywhere in the middle of the city is going to be pretty much everything. The result there is that, you know, even though many of these parcels are right in the heart of the city, didn't mean skip that, sorry, their densities are too low to warrant redevelopment. So a lot of valuable urban land that is nominally for higher density housing goes underutilized and you up you end up with more pressure to grow out rather than up. And so it does have impacts on on the outer neighborhoods as well. So the solution I propose here is is rezoning those MF fourteen and twenty one zones to a higher density of at least thirty units per acre and then rezoning what is currently MF thirty to something like forty five to sixty units per acre. And I should note that these are, you know, units per acre on the parcel. When you take into account roads and sidewalks and other spaces, the actual density of the neighborhoods is quite a bit lower. The MF fourteen, I'm this is just a view of the kind of middle center of the city. These zones exist everywhere, but just to give you an idea of where they're located. So these are the lower density multifamily zones that account for eight percent of parcels citywide. And then you've got a little closer in are the MF thirty ones. These are really in many cases right up against the densest parts of your neighborhoods, but they're zoned in such a way where they're probably going to stay exactly as they are. Fifth up, updating the capital plan and infrastructure fees. So the challenge that I identify in the report after conversations with a lot of different stakeholders is is this offsite infrastructure question. And this is, you know, in many ways, one of the more unique things I've identified here. These are things like rebuilding or upgrading an old sewer or water line that might serve an entire neighborhood as a condition of approval. So requiring developers to make improvements to infrastructure is entirely reasonable. I think it's important to to clarify that since their projects do put increased demand on that infrastructure. And sometimes that demand may actually exceed the capacity of what the that infrastructure was built to sustain. The challenge is not that these requirements exist, but that for infill developers in particular, the costs are both highly unpredictable and sometimes out of proportion to the impact of that project specifically. So this again is a matter of risk where builders really have to budget for the worst case scenario for offsite requirements. And that renders some projects that if they knew in advance how much it cost it would cost, would have been feasible. But instead, they don't go forward. And that means not only fewer homes and worse affordability, but also less tax revenue in the future. And those projects contribute nothing to the infrastructure that they would have otherwise done. So the solution here is, I think, you know, it's a more challenging one. And there's a lot of detail in the report on how this could be approached. And I think there are different ways of approaching it. But I think it starts with a capital plan that has a better, actually, you know, has a plan for end of life replacement and repair costs of your underground infrastructure in particular. And then using that plan to determine what developers should contribute to these improvements. A key point I want to make here is that in some projects, for some developers, their costs would go down relative to what they pay now. For others, it would go up because this is the challenge with an unpredictable process is some kind of get away with nothing, providing nothing because they don't cross some sort of arbitrary threshold where others do just because of when they happen to to build their project. So the process for this can be, you know, both more fair and predictable. And the fees paid by developers can actually be used in different ways than they are now. Right now, whatever infrastructure gets improved is essentially wherever a developer happens to propose a project. And if you have the opportunity to pool these funds and actually invest in more kind of neighborhood scale projects, not just digging up one street at a time, I think there's real benefits to that. Lastly, as I said, this is not all about building more housing. You also have to preserve the housing that you've got to the extent possible. And one way to do that is to make sure that short term rentals are adequately regulated. Right now, they're mostly unregulated in the city of Reno. And when they're unregulated, these STRs can end up taking a meaningful amount of housing off of the market for long term occupants. So an impact of that is, you know, if short term rentals increase over time, as they have in many, many places, it's going to mean fewer options and higher prices for the folks who want to rent or buy here. The solution I recommend here, which is commonly adopted, is to adopt restrictions on particularly the use of full units and units that are rented as short term rentals year round. The specifics, I have, you know, discussed several, but at the end of the day, this is really just about ensuring that short term rentals are not more lucrative than renting a unit for a long term occupant. So that is all I wanted to share. I apologize, I've been skipping this one, but not that one. This was the short term rentals. That is all I wanted to share, just leaving it on this slide for some kind of reminders of what we discussed, but happy to take any questions from here on. Thank you.
Shane, thank you so much. Great presentation. I can't wait to dive into the rest of the identifiers. I'm curious, I know with the short term rentals, you see oftentimes, I think, in other cities, a code that says they must be occupied thirty days or longer. Is that typically how you're seeing cities deal with that challenge? Because that is a really big concern.
That is one way. The more common way I've actually seen has been to just say you cannot rent them for more than hundred and twenty days, hundred and eighty days, some amount of days. That basically makes it, you know, less profitable because it's a lot more work to run a short term rental. And if you're not making more money, people are just going to rent them, you know, or sell them to to someone who wants to occupy them.
And out of curiosity, how many cities do you think you've studied?
Oh, I mean, I'm not seeking out specific cities at any given time, but I've looked at policies from hundreds for sure.
Hundreds. And I'm just a little curious, if you had to grade Reno, where would we be? Give us a grade.
Well, I should say no one gets an A, like no city is doing a great, amazing job on everything.
That means you're you're tough, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not grading on a curve, I guess. Probably a C, but I would say eighty percent of cities are between a D and a C. Or actually, probably thirty plus percent of cities are an F. So I think the fact that the city has done quite a bit on production is really important. And it 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 can and should do more, in part because it faces kind of unique pressures. And, you know, you've done an amazing job of attracting a lot of economic growth and jobs. But, you know, that that necessitates housing to complement it.
You know, the the media headline will be Reno gets a C in housing.
You asked.
But we would be, so it sounds like, though, we're doing a pretty decent job.
You were doing better than most cities, I think, as I said. You know, a city I would point to that's done a lot of positive things in the past several years that is a similar size is Minneapolis.
I was going to say Minneapolis.
They, but they actually have built less housing than you have over the last five or six years. And their rents only went up one percent. And I think part of the reason for that is, you know, if they had built much less, the rents almost certainly would have gone up a lot more. They built a lot for the demand that they have. You just have a lot more demand and Minneapolis is surrounded by many places and you're kind of off on your own.
It's ridiculous.
That's true, too.
And it's not on the West Coast. I could go on and on.
Absolutely.
But their mayor wouldn't like that. But thank you so much. I think it's incredibly informative. Love to have you back.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions from the council? I'll start with you, Councilwoman Niebert. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have some questions. So in your recommendations, I see that there's some comments about developer impact fees. Where do we fall, you know, in in hundreds of cities that you've reviewed? Where do we fall with developer impact fees in comparison?
To be clear, I'm not studying every one of these things for hundreds of cities. But from what I've seen, I would say, again, it's it's challenging because there's so many people at the polls. So, I mean, there are cities that on a single project, these are like the California type cities that are charging fifty thousand, eighty thousand, a hundred dollars, a hundred thousand dollars or more in in total impact fees across a million, you know, all these different areas. And then there are many cities that are are charging close to nothing. But I would say you're you're at the 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 middle to lower end.
Okay, so the other C cities, where would you say we're at with the other C level cities?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, I don't, I I can't, I don't have like an idea of all the C cities in my head right now. But I would say Reno's fees are not really its problem. I'll I'll put it that way.
Okay, well, it kind of is because we're lacking in infrastructure. So trying to figure out how we bridge that gap to get where we need to be with our infrastructure.
I meant to say Reno's fees are not too large. I meant to say Reno's fees are not too large necessarily. And so what I'm really looking at is kind of the mix of fees for sure and whether infill warrants smaller fees. Because they also have longer term budget impacts that are positive. So that's, you know, kind of part of it, but I think, you know, the. The bigger problem with fees is when they're unpredictable and when they come early. The amount is important, of course, but when they could be a hundred thousand or ten thousand dollars per unit and you don't know. Which is not the case here, to be clear, but that's really where it can get you in trouble.
Okay. So again, that's not really relevant to my question. I just want to know where we fall in, in those in comparison. Where impact fees are because as I said, we're, we're kind of behind in our infrastructure. It's a serious problem in my ward. So just curious as to where we could kind of fill that gap with. Impact fees, you know, if we're doing these changes and also if, if there's a recommendation here to reimburse developers for impact fees. You know, if, if we're not where we should be, where we're charging impact fees and there's a recommendation to reimburse developers with impact fees, that is an issue. So if we could get a little bit better numbers on that, that would be helpful.
I'm happy to, to find a, a good list of kind of the range the different cities have for you. Again, I think the, the real question is, how do you? I think it is entirely possible to have in some cases higher fees. I'm not necessarily recommending this, but I think it's worth looking into. Higher fees, but then some of that is reimbursed through tax abatements or other things over time where you get that money you need upfront to make those improvements. But then again, recognizing that if you didn't have these abatements, maybe that project would never happen, that kind of thing.
Okay. Yeah. But that's where it comes in where we, we need to see where we fall in because, you know, if we're still way behind other cities that are still considered C cities. We're still more attracted to developers. They're still going to come here and build here, but we need to make sure that when they're doing that, they're not unfairly affecting the people that already live here. By not contributing to the infrastructure that needs to support all that new development that's coming in, whether it's ADUs or, or whatever it is. That we need to have the infrastructure to support the potential growth that we're having. And, and we do need the growth to support, you know, the demand for housing, but we need to make sure we balance that with what the community needs as well.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to move on. Councilman Dur, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Very interesting. And as you said, provocative and controversial. So let's start teasing this apart a little bit on some of your recommendations. The first thing you talked about was infill and I was struck because you said that, and you talked about missing middle. And we've heard this term, I would say for at least five years, but what you contended was that. Infill has lower land costs and lower construction costs. And yet we still have a result, even with lower costs, that we're missing this middle housing. And I want to understand why you think it's so. If it's cheaper, easier to build, in your opinion, not necessarily developers opinion. Cause I hear different, differently from them. What, what's your take? I'm going to ask three questions because I am short on time here. You recommended as a low hanging fruit interagency coordination and I want to get some better understanding of how we might do that. You said, we're very good on reviewing things timely, but maybe others don't share our urgency. And I want to understand that. And then I guess I'll just on a third is. On ADUs, you said you'd like to see them everywhere. At the same time, you said STRs need to be limited. And I'm wondering, do you have general specific recommendations on ADUs? So starting with the missing middle, even if you could address that.
Yeah. So the, the reason missing middle is, is not being built for the most part is it's not legal to build it. That scale of development is, is infeasible. So that was part of my recommendation for upzoning the multifamily zones that exist now. It's not that, you know, if you have, say a mixed use zone, which, you know, we have in, in midtown, for example, or in downtown. These are parcels that allow unlimited height, very high FAR, maybe unlimited FAR. I, I have to go back to my notes. But like you can build a very, very large building there, but because the demand is very high and because you can build a very large building there. You're not going to build a four-story apartment because you just paid ten million dollars for the land. And so this is really the issue is you have the zoning for the very big buildings and you have zoning for a building that might be, you know, a couple stories tall. And the, the stuff in the middle is not really feasible.
Well, okay. I'm just going to interrupt. I'm a little confused because I thought you didn't, you just said these were lower land costs, not higher. You just said this minute that they're higher land costs. So people are driven to build more part, more units per acre because to offset the cost of the acre.
Right.
Right? So.
It's, it's land cost per unit, per unit that you can build.
Okay. Well, let me just, I asked some questions, but let's just address this for a minute. Near where I live and in my ward, there are apartment complexes that historically have been perceived to be the most dense development in Reno. It's right on Moana and Plumas for up to forty units per acre. And there have been downsides that people have spoken about frequently, such as not enough open space for all those people. Very small park nearby, very unattended to, very little parking, a lot of crime in that neighborhood. And so it seems like the development pressures, the living pressure of living so close in an environment like Reno, we're not in downtown LA. Is, is at odds, I guess, with our culture and our expectations of living. And so what I've heard our actual planner say is we're never going to go there again. And when I first got on council, I'm starting my 10th year. They said, we will never do this level of dense development in Reno. Now this was eight, seven, eight years ago. We'll never do it again because the results of the people, the impacts on the people are not good. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I, I certainly agree that there are trade-offs to any approach. And I think some of this can be resolved by planning, certainly open space issues. For example, you know, density with the right planning can allow you to actually increase. Open space and shared open space because you can build up taller here and you can clear space here for a park or what have you. But yeah, these, these costs are absolutely real, but from the perspective of the tenants living in those apartments. I think, you know, I would say that they are living there for a reason and not elsewhere. And all things considered, that is the, the mix of, you know, amenities and cost and value that they've chosen to go for. And I think if you didn't have that option, not to say that that is the model by any means, but if that housing development was not there. I think the question would be where would they live instead? Because they probably can't afford a single family home. Will they have to, you know, leave the region? Will they have to move to the edge of the, you know, the metro area and commute in every day? There are consequences and costs to that as well. So it really is about every approach has costs and it's just kind of looking at them head on.
Okay. And I'll just add since I'm way over time.
Move on.
Just something to think about when you address the other questions is you talked about neighborhood planning as a comparative piece. And I'd love to hear about that later. So that, because I haven't seen that level of planning happening in Reno.
Okay. Vice Mayor Reese, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Phillips, thank you. I, I read your book. I found it very informative. I've followed you on Twitter for a number of years now. And I watched some of the comments and the, in discussions. So there are always some level of interest to people who are in the position to make some decisions about all of this. I think I want to, without first in this first pass, I don't necessarily want to go into any specific slide, but I sort of want to understand. Your experience with communities. You've pointed, of course, to a range of communities, some which you have studied, probably some which you've visited, some which you have studied to, or visited to study. I am trying to understand that if we make any of the choices that we make along the route, and certainly no choices are to be made today. It's a workshop. We're trying to get some ideas going and, and we've been having workshops on this topic for a number of years. How do we know they're going to work? Like I, I heard one commenter who I think was a mixed bag of praise and, and concern. Say we were throwing stuff against the wall. And I think that that is a good example for me, a good analogy. Cause it's like throwing it against the wall, seeing what sticks. Because I think when you present a range of options and you have so many choices, we want to pick the options that work and we want to pick the ones that won't fail, right? Or ones that will anger the fewest amount of constituents, right? Or, or provide the biggest bang for the buck. We're trying to do the right thing, but of course, none of us knows what the leap of faith will take once we take it. So how do we, you know, is it research-based praxis? Is it taking a leap of faith? You identified, I think Minneapolis as one example. Probably one that I'm not sure that this body or even this community is inclined to take. We have a, a deep connection to the earth and the land in a Western state that maybe predisposes us to believe that we all want the. One-third of an acre parcel with the picket fence, Minneapolis, a bit more urban. So, so how do we navigate that? And again, I'm talking about just a 10,000 foot view at this point before we dive into any specifics.
Yeah, yeah. And I would, you know, I would point to another whole state that recently made a bunch of housing reforms in this direction, which is Montana, which I think would, at least. They would argue that they have a similar, you know, love of the environment and, and are certainly not even as, as urban as, as Reno. And they basically statewide required all cities to allow ADUs or duplexes or fourplexes to eliminate parking. Like they get to choose from a list of these things. But I think, you know, in terms of like how, where this all goes or how you get there. I think part of it is certainly just these, you know, these meetings are a really important starting point. I think sometimes it's hard to like have a, a dialogue with the folks in the room behind me. And so there needs to be those opportunities as well because I find that. When you're able to talk to people one-on-one or in small groups and really get into the details and talk about the trade-offs, that people can find a lot of agreement. But on the, you know, what's going to work, what should you pursue? That's a, that's a really difficult position. I mean, I, I included all of these things in here because I think they all work. To varying degrees though, of course, like ADUs alone, for example. So in Los Angeles, ADUs are legalized statewide. And so the year after ADUs are legalized. We went from a hundred a year to something like a thousand or, or two thousand in a city of 1.5 million homes. So still not a lot. Now we're at like five thousand, six thousand a year. It's a lot of homes, but it's not making that much of a dent in, in the crisis. So one thing I would just say is nothing alone is going to get you where you want to be. It is going to have to be a combination of things on supply for sure, but I think on subsidies and stability and, and just the planning process generally. So I don't know. Is that like, that's probably not fully answering. There's a little more I could probably say on that topic specifically.
Anyone had a solution for housing affordability, we have a solution for housing affordability, right? There is no one size fits all approach. I don't think there's a panacea. I don't think there's going to be one button, button that we push that'll fix it all. I think that using the tools that we have in the toolbox is an important concept, whatever those tools may be. And look, you have a hundred people in the room today and each of them has a different opinion. I, I often worry about the folks who are not able to be here, right? I'm worried about people who are a, a brand new teacher or a police officer. Working in our hotel industry and, and those are folks whose voices are not always present in the room. And so we're trying to balance competing needs. You have people who have every interest in being here for their own valid and reasonable purposes. And then you have people who are not represented at all. And so we, I think we struggle at times because sometimes the loudest voices are the ones that control the outcomes. When I'm not sure that that is, makes for good policy. Ultimately, again, we can agree to disagree. I'm not sure that I fall, for example, in the category of legalize ADUs everywhere. I think it would be foolish for us to believe that if we hit the button and said legalize ADUs, all of a sudden our housing woes would be solved. Nor do I believe you're suggesting that. I do think that ADUs have a role to play, although I, my guess is a very small one. We're a community of about 330,000. And so even if I took your example of Los Angeles and tried to extrapolate the numbers to think about what we would do. I'm not sure everyone's going to run out tomorrow and pop an ADU in their backyard.
Be in the low hundreds.
I can't imagine it would be even that because mom and pop who want to have an ADU for an aging parent or for a child who's attending the university. They're maybe not the skilled builders that are out there interested in doing that. So again, I've used a little bit more than my time and we've had a, an iterative conversation. And I'd like to continue that and hear what my colleagues have to say.
Thank you so much. Councilman Taylor, your turn.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for being here. Really appreciate your time and the work you did on this and all of our team. This was a lot of information and this is a great step forward. A couple of things that I have questions on. The first thing, Councilwoman Doer's question was missing middle. For Reno specifically, can you tell me what that is? Is that a price point or is it a type of housing? Cause we hear people come in and say, we're providing the missing middle. It's a $600,000 house. And to me, that's not the missing middle. So that would be my first question. Then the second question I want to ask is when, in your report, I saw that you. Mentioned that we are in the early stages of urbanizations in Reno. And you're not necessarily recommending that we go to high-rise development, but low and mid-use development in that mixed use. So specifically, how are, how do we get out of our own way at the city level to make it easier or not easier, but more. Get more of this missing middle in here. And I think you might've been talking about that earlier with some of our zoning opportunities that we have.
Yeah. So thank you. The missing middle nomenclature is confusing and I think people have deployed it in all kinds of different ways. But I think Dan Perelak, who wrote the book called Missing Middle Housing, is really talking about like the type. And the fact that by nature of what it is, it is generally going to be more affordable. It's not to say that you couldn't build a super luxury fourplex that every unit costs more than a single family home. But by and large, that's not actually what happens in part because someone has enough money to live in one of those units. They probably just want to live in a single family home. Again, this is like, this is not saying single family homes are bad. It's not saying people shouldn't be allowed to live in them. It's really just saying a lot of people don't want to and maybe even more can't afford to. And so what are, what is our answer for them? Can you repeat just really quickly to summarize the second part? Just like how we do it?
Is when we're trying to create infill in the missing middle, I think there are some things that we can do as a city. One of the things you pointed out was the city can only do so much. So I really want to pay attention to what we can do here. And sometimes I think we just kind of need to get out of our way. And that's some of the recommendations that I see within this report to make it more. Consistent and predictable in, for the builders to create this. It's not necessarily, our problem, like you said, isn't impact fees. We, we should be okay there, but we need to maybe have some standardization in how we're building and what that looks like.
Yeah. And I guess maybe the number one thing I would point to is having a, a very simple process for projects that are smaller. Because what you hear from.
Okay. Say that one more time.
A very simple process for projects that are smaller. So what I mean by that, or kind of the justification for this, what I hear from, from people in the development community all over the country. Is in most cities, it is roughly the same amount of work to get entitled and permitted a 10-unit project as a 300-unit project. And so if you have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to get that 10-unit project approved. Why not just go for the larger project and, and, you know, do something that is going to bring more investors in and, and provide more housing for that matter? So there needs to be kind of the process that is appropriate to the scale of the housing. And that can mean a range of things. This is why I emphasize objective standards and, and buy right approvals, especially for these smaller projects. But I will also add that, you know, the, the labor pool, the contractor pool, people building housing has come up. And something I've observed in many places that have adopted ADUs citywide, statewide, has been a whole new kind of industry pops up. Of people who, you know, we're never going to be the 50-unit apartment builders, but they can build an ADU in someone's backyard. And so it's creating.
I'm going to stop you because I don't want to go over my time. Thank you so much. I know everybody has questions. Appreciate your answers. Thank you.
Councilman Martinez, I'm trying to let everyone go over a little bit, just so everyone knows, because I want to make sure that.
Yeah, I've, I've not been even paying attention to it. So I will do that from now on.
No, no, you don't have to. That's my job. You don't have to. But I just want to let everyone know that because sometimes people are saying, I don't get my time and I don't get my time. And so everyone's getting equal time and I'm letting them go over. Because we don't, we, you know, we don't get you usually. So, all right, go ahead. Councilman Martinez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Phillips, for being here and presenting your findings, all the research that you have done and what you're bringing to our city. I want to stick with the theme of process and come back to one of the questions that Councilmember Doer asked a little bit. And how we better work with our regional partners to, you know, before getting to a state where we have to consider. As you mentioned, maybe exploring mandates from the state to increase cooperations. If you have any best practices that we can explore to start those negotiations or those conversations and roundtable discussions with some of our partners.
Yeah, I, I don't know that I have best practices necessarily, but I think a, a good place to start is for this to be kind of a two way street where it's not just, hey, envy energy, hey, Tamoa, Health District, et cetera, like we need you to get your act together. But I imagine there are things that they would like the city to do as well. And maybe there's an opportunity to kind of start from there. As this not just being, how do we make housing approvals faster and housing more affordable? But just how do we work together better generally? I think that might be the best place to start at least. But I do think the involvement of, you know, state and regional officials from the start is probably helpful too. Not as like, if you don't do this, we're going to force you to, but just they have that kind of 50,000 foot view.
Can you address maybe some of the things that we can do to not, maybe not necessarily convince, but allow others to see the importance of making sure that these project proposals get done in a timely manner and that there's no delays as we're seeing with inflation. The more that things get delayed, the higher the costs are for not just the builders, but the consumers who end up purchasing these homes or renting these apartments.
Yeah, and I, I think it's important to acknowledge that the folks in these other jurisdictions and agencies and so forth, like they have reasons for taking longer for, you know, requesting things or asking for revision, all that kind of stuff. So I think that is important to acknowledge. But I mean, maybe one place to start on this is the folks who work for those agencies live here too. And they need to have housing they can afford. And so this is of interest directly to those agencies, of course. And, you know, I've heard about retention issues for, for the, the city here and elsewhere. Where folks just, you know, they might get a job here, but then realize they can't really afford to live here. And so they don't stick around or they, they never actually show up. And so I think maybe those are a couple of places to, to start from.
Okay. And I do have another round of questions, but I'll defer to my next set. And it will have to do more with like renting, price gouging, which is something that is in your report, but it wasn't really addressed in this presentation.
Yeah.
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Breckus.
Hi, welcome. The council has really strict time rules, which I don't know if all of our audience knows. And they're not waived in workshops evidently. So I'll just give you some feedback and then I'll summarize with my two questions for you. Welcome. I appreciate your report. I want to clarify one thing that I disagree with, and that is that in a Dillon's rule state, we don't have stabilization ordinance powers. I believe we do. I believe that's the prevailing view of lawmakers in Carson City who have made the laws. I'll reference Senator Flores from the Chair of the Local Government Chair Committee down there does believe we have it. I believe we have it. I, I've been very vocal that it's what I want four years ago, that we need to stop rent gouging. I've the longest serving council member. And I saw it from the Great Recession to the buildup, the Tesla effect, and have seen such brutality of in the market by a small group. And that's what a rate stabilization, a modest rate stabilization ordinance would do. And I have one crafted in my head and waiting for leadership from others on my colleagues to bring that forward. So I just want to clarify that to you. The ADUs, you know, we made a run on that in 2016. At the end of the day, Reno may be a case study, which what happens when the state doesn't tell you to do it. I think, you know, that's how it's going to play out, which is interesting because, you know, you have Dillon's rule, so you would think, but the state, I think, will be reluctant to, to get there. And, you know, it's hard for a local government person to talk about that. I think we have pent up demand. The question I'm going to have is about ADUs in California state law overriding CCNRs restrictions. Because we have a lot of those and they have to have the opportunity and the burden, if you will, if you call it a burden, of providing that housing type. And I want to know if you have any evidence of how that's played out in the California laws that have passed over the last five years. I appreciate the short term rental position. That's one that I brought forward. I think last time we had a workshop was over 18 months ago, 20 months ago. But we all voted and it didn't get enough votes, but I, I think that we do need a short term rental. Ordinance have long felt that and, and so I appreciate you highlighting, highlighting that. You also highlighted parking districts and not when you drop down your parking ratios to let people off the hook and thinking that the on street is there going to be their little fiefdom. And we have that. I spent a lot of the summer doing constituent work on developers who underparked their project and want to bail out. And we need a standalone parking district. I've, I've talked about that a lot. Parking, you know, like a lot of growing cities becomes kind of an ad hoc thing, but it needs its own standalone policies. And, and they run enterprise fund too. So I was appreciate you bringing that. The CIP one, you know what, I'll hold because our time is very limited. I'm going to get to the CIP and then the, the agency streamlined comment. But so let me have you answer what you know about California laws overriding CCNRs. And has it been, did they put it in? Did it get legally challenged and upheld?
So I, I don't have a lot of knowledge on, on this offhand. I've kind of tangent, followed it a little bit here and there. I know that initially ADUs were, were not allowed in HOAs if they prohibited them. They could, the state didn't override that. Just this year, I think, I think it was this year they passed a law where I think some things will override what HOAs prohibit. But I, I, I really should check on that and I can follow up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I thought it was, you know, they've been passing laws for five years now, but I didn't, I thought it had went like two or three years ago and what had played out. Okay, that's fine. And then I'll, I'll yield my time according to our rules and get another chance to ask you those other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's start our second round of conversation. We'll go the other direction. Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, you know, the one that really jumped out to me was your thought on offsite improvements. And I think you're a little cold. Because, you know, I pulled up the ordinance book over here. And in our sewer, we do allow offsite free, you know, front loading agreements. So we've got that. I sit on Tamoa, they've got that. I've been away from our MPO for a while, but they had a very liberal, kind of kooky impact fee secondary market. So I think those are all in place. I think what your conclusion that we need to do a better CIP is correct. And I think the CIP work is very flawed. I think it needs to model transportation policy from transportation federal policy, which the number one theme in every, you know, junior engineer knows who works in federal processes, resources are constrained. And so you need to be very thoughtful on programming and prioritizing. I was down in Fresno last, two months ago for the APA conference. And through California, I think it was with high speed rail, they've given $200 million to Fresno to, you know, anywhere anyone turns a shovel there, they will have ready to go infrastructure in five years. That's because the state of California and Fresno is going to capture 10,000 units in downtown, maybe even more over a period of time. So Reno's not doing that with what we invest. We're allowing it to chase other, I think, market driven projects, logistics industry and so on. And I think that's the rightful conclusion. The front loading agreements, I think maybe is not accurate. I mean, maybe we can tickle that a little bit more. Maybe people are saying they're not working. But I think it's maybe people who are saying, who are coming to the table with options on ranchland, options on hillside development, and they're just in problem terrain anyway. Unless they're building, you know, a multi, multi million dollar industrial building. So that's one. Number two is the agency coordination. You know, that's a common gripe. You're always going to hear that. I think we have a whole committee to that. It's called the Building Enterprise Fee Advisory Committee. I think that needs to be tickled a little bit more. You know, is it NDP with a 24 vacant, 24% vacancy, you know, probably, you know, but that's, that's big. But, you know, we're at the point in the market where people are coming in for subdivision map extensions. CIP, you know, SUP. So we're at a point in market where they're failing on other reasons. And so I would really encourage you to tickle that down quite a bit. You know, interest rates, their supply, because I don't see it. I, I argued when we redid our zoning code that we do our subdivision process in a better way, a coordinated way, was the way that I learned as a junior planner in Albuquerque where it's really more staff driven and everyone's at the table. So the boss lady of the planning department is sitting every week with the agency folks and moving them forward rather than the dispersion to the planning commission. But I, I think that, I think that one is just a trope a little bit that needs to have quantitative data and scenarios to validate it.
Yeah. And I, you know, I, I agree with that. I will just say I recognized it, it seemed to be a real issue here and was, was regularly commented upon. But I'm, I'm not a communications consultant, so I, there are certainly folks who have much more thoughtful ideas about exactly how to engage that. It just seems like some way or another reform is needed there, better collaboration is needed there. And, you know, it seems that talking to each other about it is a, is a good starting point. But I think once you get into the details beyond that, probably better talking to someone else.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you so much. Mr. Phillips, your exploration of like the Reno codes and what we have here. Just curious if the two stair requirements for multi level buildings is in fact something that we have to abide by or is that something that, you know, we, we can look at changing in our area?
So again, building code is, is getting at the edge of my knowledge. Sometimes cities have their own building codes. I would guess Reno does not have its own. It's usually only quite large cities. And so it was probably a matter of the state building code and the state building code probably does mandate this because pretty much everywhere in the country mandates it with a few exceptions. And more cities and states in just recent years have started to reform this. But I, I don't know that it's something you would be able to solve at the local level. You probably need some state involvement.
Thanks for answering that. In your report, you also mentioned how some redevelopment that happens in specific areas, when it happens too quickly, there's sort of a loss of the identity or the culture of that neighborhood. I'm just wondering if you can expand a little bit more on that.
I didn't hear what kind of development you referred to.
I think you were just talking about whether, how quickly developments happen in a specific region. So let's say we have a block of three or four neighborhoods in our, here in Reno. And we see those quickly turnover into, you know, different types of dwelling units and how the characteristics or the culture of those neighborhoods can get lost. And so I was just wondering if you can expand a little bit more on that here.
Yeah. And, and I do think it's, you know, it's a real issue and it shouldn't just be dismissed as like, well, affordability is more important. I think there are ways to balance these things. And, you know, part of that is the stabilizing policies that I also discussed in the report. But I think, you know, I guess I would say a few more things. One is that especially for the incremental kind of development, like the fourplexes, that kind of stuff. Where this has happened, the pace of change has been very slow. You know, a decade later, maybe one building on every block has, has been redeveloped on average. And so, and I think part of the reason for that, which relates to the next thing I wanted to say is the more kind of spread out this is to some extent, the, the less concentrated change you see. I think part of why a lot of cities have experienced or specific neighborhoods have experienced very rapid change is because most cities only allow larger buildings, taller, denser buildings in a very small portion of the city. And so, you know, to the extent that the city wants to try to meet its housing needs, unless it changes those rules, it has no choice but to put them often where you already have the highest density. You might have higher concentrations of lower income households, households of color. Like these are all choices that are made. And, and again, there are trade offs. But I think we're kind of airing a little too far on that side of things right now.
Thank you for that. I think my last question is going to deal with some of the empirical research that has been done. If you can, maybe not, you don't have it off the top of your head, but if you can talk about how any type of housing can help bring the affordability in our region down.
Yeah, yeah. So there's, there's a lot, I guess I could say here. Part of why I emphasize the, the missing middle is because it is just from the start more affordable than the alternatives. It is not necessarily going to be inexpensive because new housing, like most new things, is, is more expensive than older housing. But the, the kind of most persuasive, so there's lots of research at a high level, looking at metro areas all the way down to cities and blocks. When you build more housing, rents in surrounding buildings and neighborhoods tend to increase a little more slowly. I think the most persuasive mechanism I've read, which is like empirically studied both here and abroad, is the migration chain concept, which is essentially that new market rate unit is $2,300 a month. That's unaffordable to a lot of people. But that's what it, you know, it costs a lot to build and that's what you have to price it at to, to earn a profit. Whoever moves in there is going to have a relatively high income. But they're leaving some other home behind. And in most cases, in most places, they are leaving behind some home from the same metro area. And so the home they leave behind is most likely cheaper than the one they're moving into because that's generally the moves that people make most of their life. And so maybe the one they left behind is $1,800 a month. And someone moves into that and that person left a home behind and maybe it was $1,500 a month. And so this is kind of the, the linkage between the, the kind of top and bottom of the market. It's not to say that all you do is build to the top of the market. Subsidized housing is really important. But it is to say that it, it is complementary rather than kind of being in conflict.
Okay. Thank you for expanding on that.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you. I like the way in your report, you summarized that as the new car, old car theory. Like when you get a new car, there's an old car, you have used car supply leftover for other people. So that was
COVID, yeah.
COVID. I like the way you did that. So I guess my question, my, my final questions are, you came up with five areas of potential reform. You worked with our team. We have some recommendations. Is there anything within those five areas of potential reform that you think we should be doing first? Or I know you said some of the interagency coordination might be the low hanging fruit. But are there, is there an order or a prioritization? And then my second question would be, as you've worked with other cities and you've seen this process, are there things that we should be looking for growing pains? We know when we do this and we go through the stakeholder engagement process and we go through the work, there's going to be some growing pains. So are there things that you might have, advice that you might have from other experiences that we might look at going through this?
Yeah. So on the like prioritization, I guess, I think of, of all of the things, thinking about both impact and kind of feasibility. The upzoning of multifamily areas to higher densities than they are now, I think has a lot of potential because they're already multifamily. In many cases, I think the use there might be a single family home, but the zoning has been multifamily for a very long time. And so it's no particular surprise.
Helps with the valuation of the land too, right?
Yeah, the owners themselves will likely see their property value increase. And so, you know, it's sort of that parcel increases in value, but by eventually being redeveloped and increasing the supply of housing, there's sort of a averaging, a moderating effect. So it's focused increase, but spread out decrease. And not decrease, actually just not growing as quickly.
Yeah, you were talking about realistic expectations too. We're not going to have 15, 30 foot, you know, or 30 story buildings that we're talking about. Sorry, go ahead.
Other, other than that, I mean, I think anything to do with the, that requires state involvement is important to start sooner rather than later because these things move slowly. I do think the building code one, it actually is an interesting opportunity because again, it's something I think has been pretty uncontroversial. There's not a lot of evidence that two stairwells actually increase safety in any way. And the places that, that only require one for small buildings, people are no less safe. And, and that one requires state involvement, but it actually directly supports that upzoning of multifamily areas because those are exactly the projects that will benefit from that reform. So those are a couple that come to mind. I'd have to like have the report in, in front of me. Among these, you know, the, the infrastructure planning, I think, putting aside the fee reform side of things and, and all of that, just like knowing what your infrastructure looks like, how old it is, when it's going to, you know, go bad or should be replaced. I think that is maybe something to start on. And I, and I do recommend maybe starting in some specific neighborhoods where you want to prioritize development.
Thank you. Thank you for being here again.
Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Mr. Phillips, I want to talk about this by right approval. And to do that, I want to use some examples so that I understand what you say when you, what you mean when you say that. Because when I think the general public hears by right approval, they are rightfully fearful that they are rightfully fearful that somehow where they live tomorrow will be changed. Because someone will come along and build something, I suppose, adjacent to them or near enough to them that it matters to them and that they'll have no voice in the process. And, and I think that that is um, something that I don't want to see. I, I want our citizenry to be engaged. I believe that we as a body strive very mightily towards transparency. Our public engagement process, although some people don't see it, is happening all the time. Even in the rollout of these recommendations, there are a number of meetings that, and public processes. Sometimes only one person comes and shows up, um, or two people come and show up. And then when they get to this meeting, they cry all men are foul because they didn't go to the meeting. So I'm just trying to understand what you mean when you say those words.
So like, very technically, by right approval just means you don't go through the planning department. You just go straight to the city, uh, you know, permitting department, whatever that happens to be. More kind of generally, or like, uh, I don't think that's helpful for, for folks who are concerned. I would say that it's really about establishing clear rules and guidelines about what can be built on every parcel. And if someone shows up and proposes a project that complies with those guidelines, they are allowed to build it. They don't have to negotiate. They don't have to downsize it. And I think, you know, to your point, maybe a really important place to start with that is you don't just say, okay, whatever is allowed right now in your zoning code and design guidelines and so forth, in certain places or in certain cases, it's going to be by right. Maybe you start with a kind of restarting a neighborhood planning process where you develop, you know, you, you really engage with the community at a much wider and deeper level than you ever will with an individual project. And you say, what do you want to see? What, you know, what kind of buildings, you know, design do you want to see? What can we all kind of come to agreement on? And then once that plan is developed, again, with many more people involved than any individual project, uh, you know, opponent or supporter, then you say, okay, we've decided what we want. And so it's actually not the right of any neighbor to say what the community agreed to is not allowed next to me. So I think that's one way of thinking about it. It really is about, it's not about eliminating feedback.
So your mind to achieve that goal, we have to go back to the neighborhoods and get their buy-in to that concept. Is that accurate?
I think, uh, I mean, depends what you mean by buy-in. I, I wouldn't expect consensus.
No, I don't think so either. But again, I'm trying to make sure that people understand tomorrow they might, there's a fear factor either on Nextdoor or on Twitter or Facebook or even in the room today, where people are imagining that somehow we're going to change what they previously knew to be the conditions they were living in. And we're going to do that by some, I don't know, uh, royal fiat, if that were a word.
I, I agree with your previous statement. Like, I think it does need to start with community buy-in. It, it's, it's not something that just happens by fiat and it needs to be part of a larger process.
Well, the example I might give is that we have a building project going on right now, just a bit to the east of us by a few streets called the Ballpark Apartments. Those Ballpark Apartments were permitted by right there through the zoning process. And they never came to the city council. So they are a multi-story project, very exciting project because it meets a lot of the things that we're trying to accomplish. And of course, there were folks who I, I think were surprised that it was there uh, and, and therefore voiced displeasure about it. But it was because it was zoned there appropriately and permitted by right. I think, again, what I don't want people to take away from the engagement process is that it is a community effort and we all have to be sharing the same goal, which is to create opportunities for people to live here. I think none of us can uh, put a bubble over Reno and stop everybody from coming in. People want to live here. We have great reasons to live here. When I was born, the population of this community was about a hundred thousand-ish. It's now hurtling headlong towards three hundred thousand. So change, it, it is inevitable. But what we want to make sure people do is that we hear them, we understand the concerns they raise and that they're valid and legitimate concerns will be ones to be considered in the process, whatever that process is.
And hopefully it's an opportunity to, you know, to shape that growth. There's so many communities across the country that people don't want to live in. And they're having much harder time than, you know, figuring out, okay, how do we accommodate these people? How do we make sure this development and this change serves our interests? Not just people moving here, but people who live here now.
Understand. Thank you so much. Ms. Dewar.
Yeah, thank you. Um, assuming this is our last round, I'm going to make some statements as well as asking some questions to understand how this all fits together. I heard earlier in a public comment, and this is something that a bit troubled me, was we, it seems that we have mixed up the words code cleanup and new initiatives. And in the staff report that goes along with your presentation, many of the proposals are listed that they're in code cleanup. And I just wanted to be clear at the start that I consider many of the things that you're speaking about to be new initiatives. That, to your point, we have to get public input, we have to discuss them, debate them, look at the upside and the downside of a change. And so this is really a comment, I guess, to our staff, which is that I would really like us to, this, this workshop is titled Affordable Housing. But you're speaking in my mind about housing generally, um, how to get more of it. And uh, the concept that greater quantity will lead to a lower price point. I think that's your basic assumption. And so with that, every place in this document that says, many, many of your proposals say they're in code cleanup. And I just want to be clear as one council member, it's, it's not cleanup to me. It's a new idea and we should thoroughly vet it and study it. That said, um, one of my basic principles, people know this about me, is I really, really care about hearing what the public has to say. Public input's kind of my 101. It's where I start and it's basically where I finish as well. I try to add my own ideas to what I hear the public saying. Change is hard. And so I think everyone's got to be part of this conversation that wants to be, you know. We, we don't have a hundred thousand people in the room here today, you know, we have fifty. And, um, and we need even more. Um, I think existing neighborhoods have a right to to talk about and have input into how their neighborhood develops, which is why in my first question, I asked about that neighborhood planning effort. It has been proposed in other code changes, but it hasn't happened. Even two years ago, we went forth and they upzoned, let's say, a big chunk of my own residential area to MF thirty. And they left out MF fourteen and MF twenty-one. And the um, response was quite critical from the residents. And so they went back and they amended the code, which was fantastic to allow MF fourteen and MF twenty-one in those zones. And an example where this has worked really well is, um, we had many proposals along an area called Warren Way. It's a rather narrow street. It doesn't really meet um, city standards for what a street should look like. Um, it's not striped, it's not the width, it doesn't have sidewalks, et cetera. But there's been a lot of intense um, upzoning occurring there. One of the proposals that came in was for a MF uh, twenty-one project. And um, because it had the opportunity of both going to my neighborhood advisory board and um, going through the planning commission, because it was a zoning type change, going from single family, the developer heard and the um, consultant elevated the concerns of the neighborhood. And the developer decided to reduce it down to MF fourteen, so they would have a sufficient on-street parking. The parking on the street was almost full. So, excuse me, they have sufficient off-street parking. And so I think it's an excellent example of how neighborhood compromise can work. We're still going from one house in that parcel to fourteen. That to me is a pretty big increase. Many more people are going to be able to live there in a really nice neighborhood, but the neighborhood was heard. And so um, my questions for you on the by right approval, we would not have had that process. They would have just checked the box. Is it electrical? Does plumbing meet the code, et cetera? And I don't think that's sufficient when you're doing infill. I just don't. I really think it's important to have that neighborhood buy-in and participation resulting in a better project. Still in, still um, increasing the density quite a bit, but maybe not to MF sixty, okay? On MF forty-five, not, not going there. What I have to, to leave you with, I guess, for me, is when we talk about um, density bonuses, I've, I've spent a good time talking to our planning staff. And right now today, and I don't know if the council realizes this, we give density bonuses if an apartment is less than eighteen hundred square feet. Eighteen hundred square feet's like the size of a single-family home in many parts of Reno. And we're saying if your apartment is about the size of a single-family home, you'll get a density bonus. And I think if we're doing a density bonus, we need to reduce that number to something like a thousand square feet so that we're really saying, if you have a small unit, we'll give you more units. We want to encourage that. Um, smaller living, uh, reduced um, footprint size. But giving a density bonus for the size of a regular, single-family home doesn't make sense to me. So I think changes, if we're going to make that change, it has to go. And one more thing you recommended, and I really liked this, I think you did, but I probably heard it from the audience, which is that if we have um, this kind of evolution, we need to bring along sustainability initiatives with that. Those kind of apartments should, by building uh, requirements, be required to put in um, electric charging stations. Should maybe consider mandatory solar, uh, not just, hey, if you feel like it, you know? In other words, things that will move, move the rest of our master plan forward, not just more. But what does the more look like? Okay, how does it fit in the neighborhood? What other goals that the council's already laid out is it achieving? So not just one thing, but maybe a multi-impact. Love to hear your thoughts on some of this.
Uh, I a hundred percent agree. Uh, I'm, I was here to talk about affordability, but, and I tried to bring in, you know, how the more uh, not only impacts affordability, but a lot of other goals, like for one, you know, if you didn't require electrical or solar at all, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, it would still be a benefit to the environment just by not building sprawl at the edges and having people who are able to walk to some locations and drive shorter distances, all of that. But yeah, none of this is to say that there isn't a place for all of those things. Sort of, you know, to the earlier comment you had, like, planning for more housing, you also need to do the planning for the open space and the transportation and the infrastructure alongside that. My focus is on the housing, but it's not to say that you shouldn't focus on all of these things.
My last comment, I guess, is um, my area and a zip code in my ward eight nine five two one has been listed in the top thirty uh, areas for apartment increase. And so apartments, obviously a lot more people living there, but the roads in those developments were planned more for less people, right? So as more apartments have come in, it's created a lot of congestion. And we're very far behind with our RTC in building those road improvements to accommodate the, the cars. And I say cars, it's about ten miles south of downtown Reno. The bu, there's not an extensive bus system there, not an extensive, any kind of public transportation system there. People are relying on the cars and they will be for probably several decades to come, frankly. And how do we accommodate, you know, we're going to densify, but how are we going to have to, my other colleague's point, better infrastructure to accommodate that kind of densities?
All right.
Thank you.
Move it on. Go ahead. Councilmember Meiberg.
Hi, I, I have a lot of questions, actually. Um, so um, what kind of recommendations do you have for things like zoning changes? We have a master plan and, and sometimes we have changes specifically in my area where we have multifamily zoning that gets changed to industrial-commercial. Do you recommend that we stop doing that and maybe change that multifamily to maybe denser multifamily and maybe move away from deviating into industrial-commercial, particularly in neighborhoods?
I, it, it's hard for me to know without knowing a little more context about the specific neighborhoods. I would say as a general principle, especially the more kind of central that we're talking about, I think uh, there's, there's a strong argument for, you know, not, not reducing multifamily residential zoning to replace it with industrial, uh, which, you know, often tends to have a pretty limited job density. But of course, it'll depend on location and circumstances, so I can't say in your specific circumstance.
Okay, thank you. Um, also, flip over here. It's a pretty large report. So on your um, summary recommendations, it's on page sixty-two. So um, primary summary recommendations, it says, develop a detailed maintenance plan including the age, condition and planned replacements or upgrade date for infrastructure types the city often requires developers to replace or improve as a condition of project approval. So that sounds like we really need to, I mean, this is the top primary recommendation you've made. So I, I understand that we want to um, streamline the process for these type of product, uh, projects. But it sounds like we really need to know when these things are going in so that we can prioritize these things, which are your primary recommendations, that we need to um, as a council, kind of be more aware of these projects so that we can prioritize the maintenance and development of these infrastructures. So how do you recommend that we balance the streamlined process for this type of development with the need to have a detailed maintenance plan for the age and condition and the planned replacement or upgrade of our existing infrastructure? Do, uh, do you have an idea for that?
Yeah, I think this goes hands, hand in hand with what Councilmember Reese was talking about. The need to kind of do that planning upfront before these reforms to streamline things take place or in tandem with them. So it's not, you know, we're just going to run headlong into changing the rules before we even know what the conditions are in the neighborhood, but we're going to figure that out as we're also thinking about the future and how, you know, in some places more denser or more uh, low-cost housing might be feasible or legal to build. So I think they, they really go hand in hand.
Well, I think that this report kind of um, makes the assumption that this is going to be infill. But a lot of development, as Councilmember Reese has said several times, that there was a decision made twenty-five, thirty years ago that most of the development was going to happen to the north of the city, which is my ward and it's largely undeveloped. It's the largest geographically ward with the least amount of density. So this area has the least amount of infrastructure. So it's hard to say in advance where we should put these roads until this happens because it's not infill. It's new development. So how do you balance that? Because it is a different animal versus saying, we're going to do an infill here because it's not infill.
Yeah, the, that recommendation is very much focused on infill. And I think, you know, the reason I didn't have much to say on the, on the, the kind of more single-family, larger-scale developments is I think it's appropriate that developers basically pay for all of those improvements. Because those improvements are solely for the benefit of their residents, generally.
Great. That's great to hear from an expert, that the developers should pay for this infrastructure and it should be a part of the planning before the development goes in. Because that's something that I frequently say, so it's nice to have an expert agree with me on that. Um, so another uh, area I'd like to go to here, um, it says, um, you know, that there may be, uh, the city should consider adopting fees or taxes on underutilized lands such as vacant parcels. I agree with that. We have a lot of different vacant parcels downtown, downtown, which I hate to see. I'd like our downtown activated. Um, so do you have any examples of that, you know, in other cities? Recommendations or areas where we could look for examples of that or how we could tax those vacant lots?
Yeah, so a lot of the vacancy taxes that have gone into effect so far have been focused on, on vacancies in residential units. And I think those are not as, as impactful, uh, frankly. I believe Oakland is one place that has actually a tax on vacant lots. I don't know of anywhere else offhand, but I'm, I have to imagine they're more going to be happy to, to, to look that up. But it's, you know, it very much depends on your kind of uh, legal restrictions or constraints. In, in California, you know, we can't raise property taxes. We can't do a whole bunch of things related to taxing property. Uh, so we're kind of entirely reliant on fees. Um, might be a different situation here.
Okay. Also included that in that, it says uh, parcels, vacant lands and surface parking lots. If we're going to be encouraging infill and uh, reducing or, or getting way, uh, rid of parking requirements, where do we expect people to park? Because even if people reduce the amount of vehicles, or even if everyone's on a Vespa all of a sudden or using a bird scooter, people are going to have to park somewhere at some point. I know people from my ward, if they're coming downtown, need to park somewhere. What is your recommendations for people to park? And, and the city is also doing areas where they're creating parking zones where you have to have a permit. How do we balance that in a way that it doesn't become parking's only available for people that live in areas where there's not accessory dwelling units? And it's not just reserved for the people that own a home there, so that parking is accessible for everyone that lives in the city of Reno?
Yeah, so uh, on the, on the question of, you know, where people will park, I think the, the short answer is that most developers will still build parking. That's been the experience of every, one of the hundreds of places that have either eliminated or reduced parking minimums is many still provide much more than is, is required. If zero is required, they're still building it. If it's only one space per unit, many are providing more than one space per unit. Because they recognize that that's what their, you know, residents need. This is more about just having that flexibility where maybe you're located very centrally or next to a bunch of office buildings where you're expecting your residents to work in those buildings. And even then, you're probably in Reno, given, you know, the transit isn't like top quality here where you can get anywhere. People, I think, are mostly going to be reliant on cars for things. People, I think, are mostly going to be reliant on cars for things. But that's, you know, there's, it's one thing to say every adult needs a car and a different thing to say maybe only every household needs a car, at least in some of these locations. So it's not necessarily about, I'm sure there are people who, here who live without a car, many of them just because they can't afford one, but some by choice. But really, the, the better, the bigger opportunity is households that might like to downsize to one car to save money and, and, and just, you know.
Okay.
Drive less, and it's allowing that without providing much parking they don't need and having them pay for it, even though they're not using it.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on.
Are we going to get another round?
Nope.
I just have a few more questions here.
Through there, so we're going to move on. You're four minutes over, so I let everyone go over because I think this is a rare opportunity, but we'd also like probably be able to continue to have conversation with you and reach out to you, I'm sure.
Sure.
Via email and.
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I think you're, you're here for the rest of the day?
No, I'm actually heading out, yeah, yeah. Well, I'm leaving at four, so I have time, I'm not leaving immediately.
All right.
I really don't think two rounds of questions is enough. I mean, there's, there's statements in here about only having one staircase for up to six stories. I mean, does that really sound like fire safety? I mean, there's a lot of things in here we should really be asking more questions on. It has a recommendation, organize a roundtable for agencies involved in residential permitting and approvals. How is that different than a city council? And this is a seventy-three-page report and we have, you know, seven minutes to ask questions.
Well, we still have a whole agenda, so I'm trying to keep everyone on track. So I don't know, Councilwoman, what does the council want to do?
What does the council want to do? I mean, we're saying unlimited density and acres. I mean, how, how tall are we going to allow these high-density areas? Don't we have regulations on shade for other areas? I mean, don't other council members have any questions?
Oh, I'm sure they do, I'm just trying to keep on the schedule here, so, because I know you're going to start with Title eighteen. So we have a process and that's the rounds and we'll continue to get your questions answered.
If it's ever possible to come back, I'm happy to do so.
That's just the process. So anyway, okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Good for to just know, from this report, to Councilmember Ebert's point, from this report, are we going to be asked to make decisions on what's just been presented to us?
I, from my understanding, this was just information.
This report is just information. It is a jumping-off point for a broader conversation on the policy recommendations contained therein and that are being brought forward here today through a series of additional presentations. And so the first of which is Assistant Director Fuze talking about what we've termed cleanup, but I, I believe she's going to put more context around when she, when she gets to the lectern. We are not asking you to adopt anything today. We are asking for direction on what would you like us to flesh out the specifics on and come back to you with a, with a policy proposal that can be codified if, if any of these policy directions are something that the body would like to entertain.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
I see a resolution in front of us for action, so it does look like we're adopting something unless I haven't read the materials correctly. Perhaps we could move on to the other items, B one, or B, B two, B three, B four, and then if time's left over before our two P M. sunset, we can go back to this item. Because I, I do think in a workshop setting that there should be consideration of the body to weigh these rules. I mean, I've long objected to these rules anyway, but I think that on a topic as impactful as this, all members should have the time.
Well, and I've been letting everyone go over, but the reason we, we do that is because typically, and you know this, that it, our meetings can go twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours at times, and then that can be challenging for staff. So it's not that we don't want them heard. And then also, from what I've been, usually the practice is if I need anything from you or need any questions, then you will get back to me. I can pick up the phone, I can email you, those kinds of things. But of course, I want everyone to get those questions on the record. That's why I let everyone go over, and I did both rounds. So that's just the process that we've set up. If the council wants to change the process, we could do that moving forward. But for right now, I'm trying to stay to the process because I know you guys all have a schedule, we have a schedule, and we, and here's the other thing, on, on housing, this is such a broad topic. I asked for this meeting to be this, this month, so I appreciate staff doing that. But it was also a series of a whole bunch of meetings on affordable housing. So we cannot solve this in one meeting, that's just not going to happen. So we're going to have to have a lot of different meetings on this, but that's, this is just the starting off point is what I understood, Doug. And then the other piece of that was that this is all informational. We're not making any decisions today. I thought it was also important to have the public involved because I don't know who has attended some of those housing meetings. So, and I'm glad to see there's a lot of people here, there's a lot of interest. But that, this is not the point today, to just shove things through and just be good to go. People have a lot of strong opinions, especially, I've heard it a lot, on ADUs, a lot of people on ADUs. So I think, you know, this isn't just something that happens overnight. So we're going to have to have a lot of feedback and transparency. And again, this is going to be something that is going to take a long time because you also don't know the ramifications of some of the things we do. Sometimes we think we're doing something that's going to benefit the community and actually it backlashes. So again, this isn't going to happen overnight, there's going to be a lot of long-term discussion. But I'm sorry, I can only work with the rules that we have right now and to keep everyone on track and especially staff, because you guys have, I know, very busy schedules as well. So I appreciate it. So with that being said, I'm, Madam Clerk, I'm going to send it to you and I assume we're going to hear on Title eighteen from Angela Fuze.
Do we, question on process, do we want to break?
We're going to break, I think, right after your presentation and questions.
Correct. So we're opening item B two, which is Title eighteen zoning code cleanup from Angela Fuze. Great. And Madam Mayor, just for you, we do have public comment on this item.
Okay, great.
Did you want to do public comment first?
Okay.
Okay, our first public commenter is Mark Johnson, followed by Marky Becken, followed by Bill Shrimp.
Was Commissioner, nice to see you.
Former Commissioner, Madam Mayor, thank you. Mark Johnson, thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Again, Planning Commissioner for the past eight years, ended in July. So we're actually getting ready to talk about some stuff that's obviously near and dear to my past experience. It's actually nice to be here on a Wednesday on this side of the dais and not the other side of the dais. But what I, I want to talk to, there's been some great information here tonight. I'm not actually here, I still say tonight, like it's the evening. There's been a lot of information presented today that we've heard previously. And I, I really appreciate, I appreciate everything that we've heard. The, the reason why I wanted to, to be here is that, I think, and, and Councilwoman Dorr mentioned it in her presentation, a lot of the information that's been presented on housing is its own entity. And to combine that with some of these code updates, these code updates have been something that have, have basically been initiated since Title eighteen was approved when we were on the council. Staff has gone through and taken in, for not just housing projects, but any kind of development projects where there are code conflicts, where there are clarifications, items that impact every kind of development that happens in our city. And there's been a number of meetings, a number of tasks, groups, working groups together, looking at those and providing recommendations on how to update the code for those as code cleanup items that in fact, if, impact, excuse me, any number of types of development. And what I'm here to, to basically ask this evening, again, today, is that the, the information about housing and all the great presentation that we've heard today be separated from that code cleanup. I think there's items in that code cleanup that the sooner we can get them out there, the more effective it's going to be to the development community of which I am a member. So to me, there's a text amendment process that has to be done for all of this, goes through Planning Commission and comes back to this body. This is the first step. So to me, what I'm here to ask is that all of these housing initiatives, all of them, be looked at, be considered in the thoughtful manner by which this council is doing, but that, that not be part of the current code cleanup. Because to me, the code cleanup has been looked at by the people that it impacts. I've read through it, I've looked at the red marks from page one to page four hundred and fifty or something like that. And they are very technical in nature, they don't change zoning, they don't change allowable uses. They just make it easier for staff and the community to understand what's going on. I think that should be pushed through as quickly as possible. We were talking about that in June when I was still on the commission. And then all of these topics that we're looking at, all of these great recommendations that we've heard, be opened up for a broader consideration, broader conversation, and not be brought together. So I know Angela's going to be talking about this now, I hope I can listen to it. But again, that's what I'm here to talk about, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, thank you for your service, really appreciate it, Mark, great job.
Good afternoon again, I'm Marika Becken. This topic here has somewhat been raised already, but I wanted to point out that by right approvals seem to potentially remove the right of a community to participate and provide input at public meetings regarding local development, as well as raising issues that may not have been fully considered by the developers. You mentioned community meetings and, and setting up approvals kind of by a community in advance, but community mores change, so what a community may have agreed to five years ago may not be something that the current community would agree to. Also, density bonuses, as presented, seem to allow serious degradation of the quality of life for existing residents while rewarding developers. These proposals seem likely to adversely affect everyone already here and put untold dollars in the pockets of developers who don't actually need to live in these new super-dense regions. The current procedural processes, which include public hearings at all levels, should be retained in all cases. Thank you.
Bill Shrimp, followed by Donna Keats. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. I just want to say ditto for the first commenters' points that he was making, I thought he made some excellent points. Thanks again for having the workshop today, glad this body is taking the time to take these challenges seriously and will provide direction to staff, I know that's all we're really doing today. And I hope in that direction that the word gentrification and how to pay attention to that concern is part of your discussions. I have noticed a general theme of many of the comments today, not just me, but many other people, saying that engagement can be improved. So, and regarding the process of that, removing the opportunity for early input, even on affordable units, is a tough idea. Many wonderful people work in this building. However, one-e-one should not be the sole arbiter in terms of what happens in each neighborhood. Removing community engagement early is troublesome, and we have a process that works pretty well already. I think some examples have been provided, maybe it's not perfect, but it, it's better than just thrown away. Other incentives, such as jumping to the front of the line or super-credit, so the financial incentives for low-cost housing, certainly please push forward on those, that's good stuff there. In my previous comments, I said Reno has a good problem and it's a great place to live. Allowing development of hundred units by right is where S F R. areas go to die. I do appreciate the additional color, comments, and nuances the report writer provided, so, around that topic. Short-term rentals, professionally, I profit when people buy and sell these things. But as a Renoite, I hope the city pumps the brakes on these. And it's probably a pretty unpopular opinion. It really does cause a problem with affordability. I do agree that ADUs and small multifamily are a nice tool to at least address part of the infill problem and, and that missing middle, so, you know, just some thoughts to keep in your mind as you provide direction to staff today, and again, thank you for having today's workshop.
Donna Keats.
Let me know when I've got it in the right spot here. Hi, Donna Keats, for the record. I have exactly enough time to make my meeting, so thanks for sliding this in on the front end of your presentation. And I've scrawled so many notes throughout this, I can't find what I wanted to say on this topic. But what does come to mind is about this, the discussion you had about by right and the hundred units. I want to remind you that the smaller developments used to require review if they were like over twenty to fifty or something like that. And in this hurry-up-and-let's-make-everything-easier administrative permissions for things, in the two thousand and twenty-one update, it then went to up to fifty, I think twenty to fifty instead of four to whatever it was, the cutoff. So it's, we've just increased the cutoffs on this, and now they want to go all the way to one hundred. And so, there was also conversation about doing this by-right stuff if you have clear, objective standards. We do not. What we did in two thousand and twenty-one was put a ton of administrative approval into the code. The administrator can decide to change uses, can decide to change, there's a hundred things the quote administrator can do. So if you want to follow this path to letting these large developments off the hook and not go in front of Planning Commission, who are the people who took care of the architectural incompatibilities and the setbacks and were really super-important? But the Planning Commission's going to be being removed from review of a lot of these things. It's in the code cleanup. There are places that Planning Commission is no longer going to see things. I think that's wrong, but this is all on the same pathway. We don't have clear, objective standards so that you can walk in and say, here's my hundred-unit development, A, B, C, D, I've met every one of those, well then, you know what? If it's in the right zone, sure. But we have way too much play in our code for what the thing's going to look like, how it's going to be developed. That's the reason we can't do that, in order to push things forward faster. That's not the answer, that's the decimation of Midtown. That's what's happening, meaning with that. You don't have that kind of review. Oh, you still get, still get a public notice for seven hundred and fifty feet, maybe. But you know, having a meeting that you can go to, discuss it, having it go to a NAB and have the neighbors know what's going on, so many times, people make suggestions, can you just do this? Can you just do that? And then you end up with a development that everybody thinks is fine. Because people aren't necessarily anti-development, they just want it to be smarter and more compatible, which we don't do right now. So to put these things in here, to go by right straight away, even for affordable housing, you know? Why don't you instead just put a time limit? Like the, the excuse is it takes too long to go to Planning Commission with its affordable housing, we need it. Why don't you just say, once that comes in, we have two meetings, it has to get on the agenda? Why don't you just do it that way instead of having nobody look at it? Anyway.
Good.
Goes to public process, goes to quality of existing neighborhoods, goes to the fact that they're probably not going to end up where some of you people live, so you have a different point of view.
That's not true.
I understand, but it's something I said, and if it was personally offensive, I apologize.
No, no.
But, but that's true in a lot of cases, when people are doing these things, that they don't live here and they don't get affected.
Good point, thanks, Donna.
Madam Mayor, with that, we do not have any hands raised in Zoom. And for the record, we received two comments associated with this item prior to four P M. yesterday, October thirty-first, one letter in opposition and one letter of concern. Those have been distributed to the Reno City Council and are a part of the permanent record. And with that, we're closing public comment and moving into presentation.
Okay, great, Angela, floor is yours.
Thank you again, for the record, Angela Fuze, Assistant Director at Development Services. So this really is a good transition, I think, from where we left off with Shane. He had a lot of really good ideas, really big ideas. Those in my mind are housing initiatives that if that's the direction this council wants to go, let's have a robust discussion. To answer your question, how come some of the things we're proposing, and we'll go over those, are part of the code cleanup? The items that Shane proposes were not cleanup items. We're not proposing to change the zoning, to double the density from MF thirty to MF sixty, those are big initiatives. What we're looking at is smaller incremental pieces. If we don't like them, we don't have to approve them, so that's why we're here today. Let me just get your feedback, are we on the right track? When I heard you say, we want density as a city, we want walkable communities. Okay, let's slowly work our way towards that. If you're like, whoa, slow down, it's too much, too fast, that's fine too, we can do that as well. So I'm hoping, again, after today's presentation, you can give me feedback, are we on the right track? Shall we continue moving in this direction, or shall we slow things down, or do more? Okay, so let's, let's kind of go back to some of the key things that Shane brought up. One of them had to do with. of them had to do with our capital improvement program. This is something we do already. We look at all of our pipes. We look at how old they are, if they're working, if they're not working. One thing that we're not doing is actively or proactively saying, where do we want to see infill? And if these are the locations where we want it, then let's look at upsizing those pipes. That's very different from just maintaining what we have today. We already do that. That's already part of our CAP. What we're talking about is something drastically different. Us saying as a city, these are the core areas of our town, our city, that we want to see more intense development. And as a result, we're going to provide some infrastructure to anticipate that type of development. One thing I think that some of you know, who's on the governing board, maybe not everyone, regional planning is already going through this process as a community. They're looking at where's the existing schools? Where's the water lines from Tamao? Where's the storm drain lines from Reno Sparks, Wausau County? They're putting together maps so that, again, as an entire region, we'll have a map to be able to say, this is an area where all of our CRP, our CIPs are investing money. This is a great tool. It's not going to, you know, change the way we do development, but it will give developers an opportunity to say, oh, look, this is an area where Tamao's going to upsize a water line. Great. I was going to develop in that area. Now that I know it's in their CIP in the next five years, maybe I'm going to hold off and wait till that's done. Again, a useful tool, nothing that's going to drastically change development, but it will be helpful. In terms of impact fees, there's a couple ways to look at impact fees. One thing, though, as a region, we looked at is, should we be charging less impact fees if you develop in these core infill areas? And this is something has not been adopted, but it's been in discussion for years, whether that's road impact fees, whether that's sewer connection fees. If we're trying to incentivize infill, should we be providing financial incentives? Maybe those of you that develop on the more of the outskirts, maybe the North Valleys area, would pay more versus the areas, the developers that are developing within these infill areas. Again, a concept, not something we're proposing at this point. General idea, things that we think about late at night when we can't sleep. You know, how do we fund some of these ideas? We can either raise fees for other areas. Again, if we're lowering fees for the infill, raising fees for these outer areas, that's one idea. Another idea is the whole idea of reimbursement agreements. Yes, we have the tool right now to do reimbursement agreements. No, we don't currently do it effectively. I think in the last five years, I can think of one project that put in a really big storm drain, this was in the North Valleys, storm drain infrastructure, knowing that other development was going to come in. And when that other development came in, they reimbursed the developer. We don't do that well. We don't do it on a normal basis. So that's something we should look at as a city. How do we do that better? Again, not so much that the city is covering those fees, but when you have a new development coming in, and they have to put in a new sewer line, maybe they're going to make it go from a ten-inch line to a twelve-inch line to put in their project, we may say, you know what? What if you put in a fourteen-inch line? Because we know that's an infill area that down the road, we anticipate more development. So then the next guy who comes in then reimburses that developer. Great concept. Many communities do it. It's something that we want to look into more to figure out how we can do it better. All right. The idea of the zoning code cleanup and what we're doing. So I've kind of broken it down into two categories. One is affordable housing, and that means subsidized. That doesn't mean market rate. That truly means when these projects go out and they're supplying housing at sixty percent AMI, they're getting it subsidized. Generally speaking, Reno gets maybe three to four projects a year. That's it. We're not talking a lot of development. It is a very, very small piece of our development community that actually does subsidize affordable housing. So what we're proposing is for those projects, again, if you can meet the sixty percent AMI, you can go straight to a building permit. No, that doesn't mean you circumvent the zoning. You still have to have the right zoning. You still have to meet your building setbacks. You still have to meet all of those standards. But if, for instance, because you're a unit or in a zoning that requires a conditional use permit, you would be able to skip that conditional use permit process and go straight to building permit. Again, this is not going to drastically change development, but it helps those affordable housing developers to get there faster. They're not paying for twenty extra thousand dollars to go through that conditional use permit process and hiring all the consultants. It's just one extra step to get them faster. We currently have density bonuses for affordable housing projects. This has been in our zoning code for years, not just two years, probably more like twenty years. This has been in place a very long time. What we're asking ourselves, is it enough? Should we be doing more? Now, what we've heard from Shane, and frankly, from the legislature, is local jurisdictions need to be doing more. So what we're proposing is to take that that density bonus and increase it, not just for that sixty percent AMI. Again, they already get a density bonus of forty-five percent. We're saying, let's move that to unlimited for them. And then we have this workforce housing, right? That's that hundred and twenty percent, really down to sixty percent. That's the kind of that that gap of the teachers and the nurses. How do we provide housing for them? We don't currently have any density bonus allocations for that that kind of niche. And so what we're proposing is just to add another density bonus so that they can have more units at that hundred and twenty percent AMI or eighty percent AMI. Not going to make a huge difference in this town, but the small incremental changes, again, are beneficial for everyone. The other big thing that we're looking at is just is more of an internal thing. When you come in for a building permit, we process your building permit. The first round of comments, we do within ten days, extremely fast. Most jurisdictions take weeks. We take ten days. Then you resubmit your revisions, and then we take three days. And then you resubmit your revisions, and we take three days. We have a very fast process for reviewing building permits right now. There's not much more we can do to speed that up. One thing we can do, though, is assign what we're calling a project coordinator. So when you come in with your architect and your engineer and your design team, we will sit down with you and say, let's go through all of staff's comments. Make sure you understand what we said you need to change. It's more of a coordination role. It's not going to have an impact on the zoning, but it will help them to kind of process their building permit faster. All right. So that is specifically affordable subsidized housing initiatives that we're proposing with this code cleanup. Let's take a step back to just everyday housing, infill housing, regular housing, this whole concept of by right. When we looked at other jurisdictions and other zoning codes, we said, well, what's normal? What's the number of units that would typically trigger a public review process? Right now, through a lot of our different zoning designations, if you hit twenty units, you would have to go through some kind of public review process. That's not normal. That is not best practices. That is something very unique to Reno. Most other jurisdictions do not have that process. You would go straight to a building permit, as long as you meet all the standards. So we said, let's meet somewhere in the middle. Again, not a major overhaul. We're still going to trigger an entitlement process if you hit a certain threshold. So we looked at, what's a hundred units? Generally speaking, a hundred units is what would trigger a traffic study requirement. So we said, that's probably a good kind of threshold to say, if you have a hundred units or more, you should still go through that conditional use permit, public hearing process. Less than that, as long as you meet all your setbacks and height requirements and design requirements, you can go straight to a building permit. Again, not a major change in terms of, is this going to move the needle to get more housing? No, it will help that housing to get to market faster. All right. Then the next one, again, density bonus. We have a separate density bonus for affordable housing, subsidized affordable. We currently have a density bonus for these infill projects, and it's based on the size of your unit. So if you have an apartment project, we see a lot of these, let's just take ten units, maybe by right per the zoning, you could put in ten units. But you're doing small units. They're about a thousand square feet in size. Great. Currently, today, you could do a forty-five percent density bonus, which means four units. It's not huge. We're not talking hundreds of units because of these density bonus allocations. Again, most infill projects are pretty small, so this gives them a little bit more power to go to get in a couple more units. We found that that's been great, and we have some folks who have used that density bonus. And it's, again, gives them a couple more units. So we're asking, is that enough? Is a forty-five percent density bonus really moving that needle in terms of housing? Maybe not enough. So what we're proposing is to bump that to an eighty percent bonus. So instead of those ten units, now you could do eighteen units, right? You'd get an additional eight units. Small changes. Not a major overhaul, small changes. All right. This is probably one of my favorite topics to bring up, because you guys brought this up with Shane, and I wanted to jump up and tell you, wait, we're doing great things. Number one, one of the complaints we get from the development community is that we have a lot of internal staff, and they're all looking at the same thing, but from a different lens. For instance, we have engineers that work in the utility services. They're looking at storm drain and utilities from a sewer perspective. We have engineers that work in public works. They're looking at our public infrastructure, how it ties to that private infrastructure. And then we have engineers that work in development services. They look at the private side. So if you take three engineers, you give them a set of plans, they're probably going to look at different things and come up with different requirements. We said, that's kind of problematic. We would like to give you, Mark, I would say, comprehensive review, still making sure that everyone has a chance to review it. So internally, this has nothing to do with zoning code, just so you know, these are things we're working on, initiatives that Shane brought up, that we're currently already working on. We're working on process and procedures. We have monthly meetings that now we've set up with our staff to say, let's do some practice runs. Let's look at a set of plans. What is everyone looking at? Is this your lane? Is this your lane? Did anyone miss this? So that we can all be on the same page on what we're supposed to be reviewing. And with those checklists, again, we currently don't have checklist. We're putting those checklists in place so that everyone can say, did somebody check the box and look at this issue? Hopefully this will help that at the building permit stage and the entitlement stage, we're not missing anything, and then it feels like a more comprehensive review from the developer side. Then the next one, in dealing with our partner agencies. So is it the city of Reno's job to make sure District Health approves permits in a reasonable time? No, it is not our job. But you know what? We can do better to partner with these agencies. And I listed some of the key ones that we hear probably the majority of the complaints from the development community. District Health, I'm sure, you've heard, has been, they've had some challenges over the last probably ten years. NV Energy is one that more recently, they've had a lot of turnover in their staff, and so it's really slowed down the process. Tamao, that's another one. You know, when they look at a set of plans to deal with water, it generally takes them about three months to get through that process. So if our building permit time, we're processing building permits much faster, and it's taking them three months to get through the same building permit and rounds of revisions, we have a conflict there, right? We're not approving that building permit until Tamao has approved it and District Health has approved it. So what can we, as the city of Reno, do to help that process? What we're doing is we have meetings with each of these agencies on a regular basis. And I will say, this is new. This is not something we have always done. I think under the leadership of Chris Pingree, who's been our director for two years now, you know, one of his key priorities was transparency and working with the development community. And so this is something that we have really worked hard at, and that is our relationships as city staff with those agencies as well. We can call somebody at NV Energy and say, Bob, we got a building permit. They can't get through the system because something's being held up on NV Energy's side. Can you help take a look at this and tell me what's going on? Having that communication is new. That's not something we've been able to do in the past. But again, we meet with these agencies, whether it's monthly or quarterly, and say, what are the challenges you're having? How's your staff dealing with these issues? What can we do better? So that's something that's really unique to Reno. I don't know that the other jurisdictions, meaning County and Sparks, are having those same conversations, but we have prioritized those conversations with those agencies. And I would like, I'd like to think that it's working. We get calls from the development community, and they're frustrated, and they're mad, and they're like, I just can't get anywhere. I got it, Joe. Let me make a phone call. And we help them out. It's helping. All right. The idea of an ADU ordinance, the next agenda item after your lunch, is if you choose to initiate, and you can check this one off your list. All right. That missing middle. So Shane brought up, you know, what is that missing middle? We've got duplex, triplex, attached townhomes, condominiums. We don't have a whole lot of housing products that really fit those words. We have a lot of single-family. We have a lot of multifamily, but we don't have a lot of that product. So what can we do to help increase that? From a zoning code perspective, we looked at where we currently allow those types of homes, right? Whether you're duplex, triplex, fourplex. We currently allow them in most of our multifamily, and I think two of our single-family zoning districts. So we've added them with a conditional use permit under two other single-family zoning districts. So not by right. You would still have to go through that public hearing process. It just gives more flexibility if you're in a single-family zoning district. You still have to have a minimum lot size of either nine thousand square feet, that's one of the zoning districts, or fifteen thousand square feet. Those are big lots. So we currently allow them some of these smaller zoning districts where you can do small lots. We're just expanding that, again, with a public hearing process, to be able to allow that kind of missing middle in more locations. And the idea of a short-term rental ordinance that was on the list of priorities that we brought up with council over the last couple years, it's still on our list. We anticipate we'll have something adopted probably within the next two to three years. If you guys want to see that fast forward, we can get direction from you, because again, today, we can bring forward a text amendment, and we can have you initiate that at a future meeting, and we can start that process sooner. So with that, I would like to just go over any questions you have. And there's no formal motion on this, other than to say, again, that you accept the report by Mr. Shane Phillips. And then if there's any feedback, things that you want us to work on, faster, slower, go harder, do less, now would be the time to tell us what we can do to make that happen. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Foose, thank you so much for the presentation. I'll sort of start us off, and then we'll move to council colleagues. First of all, the presentation's outstanding. The work that you and your team are putting in is really unparalleled. You have a keen intellect, an incredible desire and heart for serving this city where you're raising your family. I just cannot thank you enough. We are a challenging body at times because we are persons who have a diverse range of opinions. It can be sometimes difficult to navigate when you have, you know, seven bosses. But you do it with grace and a lot of dignity, and you really are to be commended for the work that you're doing. One of the things I noticed in your comments as well in the presentation is, I think, an important point to discuss sort of openly and honestly. There are a lot of sort of, I don't know if it's tribalism or if it's the desire to pit us against them. So I hear people demonizing, for example, developers, like the developers are this big, bad, monolithic, greedy community. And I think you've done a nice job of pointing out that, I would think, unless any of us are, you know, building our own homes and chopping our own lumber, that we live in homes built by developers. Some people live in newer communities that were just built, you know, within the last five years. There are people in significantly older neighborhoods that might have been built kind of one by one. But at the end of the day, this attempt to demonize developers or the Realtor community, these are folks who are not only building our communities, but they're employing our tradespeople, painters and plumbers and electricians. They're the ones spending money in the stores that provide the C-Tacs to do the thing. And so I thought your presentation did a nice job of sort of articulating this concept that I think is worth pointing out today, which is that we are all living in this community, trying our very best to create the best community that we can, and we all have a role to play in it. And so this predilection towards pointing a finger at and blaming, I think, is really one that I appreciated about your presentation. What the public wants, of course, is to be included in the process. I heard some comments by people today about avoiding, you know, racing here or there. I think your presentation also pointed out that many of these things have been thought about, discussed, chewed on for twenty years. I would go far as to venture that we've been discussing them forever. I went through in the lead-up to working on this presentation and thinking about this critically, I looked at historical archives of Reno Gazette Journal articles, and the same issues and headlines that, you know, the Ben Margiats of the world point to today are the same ones that were being discussed in the 1980s and the same ones that were being discussed in the 1950s. It is not a new thing that we discuss, but we're trying to get it right today. And so again, I thank you really ultimately for the presentation, because I did think it did a good job of pointing those things out. And I think it's good to call out the elephant in the room. Sometimes even at your own peril, we have to discuss those things. So I think you have done a good job of making those opportunities available to us. So thank you for that. Okay, I'll come back now to the dais and see where we want to start. Ms. Breckus, I'll let you start this round.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I missed the first part of the meeting. I was at the Joint Coordinating Committee for our Tamao wastewater plan. And I might be tracking incorrectly. Did you just make a presentation for item B1 or B2?
This is item B2.
B2. Okay. So that is...
Ms. Breckus, just so you know, we went out of order at the start. B5 jumped in order, and then we went back to order. So that's what happened. And I certainly am not taking away your time. I'm just sharing with you that that's what happened.
Yeah. So B2... So B2 has as an attachment, a presentation on, and, and I do, I do want my time to be held because I think this is a legitimate organizational question. It has, okay, okay, it has the, okay, it does have the, the packet that you just went over. But I, I have some questions. So if we could go through your, let me go through your, your, your presentation here. I, I, I do think there's a challenge in this cleanup conversation. And I'm struggling with that. I don't know if you were here when we adopted the zoning code update as our, our, I've been here the whole time. And I know there were things left that were getting worked out. Maybe those are the things Mr. Johnson talked about with the code. Are you in a process on those? Have those been initiated, other things?
We have. So we have the zoning code cleanup, which has over 400 cleanup items. And we met for three months with our technical advisory committee. We are now holding stakeholder outreach meetings.
Those are the six meetings that I see advertised?
Correct. And so then the next step, again, depending on feedback we get today, we, specific to this housing topics, we could go back and hold more meetings. We can start workshops with planning commission. We have options to move forward. If the, if the concern from this council is like, the housing needs to be taken out in separate. Easy enough. Let's initiate, not today. We can initiate a separate text amendment on the topic of housing. And we can lump all of those topics together and do the zoning code cleanup separate. If you guys aren't comfortable, these are cleanup items.
Well, here, here's what I'm thinking. Cause, and, and then, and then, do we have any housing initiatives that we initiated previously? Cause I didn't see that in the background record, but I've been waiting for, you know, 18 months, I think. I think it was in the spring of 2022 that we initiated some ordinances, right?
Yeah, and we definitely appreciate your patience on this. We do have the ADU ordinance that will be initiated after lunch if you choose to move that one forward. And then the short-term rental, which I brought up again, is something we'll probably move forward in the next two to three years.
Two to three years. That's a long time. Have you, but did we initiate an ADU ordinance before?
You, this is your formal initiation. You gave us the go-ahead to.
To work, to think about. Okay. I've been waiting for that. So, you know, the most valuable thing I think here is times, is count, is staff's time and focus on, you know, doing one thing after another. Cause I have lost complete track of where things are at, not seeing it. Not seeing things come forward. And then, you know, I think we get unhappy with staff, Mr. Manager. Where, where are we? Why are we, you know, taking so long? So the 400 that you have, I suppose, a red line, you're out talking to the public about their cleanup, you know, 400 seems a lot more than I recall Clarion telling us and staff telling us about. I think that should get done. Now, if there's things in there that are policy setting as related to housing, I don't think it would be fair to have this conversation here and also be parallel moving those. So I, I do think you need to get those over the finish line, particularly since you're out there having six stakeholder meetings in the neighborhoods and I'm getting feedback from people on those. So I don't want to put a stop to that. I want to see you finish that. Or at least, you know, yeah, I, I think you need to finish that. Now, this is B2, so you're bringing up a lot of things that don't live in Title 18. The TMRPA, the impact fees arguably live elsewhere. So I, I just, those would be B1 items. I, I don't think it's fair under the way this item's framed to put that first slide in. Now the next one, the cleanup process, allowing housing projects to go straight by right. And you have a lot in there, density bonuses and changing those. My thinking on those to the rest of my colleagues is, we did just put in some density bonuses, correct?
Correct. Two years ago, correct.
So, you know, evaluative feedback loop, you know, if we haven't had anyone, you know, use those, then why are we upping them? You know, time, resources, focus, especially when you tell me a priority that mine of short-term rental ordinance is three years out. Okay? So, and then you made another comment that, well, we only get three or four subsidized housing projects. I'm very familiar with those. You know, how many of those went through planning commission or went straight to, to permit? Cause if you're just, if we're just doing paper changes, you know, like, oh, we brought in a little bit more density bonus. Oh, we're gonna skip one entitlement of the next five years of affordable housing projects. You know, that's not the oomph. So I am not prepared to give you feedback on slide four until I have a little more data on understanding it's worth the time and effort. Okay? So that's, that's that. So I've covered the overall Title 18, understanding what's cleanup, what's in process, the density bonuses and the subsidized ones. The loud by right, you know, I think it's, 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 it's fine. I just, you know, and I could be okay with that. I, I need a little more detail about how, say, the grading and the other things come in. I, I'm fine with that. City staff for housing needs.
Ms. Breckus, can I just ask you to pause there? We're three minutes over and I'll come back to you.
Yeah, and I'm pausing at slide six. And you guys, could you guys bring those as I mentioned the slides?
I'll go back.
Okay.
It's no problem. Your, your comments have been incredibly insightful, so I thank you for them. Let me just see if any of my colleagues have any additional comments at this time.
I don't know if you want to go to.
I'll come to you, Ms. Dewer.
Okay. First of all, you asked us a question. I'm gonna give you my answer. I believe we should separate the code cleanup from the housing initiatives, just really clear, even if they proceed in parallel, so that people know what they're meeting on. Blending the two has created a lot of consternation and, and unneeded tension, in my view. I want your code cleanups to proceed apace, give clarity to builders, to the community. But I really think that the policy initiatives on the housing, and that includes changing uses, density bonuses, going to things by right, need to be packaged as housing initiatives. And I'm not, you know, opposed to them or, or supportive of them. I want to hear them as a package and be able to say, I like this one, this one, we should hold a little bit. I just think it would help the process get you through. I've heard it from almost everyone. They're confused.
Great feedback. Easy, done.
All right. That's my feedback. I don't know if others agree. All right. Number two, there are a number of things that I would support that you've mentioned and some I think we should go slower on or not even consider at this time. I support the comment Councilmember Breckis made about understanding, we've, we made some changes. Are they working? It has to be an incremental feedback. That's key to every, everything we do, right, in our lives. Is, we did a thing, did it work? I, I would like some feedback on that before make more changes. So if you guys could gather some data for us. And I think it's important, I've had, worked on a number of affordable housing units that did not have to go to planning commission. I'll give you an example. The one on Geiger Grade, it's vintage by Steamboat, was already incorporated into a PUD. It was already apartments. But the developer decided to do affordable housing instead of regular apartments. And I heard a lot of feedback from the community there because that's where city meets county. And a lot of the county residents weren't very keen. They felt it was in their space and it was not in an urban space. Four of us supported it and it moved forward. So, and what did we support? We didn't get a rule, a decision-making on the planning. What we did was make a decision on, do they get home funds or not? And we did support them getting home funds, but we were concerned about transportation. It's so far out. We were concerned and they still didn't make the changes I recommended, which was to implement a rapid unit that would go within three miles, just to get people to services like shopping and doctors and schools. They didn't do that, but I would have liked to see that be an element to support the affordable housing that doesn't have access to transportation. Another thing I would support on your part, or, or let me just be clear. So I'd like the answer. How many of our affordable housing projects are even going through a planning commission process now? How many are going straight to building already? In other words, is this change worth the challenge to get us where we want to be?
Good, good feedback.
Capital improvement program, totally all day long. I think we need to prioritize the capital improvement program. And I've seen it. They came in and redid the whole area on Country Club, acres near Virginia Lake, put in upsized pipes and all of this. And developers told us that the size, that there was a physical limitation to being able to build development, including affordable housing, because the pipes weren't big enough. And we, we've upsized them. I mean, it's a big project. TMA was involved. Everybody's involved. I like it, but we have to decide and do the hard work of prioritizing this infill because the public comment said too, oh, you want to infill on my neighborhood, but not your neighborhood? Is it fair? We constantly talk about within the McCarran Ring. Is that the whole McCarran Ring? Is that up Keystone? We gonna allow single-family homes on Kings Row to be taken out and put in duplexes and triplexes right now today? I don't know. So we need to have a, a concrete conversation about it. The reimbursement agreements, you said we can already do, but we're not doing them. I don't understand why. Okay? So something I think worth discussion. The, I am a no on going straight to building permit on those certain kind of projects, including the under 100s. I have, the example I gave earlier was a 14 units. It could have been 21. But guess what? When they made this small change, the develop, the community came out and supported it. They didn't oppose increased sizing, you know, to going to 14 units. And so I think the public input is very valuable in making improvements. I'm yes on improving coordination and I'm so pleased that you are improving internal coordination. I want to make sure all, not, you used the example of engineers. I want to make sure it's not just engineers at the table. I want to make sure the tree people are there, the landscape people are there. The water people are there. In other words, there's different kind of people and I want to make sure they're all. Mr. Managers told me this has already been happening for a year, but you're telling me it's not really happening.
No, what I'm saying is we specifically found engineering to be an issue.
Yeah.
So we are fixing that specific issue.
But not the other components. Like, for example, I'd like sustainability at the table.
We, yes. The answer is yes. We as a staff talk, have meetings. We talk about projects. We talk about what can we do better? The, the example I gave was, again, specifically what we heard the feedback from Shane.
Yeah.
And feedback that we've heard from the development community is those three departments need to do better.
I think all the departments should be at the table, frankly.
Hundred percent. And we are. Gotcha.
Okay. The density bonus, you heard me already. I think we have to first look at the base assessment of density and not give density bonuses for 1,800 square foot, which is in our code today.
It is, yes.
So unless we change that, I can't support the density bonuses. Assign a project person, I think that's a fantastic idea, kind of a shepherd for affordable housing. And one more thing, I don't think that we should be calling 120% of AMI to 60 workforce housing. Traditionally, the definition's been 80% of AMI. In other words, these are folks that work, living just below the average median income. And I don't think we should go over it, frankly. I think we should really keep our eye on the ball. What is workforce housing? I know I, I probably have one or two more things, but I feel like I'm, I've used my time. So I will.
Everyone's gotten a little bit over, so it's okay.
Okay, so I'll come back. Yeah, please. Okay.
Okay. Any other council members have comments at this time? Ms. Ebert, let me come back to you, Ms. Taylor.
A couple, couple of quick ones, actually. So you mentioned the developer impact fees. Do we currently earmark any impact fees to keep them in a specific area? Or does it just go into the city of Reno account to use for infrastructure?
So we currently have one formal impact fee, the police facility impact fee, and that goes citywide. It goes to one, to pay for our new police station.
Okay, so if a developer, you know, per your example, put in.
Yep. The other example is the regional road impact fee. We don't set the, the terms for that. The region does, RTC does, but that is divided up by north and south.
Okay. So like your example, if a developer put in a 14-inch pipe and then the next developer came in and paid a fee, part of that could be used to reimburse the previous developer, but the rest of that could just go into the Reno PD fund or the road fund or whatever. It doesn't necessarily get set aside for other infrastructure needs specifically in the ward where the development happened or anything like that, right?
So for that specific example, the reimbursement agreement, let's say military road. Let's say there's a project and they're gonna come in and they're gonna put in their 10-inch pipe. But we know there's future development happening on military, so it would be smart to put in maybe a 14-inch pipe for the future development.
Yeah.
So the idea is that we would set up a reimbursement agreement with that developer that basically put in an extra four inches, right, for future development. And then as other development comes online, they pay that developer back.
Okay. So all of their reimbursements would go to that developer? There wouldn't be an additional amount that goes into a pot for any other fees or anything else for the city of Reno?
It would be specific to reimbursing. That is a very specific thing to just those projects that come in. They still have to pay the server connection fees. They still have to pay the road impact fees. They, they still have to pay every other fee. The idea is that we would have a separate reimbursement agreement because developer number one put in an extra wide pipe. So they have to reimburse them to now use that pipe. The other option is that they have to put in a whole new pipe for their development, right? And that doesn't make sense.
So it sounds like then that nobody's paying an impact fee. Cause if, if developer one is paying for it and then all future developers are paying them back, then who's actually paying an impact fee?
So everybody pays every impact fee. This is, you were talking two different words. Impact fees, everybody has to pay. That's, that's no matter what, you have to pay that based on your project. Reimbursement agreements are saying, let's proactively look at upsizing pipes. And as development comes online, it's not the city necessarily doing it. It could be developer number one.
Yeah.
They came in, we said, great, you have to put in your pipe. You pay for it, you have to put it in.
I understand that piece of it.
And so then when those other developers come online, because developer number one has basically upsized a pipe, then they have to pay that developer back.
Yeah. So developer one has paid the fee, developer three, four, five pays them back.
Correct.
Okay, so developer one, have they really paid a fee if they've gotten everything paid back?
They paid their portion.
Okay, okay. That's what I was trying to ask. Okay. So I did have another question about the short-term rentals. Do we know, like, what, what is the state of Nevada's rule for tenant protections? Like, how, how long does somebody have to live in a space before you have to go through the whole eviction process? And will that be a part of what we have to take into consideration when we do our rules for short-term rentals?
That specific question has nothing to do with zoning. So we don't, we don't, from a zoning perspective, we do not regulate that. So I can't speak to what the state requires. When we talk short-term rentals, we would be looking at, anyone that wants to do a short-term rental would have to go through a formal process. We would send inspectors out to make sure it meets all the requirements. We collect fees for all of those short-term rentals. But we would also kind of set some parameters of, you know, how many parking, or how many cars can you have parked there? Cause that's a big, a problem. You have, you know, a big party, 20 cars, it's, 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 it's an issue. So we would set zoning regulations on things like, you know, noise and how many cars are allowed to be there. And we would look at how long they can stay. That would be part of our ordinance as well. Again, these are just typical short-term rental ordinance types of things that you would regulate with zoning.
Okay, so would actually include how long a tenant could stay short-term?
We could add, yep. I mean, we would look at kind of some, what are some best practices from other communities? Henderson has a pretty recent code. Washoe County just adopted a code. The interesting part too is it's, it's potentially a major impact on staffing. Washoe County, within the Reno area, doesn't have a whole lot of short-term rentals, but up at the lake, they have a lot of short-term rentals and it is a huge staff resource. They've actually had to hire more staff just to deal with short-term rentals now that they have adopted this new ordinance. So those are the types of things we want to look at before we just adopt an ordinance without understanding the long-term impacts. If we're gonna need more staff to maintain, you know, these, these databases and to go out and do inspections, we want to make sure that we are teed up and ready for that before that ordinance passes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Angela, I just want to say, you and your team are just amazing. You're rock stars. Thank you. And everywhere I go, I hear the same thing. So that, that kind of leads into where I'm gonna start with my comments. I think everything here is fantastic. And there are some things that I'm, I'm, have some questions about, but at this point in the game, I think we're just saying, you know, I'm not here to macro, micromanage the process. I'm not here to say, yes, I'm on this or no, I'm on this. I'm here to say, let's go explore. I am all about looking at all of these items and I thank you for what you've done. So I'm not gonna give you, yes, I, I can support this and no, I can't support this cause I think there's still a lot of things that need to be happening. And I can get to that decision because first of all, I think that we have the most qualified, talented professional team out there and I hear it every single day. So thank you. The second thing is, I know we're gonna continue to have stakeholder engagement process. This isn't the first or last time we're gonna talk about this. It's gonna be an ongoing conversation. Again, we're not making decisions here. And I know that we're gonna, we are good at that. We have a great communications department and a great team. And I think going back to our first presentation, we heard what some of the data has. And I think going back to our first presentation, we heard what some of the data has done already with, with, uh, Ms. Cochran, new name, presentation, when we started that off with B five, showing us where we have been and where we're going and what we've done with the data. So that gives me a level of comfort today saying, yes, let's go explore all of these options. And based on, you know, what we're, we're hearing today, we need to bring more affordable housing to our region. So very much appreciative, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, thank you Director Fuess for providing, you know, overall comprehensive uh, view of what you all have been doing. Um, and I want to give some kudos to Director Pingry as well for your shout-out. I caught that while you were saying it, so I appreciate you acknowledging his efforts. Um, similar to what my colleagues have said, I want to make sure that, um, our residents in our neighborhoods are aware of the processes that are going on. And if we are exploring the idea of increasing by right approvals for anything under a hundred units, that, that is communicated to them and that these neighborhood plans have the input from those stakeholders and that they're including that. Because similar to what we saw in the redistricting process, there was a lot of feedback, um, that we had received. And I think this is to a similar magnitude of that, that can impact the, the how Reno looks in the next ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so we want to make sure that everybody who lives here is looking at, moving into this area, understands how we're looking at zoning in the Reno region and what we're gonna do, um, to increase affordable housing options. Um, so I just wanted to put that on the record. And then I think, um, the other thing I wanted to ask about, um, is your thoughts on, um, I think you talked about it a little bit, is, uh, let me just go to it, sorry. Uh, slide number. Oh no, it's in your staff report. So AB two thirteen.
Yes.
Uh, which allows municipalities to make various changes to land use planning processes and create expedited process for affordable housing projects.
Yes.
Your thoughts on that a little bit more?
For those of you that don't know, I should have brought this up, AB two thirteen was passed by the legislature. There is a number of new regulations, um, and reporting requirements on housing. And so the two things that from a zoning perspective we were looking at is that each local jurisdiction is supposed to come up with an expedited process for reviewing affordable housing projects. So as part of the code cleanup, we were gonna include some of those things. Um, one of them is again, affordable housing projects with that sixty percent AMI or greater could go to building permit and would not have to go through that public hearing process. And they still have to meet height requirements and setback requirements and zoning requirements, they can't get around that. And then we've talked about that, um, that liaison person at the building permit process that would also help to expedite through the building permit process.
And for, um, the project coordinator that you were talking about earlier, would that be a new position or someone who was already in-house and assigned?
It would be in-house, because we get them so infrequently, you know, three to four a year, we can manage it in-house with the staff we have now.
Okay, and then the other only comment that I wanted to talk about is, uh, workforce housing. And I understand that traditionally the eighty percent AMI is what the definition has been, but from the conversations and the presentations, um, even a hundred percent AMI isn't really attainable housing in our region. And so the rates that people are getting paid don't match the rent and mortgage levels that we're seeing in our area. And so being, understanding of our specific needs in our region is gonna be beneficial to us as a council.
Great.
Okay, Ms. Fuess, I'm gonna start here and then I'll come to Ms. Breckus. So, um, there are a number of different, uh, recommendations and, and, uh, issues, and I just want to make sure you have direction. I think the thing that has been clear from colleagues and from the public is this question about separating the cleanup items out from um, the other policy initiatives, that seems a wise choice based on what you're hearing today. Um, there are some questions I have for you that would arise when we separate them out. And so I'll sort of reserve those for that time. But in passing, I think some of what you've said, uh, resonates with me in terms of how we can make small incremental steps that may ultimately impact the housing shortage that we're, we're dealing with. And so I'll wait to hear back from you on that. I don't know that we have enough data to tell anybody that any of the things that we did two years ago are now then working. Plus we've had, you know, the, uh, a strange economic climate of the last two years following a pandemic. So I just, I'm not sure that you're gonna get reliable data based on that. And so again, more of the, um, we, we're probably gonna have to take a leap of faith on some of those issues, especially when you've identified, you know, people don't totally understand the density bonus or bump, because what they're thinking is somehow a single one-third parcel is all of a sudden gonna house thirty people. I, I think you just have to quantify it the way that you did today, so I think that's good. Um, the question about, uh, allowed by right, I think again, reserved for another time. But I think I, uh, am more closely aligned with Ms. Breckus in that there are ways in which that is a planning tool could be effective. I don't want to eliminate any public processes or any ability of the public to have an opinion on some of those things. And so maybe it is the way that Mr. Phillips described it, which is going back into the neighborhoods and figuring that out. But we're making a choice, right? If we have greater public process, and you look at some communities where public process derails these projects in a heartbeat. I mean, San Francisco is a good example. Someone wants to build a, a affordable housing project in an existing neighborhood. And yet, you know, something that all of us would probably say, yeah, that's a great aspirational goal, has been tied up in, in uh, sort of bureaucracy for twenty years to develop a parcel. So these things happen, I, I hope they won't happen here. Uh, let us continue our coordinating efforts with all of our regional partners. I have the privilege of serving on the District Board of Health, uh, now Northern Nevada Public Health, uh, uh, which is the new name for it. And so I do hear a fair amount of times, cause a constituent calls me and they say, well, I don't really understand all the multitude of committees that you all serve on, but here's my issue. And they're talking about their inability to get a permit through on a pool. Or maybe they have an interesting water system. And what I do is I come to you, I come to Mr. Pingry and I say, help this person navigate it. So I would like to see more of that. Um, I'm not sure about the ADU ordinance. I, I'm not sure, I think that that's a priority among the things that you've represented to me. In part because as I talked about with Mr. Phillips, I'm not sure that someone is gonna go out and all of a sudden, we're gonna have a thousand ADU units. They seem like a good idea, but I'm not sure they will get us the housing stock we're looking for. And so maybe my focus might not be there, but I'm inclined to listen to what my colleagues have to say. I do think duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes, sounds like a good idea. I think that those also can be something that, uh, allows us to find a way to provide the kind of housing stock that is needed for, uh, you know, I, I'll, I'll pick on my own children, a brand-new teacher, uh, a public defender, uh, you know, a, a housing policy analyst. Those are the kind of jobs that, or the kind of housing that would be supportive of those people. I myself have lived in, I tried to do the math earlier. I've lived in eleven places in my lifetime in Reno. I've lived in everything from a small apartment, uh, where I was, uh, raised on Neal Road, uh, to townhomes, duplexes. I've lived on Mary Street in Midtown, I've lived in Sparks, I've lived in Reno. Most of my life has been inside of Northwest Reno. Uh, but even then, I've lived in four different homes in my lifetime. So we just have to have different types of housing availability for folks. Um, the STO, or the short-term rentals, again, I'm not sure that that's where my focus would be on. In part because I think that that is largely the province of the state and then the county. So we fall at the very end of the pecking, uh, order on that. And I think it creates pitfalls when we are doing something that maybe our neighbors in Sparks are not doing, or the county is not doing. So going it alone in that space is very problematic. Um, it, it really needs to come from a, a level just above ours, either at the county level or, um, the state level. Um, so I'm not sure where I would fall on that. But again, because I think we should uncouple some of them, I think we can get, uh, further into it when the time arises. And I, I've gone over a little bit myself now, so I've gone as fast as I could, I did speak quickly, so I apologize for that. But sharing with you my thoughts.
Thank you.
We'll come now to Ms. Breckus, thank you so much for being patient.
Yeah, you know, um, going back to slide four, and just to kind of close this up, is this item is about Title eighteen. So there's a lot in here that's not about Title eighteen, but it seems to be captured in the motion that you suggest. And I don't think that's really, you know, consistent with, you know, how the, the discussion is phrased. So, you know, looking through these, on Title fourteen, or on slide four, um, cleanup to allow density bonuses. I want to make sure that if the council's going through something, it's not a check the box. We did something, we moved some, some, uh, standards. Um, but, you know, they're not delivering. That's just telling ourselves stories and we need some evidence to produce that. Um, and it can't certainly be creating bad faith that we're not tackling the big issues. Okay, so let's just be clear with ourselves, how many years we're into this housing crises from the Tesla effect? And, um, you know, how we're gonna get the most for what we've done? Cause we'd had a workshop eight, twenty months ago and nothing got done. And I'm, you know, whatever, but, um, you know, let's, let's just not tell ourselves stories, cause I think people see through it. So the project coordinator, I'll leave that for a sec. Um, the, the, back to Title eighteen on slide five, the by right, the hundred or less. Um, I want to know how many apartments we've done a hundred or less, um, that didn't go by right? You know, I really want the data to understand if this is where we should clean up. But I did not know, although, you know, I probably would have liked it in the staff report background of this AB twenty-two thirteen. Is this AB two thirteen in the cleanup that's out for reviewing right now with your six, um, your six workshops that Mr. Johnson referred to, is that embedded into that?
It is.
It is, okay, so, so we got that one covered, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, so, and we initiated that, cause we had an item on cleaning up from the Nevada Legislature, right?
So again, we, we felt that the legislature told us to do this thing.
Yeah.
And as part of the code cleanup, we felt it was a, a small enough change that it could be considered a cleanup.
Yeah, and, and preemption is preemption and we always respond to what the legislature brings forward. So I don't have a problem, it would have been nice to have that little information. Um, now, the staff items on item six. I'm glad you all are meeting and coordinating, this doesn't live in Title eighteen, correct? You're not recommending a Title eighteen thing right now.
Let me help, maybe help you understand. So Shane gave us a presentation. I followed up his presentation to let you know what we are currently working on, initiatives we're working on that tie into what Shane just told you. So this is a broader discussion.
Okay.
And we're also talking about some of the changes that Shane proposed related to zoning that we're proposing as part of the cleanup.
I'm gonna cut you off, cause, you know, we have these rigid timeframes that I've never supported. But on B six, um, or on slide six, coordination is great. I had ideas to redo our subdivision process through a technical review committee rather than the planning commission. I had, I had recommendations, it would have been in Title eighteen, but it lives for a far further day. Um, but I'm glad you're doing coordination. And up above, you also recommended this staff coordinator, and then you said we have so few of those. Um, I think a lot of what Dr., um, uh, Phillips brought forward is, um, has to get us back to neighborhood planning. When I got here in nineteen ninety-eight, the city of Reno had tons of neighborhood plants. That's where you go through and put the duplexes, the triplexes, and the higher density in. And people like, uh, Dr. Phillips who look at other places, or the Clarion folks, really want to push by right. And I support that and I think it's very clear. But they don't realize the context in Reno where we haven't done neighborhood planning. We've actually given, gotten away from it. We have less neighborhood planning and long-range planning than we have ever had, despite, you know, council discussions and directions to stand up a neighborhood planning program, a long-range planning program. So I think that's, rather than your streamlined person to do four projects a year, I'd rather see a robust discussion on, um, restoring that, that missing middle of your planning efforts from comprehensive to, uh, code, code conformity. The ADU ordinance, I think that's gonna be next. Uh, but at the end of the day, my priorities here for this council are the ADU ordinance, is a short-term rental ordinance, which you talked about the zoning, but I think Dr. Phillips really talked about it in terms of the housing supply. And I want an up and down vote on rent stabilization ordinance, uh, from this council. I think everyone needs to be out there at this point, tested to whether or not they support rental, added rental protections. And I've, I know we have new folks, I know we have folks who have taken positions on it outside of this table before. But I think what I hear, a population that's been so struggling with day-to-day, uh, housing, is, is this council gonna stand for a rent stabilization ordinance or not? So my priorities, rather than these pushing your density, is the ADU, the short-term rental, getting your code cleanup, and a discussion here whether or not we're prepared to move forward with the rent stabilization ordinance. But, um, I guess I'm at time. I also want to understand the, the rest of the meeting, because the mayor who I think we've lost it for, for the, is she coming back?
I don't know.
Okay, but she said we're breaking after this B two, correct?
Yes, that's true.
And then, um, cause we only, we only went with four hours for this meeting and it's two. So can B three and B four move on to a different council agenda, so we can have the mayor back and everyone else back at some point?
I don't know if we'll have the opportunity, but we're gonna continue to power forward, we'll take a brief break.
We are gonna go beyond our two PM closed time?
We, I show it on our calendar until three.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, okay.
It's okay.
Okay, three o'clock, okay.
We will try not to truncate any of the presentations.
Okay, sounds great. Um, I'm ready to make a motion on this one, if you are.
Um, I, I may be, in just one second, I know Ms. Dewar would like to speak before, uh, we close out the discussion.
Yeah. Um, great, thank you. Um, a few things, and I want to, uh, concur with a number of things I heard from my colleagues. Um, I, I would want any motion to make sure that we separate the code cleanup from housing initiatives. So I'm looking forward to that in a motion. Um, number two, for years, I asked for neighborhood planning on a couple places, all the way in suburbia, down South Reno, uh, for the hillside developments in the foothills, so that we could understand where urban meets, um, wildland interface, whether it's fires, trails, um, transportation. I wanted all of that done before these developments came in. It never happened. I asked for it year after year, but it was never a planning priority. And so developments just sort of came in with lots of issues in my opinion, couldn't really support them. Even last meeting, we deferred a development in the foothills, so we could continue to work on it. So closer in, we, in the area I mentioned before, the Warren, Lakeside, Plumas, Moana, that area, um, we were promised that with the code changes, planning would start having neighborhood meetings. That was two years ago, we've had zero neighborhood meetings. And so those residents, their only opportunity is come to a nab, which doesn't make a decision, right, makes recommendations, come here, but it's not been the front and center issue, right? Is that we're going to suddenly move from, we just allowed, for example, MF fourteen, MF twenty-one, not just limited to MF thirty. Um, we added those back, but we still didn't have any neighborhood meetings to talk about, okay, what's next? What if we come in with MF forty-five, is everybody okay with that? Um, there was a lot of tension over the Lakewood development, where we had a three hundred-plus home, uh, apartments proposed on incredibly busy intersection, it was a divided council vote. Um, clearly, we're not ready for that kind of densification on major arterials in a planned unit development that never anticipated that. We have apartments, but not at that density. So what I want to make sure is that the neighborhood meetings do move forward prior to making these kind of changes. Any kind of, um, this level of densification. Um, on Tamwah, so I, I'm the current vice chair of Tamwah, I hundred percent think that they could do better in terms of responding to a development project. It shouldn't take that many months. They do a very detailed job. They come up with papers that specify the size of the tower, uh, the size of the lines, all of this. Do they need to get to that level of determination before saying, yeah, we could prov- probably provide water? That's a question, is level of detail, takes three or six months? Could we change that level of review to give developers opportunity to move forward, knowing there's water? But they're gonna have to cross a bridge as far as what does that cost? What does it look like, how many water towers, et cetera, it's gonna take? Um, I'm gonna want a conversation on the ADUs and STRs, I have to agree, I'm not sure that's present. But I, I will say I did support moving forward ADUs, my development itself is the only one that by right today that exists. Many PUDs say they'll do them, but they haven't been built. You, you mentioned in your report Stonegate, Daybreak, the Canyons. You said all of these allow ADUs?
Correct.
But none of them are built, even started building.
Correct.
So the only one to my knowledge that does is my own development. And P, about a third of the people have built ADUs. And I really believe in supporting families. So if you have extended family, aging parents, uh, children that are trying to make their way, that they have a place to live that is potentially separate from their family, but close to their family and less expensive, I support that concept. Do I support the ADUs, uh, becoming rentals in some cases, where there is sufficient parking? But this is all in my mind for another day, this is not part of code cleanup. This is its own initiative and we have to completely vet. We heard from Newlands before that they weren't ready, okay? There are some developments that have CCNRs that prohibit them. And then ours allows them.
And then ours allows them. There's got to be a middle ground. And what I had recommended to Newlands at the time was come up with an overlay. You don't have CCNRs. You don't have HOAs. But you do have a unique community and, and the parking is not necessarily there. So I want to potentially not eliminate them from the whole city, but I also want to do some really careful placement on where, where they're appropriate. And then finally, I have a question for you. The same question I asked for Dr. Phillips.
Yeah.
What do we do to support this missing middle? You're, you're saying just include it in single-family. I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed with that, but I want to know what it looks like. Again, I posed the question, is it okay on Kings Row? You've got all these single-family homes. Could somebody take one of those down and build a four-plex just in the middle of all the single-family?
So again, there's, we've provided a, a multitude of things to help with that missing middle. I don't think any one by itself is going to make a single small dent. I think even all of the items that we proposed are barely going to move the needle. None of these, in my mind, are big enough to make a huge, significant impact on our housing.
Okay.
But if we do nothing, we're going to have this conversation over and over and say, gosh darn it, why isn't it getting better? Because we're not doing anything to try and make it better.
Yeah.
What we're proposing is some small things that can help to slowly make it better.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Duer, that was the longest one in the history of the universe. And you know I'm just harassing you at this point. Angela, I think, or Ms. Foose, I apologize. Your comment there was probably the most informative and instructive. And I, so I'll pause for a minute. I think the issue is, is if we do nothing, if we continue to believe that Reno is a place that should be a time capsule for all time and memorial, put a bubble on it, not address the issues that we face, then we will be having this conversation perpetually. It's like a bad version of Groundhog Day. So I think, again, I go back to something we said earlier, which is there's tools in the toolbox. We got to deploy them. Let us choose together which ones to deploy and how, knowing that not all of them are going to work. Not all of them are going to have the intended effect and we may fail. But as our mayor is fond of saying, you know, if we're not trying, we're going to fail. And if we don't plan, we plan to fail, right? So those are things that we have to remember. And so I think, again, your comment was instructive and I just think it's important to point out. Thanks a lot. I'm going to come to you, Ms. Breckus, and see if we can craft a motion together that will get us all through this item. I'll point out that the recommended motion was fairly generic. And so I don't know how specific you desire to see us get to.
I think we need to get more specific than what is on the table there. I think recommending, accept the report would have been in B1. You know, we accept the report, just acknowledgement that we've seen it, read it, and understood it.
Do you want to take that as the first motion?
No, no, um, no, I, I, I think it really was up above. And, and provide feedback to staff. I mean, we just gave all that. I think we need to narrow it down, especially, you know, I've been waiting for action on our last affordable housing workshop for over 20 months. And, you know, and, and then we have a new report, which I didn't even know was coming. So I think we need to get very specific and up. And so here's, and, and if we go with that, I think what we go with is what the presentation was. And the presentation doesn't even reflect Title 18 specifically. So here are my recommendations. I think that we need staff upon the conclusion of their public engagement or the Title 18 cleanup to bring forward to the council a memo of that clean back, cleanup and any modifications to their draft, review draft.
Could you say it again, please?
Yeah, I think the council needs, or staff needs, at the summary of their six scheduled public input meetings, to compile the input that they've received and let council know any modifications to their review draft that they're putting into an adoption draft that will go through the planning commission and the city council.
For code cleanup?
Yes, for the code cleanup. And with that, they need to highlight any housing-specific policies, like the AB 213, okay? And I think that just brings up the clarity that Mr. Johnson brought up, first of all. I think they need to examine, examine all apartment, and I, saying apartment, I'm not saying condos because those go through subdivision permitting since the code adoption. And let us know how many went to by right and how many went through planning commission entitlement. And if they went through planning commission entitlement, what those triggers were. That lets us know if our focus at this point needs to be these density bonuses or the affordable versus non-affordable. And then with that information and review, which I think could be done very easily, they return to council with that information and ask us what we want to prioritize as our next steps among Dr. Shane's recommend, Dr. Phillips's recommendations.
In fairness to Mr. Phillips, I don't think he's obtained a doctorate yet.
Okay, okay, I apologize.
But I, I mean, he might want you to refer to him as that, but I'm just sharing that with you.
And, 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 and return that to council with the recommendations in here to let us pick which one we want. They, they've highlighted this one. I don't think it's the one. I'm not going to mention the ADUs because that's our next item. And then third, they need to return to us very soon, prior to budget discussions, the outline of a neighborhood planning program to the council. So, so summary of the, the zoning code cleanup that they're in process. If they're refining their draft into any changes in their adoption version that's going to planning commission and city council, do the research on how we are permitting apartments since we redid code Title 18. Let us know how many, how those have all been permitted out, apartments. And the definition of apartment is two or more.
Great, this is, great, great feedback. We can work on that.
The definition of apartment?
Five.
Is five or more, okay. So you know the definition. And then, and then return to council with that information and then go through the bullet, bullet points of the recommendations and let us know.
Okay.
Choose that, you know, maybe by the end of the year, hopefully. And then outline to us also a neighborhood planning program and what that looks like.
I'll second that.
Okay, and now we'll have discussion on the motion. I'll start off. Ms. Foose, do you understand the inquiry? It's a bit of an untraditional motion. Normally, a motion would have a very specific and finite set of things. And this is more like feedback couched as a motion. Do you understand what's been requested?
Maybe we can even go one step further from the feedback I heard from the rest of council. I'm going to pull out all of the housing topics on the zoning code update.
Check.
And we're going to do separate. So we're not going to talk about those as part of the code cleanup.
No, see, I think if you've got a review draft out right now and you've got the housing stuff in there, I mean, you're not, what, you know, other than this AB 213, what's in there?
So again, the items we went over today are the items that I'm hearing from the rest of council. You want me to pull out and do a separate housing text amendment.
And Ms. Foose, I'm characterizing those as policy questions, right? Not the code cleanup, which I, I am really thinking about what you've already undertaken. And so I think we're saying the same thing, but I want to make sure that we're clear for your benefit.
I, yes, yes, we are.
Okay. Does that meet your needs, Ms. Breckus?
Well, I mean, you've got 400 pages, you've got the code marked up in a review draft.
We do.
How many of those are some of the policy items that were before us? Other than AB 213?
I, I think there was probably six items that we went over today. Those are the six items, I believe, that would fall under the housing policy question.
And you have those right now in the code markup that's going to the meeting at McKinley?
We do.
I, I didn't know that. I mean, that's kind of, that's kind of jumping ahead, maybe.
And I think you, you are, that's what we're saying, is we're going to pull those out. We're not going to leave them in. We're going to do a separate housing text amendment so then we can talk about it some more and get more clear direction.
Yeah, I didn't realize that the cleanup that Clarion talked to us two years about doing drove in these large policy considerations without the background direction from staff. So yeah, if that's the case, yes, my motion would encompass that.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarity.
Yes, and I've seconded the motion.
You have. Any additional comments at this time? Mr. Manager, you look like you'd like to add something to the discussion.
I don't, I don't know that I have anything to add. I think for clarity's sake that all of the goals expressed by Councilmember Breckus can be achieved almost simply by running these text amendments in, in parallel. So the 400 items of cleanup and the housing policy questions that we've gone over here today, I think just a, a very simple motion that says, pull these out, continue with the process, and then we come back for the broader discussion as to whether or not you wish to move forward with some or all of these considerations is the direction that we're hearing and, and we can take pretty easily.
Understand. And Ms. Breckus added a couple of nuanced things there. There was the issue about the planning process. So given that, are we still happy with where you are, Ms. Breckus, with the motion?
Well, I mean, the direction to staff is, is specific, you know, you know, work on your cleanup. If you have non-AB 213 and other technical things in there related to policy setting, I think you do pull it out. It's kind of problematic because you've got it out for a review draft and you've got public meetings set. So, you know, that's going to be operationally hard, you know, something to deal with. Then two, you're going to run that data to let us know, you know, where our best bang for the buck is going to be on your resources. And then you'll sketch out a, a neighborhood planning program to us. And I'd like all of this, I don't want this to come through on memo form. You know, memo form, memo form. I really want the discussion to be here in a transparent manner. I think that's what, you know, the public wants to.
And as the secondor, if I may, I wanted to just support the motion. And I, I think it gives more clarity than, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, what you said. I really think it gives us some key information that will really help us make a decision when you come back instead of being vague and unclear.
Mm-hmm, no, 100%. I, I, I understand what you're saying. I think we're all kind of saying the same thing. I will put it together, we'll come back, and we'll keep moving with the zoning code cleanup so that's not going to slow the process down. We'll add a new process to talk about housing and that will run parallel.
Understand. And before we do make a, a actual affirmative vote, I want to come to Carl Hall or Mr. Shipman. The neighborhood planning program, I'm just making sure that it is within the purview of our open meeting law to have it been discussed.
I think in light of the fact that we're bringing it back, I think we're fine with that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion. I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll be in recess.
Half hour? 20 minutes?
Uh, 20 minutes. We're, we're going to try to see what we can do in 20 minutes.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
All right, Vice Mayor?
Or City Attorney?
Oh. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Great. Great. Got it? I am ready. Got it. B7, got it, got it. All right, Vice Mayor, if you are ready to reconvene this meeting, we'll reconvene at 2:34 with Councilmember Ebert and Mayor Shebe absent at this time.
Okay, Ms. Ebert is here. She's just in the back, so just note that. But Ms., Madam Mayor is absent at this time. For my colleagues' benefit, I'll just say that what we're going to do with the time we have remaining, however much time it is we have, is we're going to look at Items B3 and B6. So that's Boo 3 and Boo 6. Boo 4 is off the agenda as needing to be required to be re-noticed at a different time. And B7 will be continued to another date. So let's get started with B3, Item Boo 3.
Great, and I think that's Grace McAden. And I did have public comment registered for this, but it does not appear that either of them have re-entered the room. So I will just state for the record that for Item B3, we did receive one comment associated with this item prior to, prior to 4:00 PM yesterday, October 31st. That has been distributed to the Reno City Council and as a part of the record. All right, and so we're moving into presentation.
All right. Good afternoon, councilmembers. Grace McAden, Senior Management Analyst, for the record, here to discuss the potential initiation of an ADU or accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And just to clarify, we are bringing this forward based on direction staff got from council over a year ago at that workshop that's been mentioned a couple times today. First, I think it's important to clear up what an accessory dwelling unit or an ADU actually is. An ADU is a smaller, independent residential dwelling unit located on the same lot as a standalone, single-family house. These can be either attached to the primary house or detached. Oftentimes, we get calls from people who have aging parents, which has been discussed, or kids that would like a place close from, close to home, but may, maybe not the same house. And these are typically how these ADUs are utilized in neighborhoods. So this has been discussed as well. ADUs are not the magic bullet to fix affordability. They are simply another tool in the toolbox, toolbox to help our affordability crisis. It's an easy way to create more housing options in certain neighborhoods and they increase an opportunity for infill. I think there's some misinformation about ADUs and what they will do for a community. Currently, today, the city allows for residential properties to have an accessory structure and a guest quarters. The only difference between a guest quarters and an ADU is a full kitchen. Here are some examples. So these pictures on the slide are guest quarters that are legal, current places in the city of Reno. There are specific restrictions for these accessory structures and that's something that could also be required for ADUs. There's also a number of areas within the city that currently allow for accessory dwelling units. Greensfield, which has been mentioned, Damani Ranch allows for ADUs, Spring Mountain, Somerset in certain areas, Stonegate, Talis Valley and the Canyons all allow for ADUs today. Through some preliminary research, I found that most ordinances regulate for things like zoning, lot sizes, ADU size, height, parking compatibility and utilities. I think this figure shows how a lot of ADUs end up fitting into a neighborhood and how most people don't even realize that they're there. They may be built into the house and they allow for owners to utilize space that may not be being used currently. So this is just the first step in the process to adopting an ADU ordinance. Should council vote to initiate an ADU ordinance, staff will go do the research. We'll find some best practices of what other jurisdictions. some best practices of what other jurisdictions are currently doing, what's working, what's not working. Then we'll get council feedback again on the direction that we're headed to make sure that we're going down the right path. After that, we'll do public outreach, draft an ordinance, go forward to Planning Commission and City Council. So, there'll be ample opportunities for the public to weigh in and give their input. Here is the recommended motion, and I am available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McAden, for the presentation outstanding. Any questions or comments from the body? Ms. Breckus, the floor is yours.
Yeah. I mean, I have long supported ADUs. I have support as broad of availability, opportunity across the city, to the point that I believe we should examine whether or not city ordinance could come over and lay over CCNRs or a legislative agenda that preempts CCNRs. And everyone heard my discussion with Mr. Shane Phillips on that. So, there's precedent, I believe, on that in California. So, that's how I support them. I also, you know, in the intervening years since 2016, questions of owner occupancy or not, I'm comfortable with not having owner occupancy. I also am comfortable with, and you didn't put it into your parameters, I think maybe I didn't see it anyway, is subdividing lots. It's, it'd be a parcel map, parcel map allowances. One problem we do have, and it's not an ADU ordinance, but it is a standards issue that's problematic in secondary primary units, is the allowance on a zero lot line. There's an unfortunate circumstance in my neighborhood where someone built what you might call an ADU, but it's really a second primary units because it's Zone M of 14, and they let two units. And someone was under the code allowed to build a above garage unit to the zero lot line on a side yard, and litigation ensued because no one gave permission. If you build on the zero lot line, you need access from your neighbor. And I don't know how it came out that that was permitted, but that shouldn't be permitted. So, we really do need to make sure we've got setbacks in good place, but I think all the other single-family zoning districts' standards are acceptable. I just offer the allowance for subdivision and not requiring owner occupancy and as wide as possible and as many zoning districts as possible, and exploring overriding CCNRs. And I'm, don't believe those need to be parked. ADUs do not need to be parked in my world. Thank you. But, but, this council needs to stand up a dedicated parking program for all areas. I think Mr. Phillips brought that in pretty well. I think the ad hoc nature of all of a sudden, there's a petition and everyone gets private resources on the street like we had two meetings ago is not good faith to our residents. It treats some equal, more equal than others. And I also think developers are being pretty foolish in how they're building in these reduced parking areas. So, ADUs coming in is just going to be another issue of where we need a dedicated parking division and not a stepchild parking program.
Okay. Any other colleagues have comments? Ms. Doer, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I support ADUs generally, but I differ fairly significantly with my colleague. I believe that they should have fairly tight regulation. The considerations that you put on Slide five, I think are reasonable considerations. But I would add, I do believe that they should be able to have kitchens, unlike, I'm, I'm not sure, this slide doesn't speak to that.
No, I was, I was saying that a guest quarters is allowed today. The only difference between a guest quarters and an ADU is, is the kitchen.
So, ADU would have kitchen. Right. So, I do support having kitchen. And I want to tell you why I support them. First and foremost, it is a vote for families. It is a supportive housing option for extended families, multi-generational living. So, that's my focus. Secondary focus is the issue of can you then rent them to a non-family member? Perhaps, well, if we move forward, I would like you to research whether there could be a vesting period where maybe they start as a family option, but maybe over time, five or 10 years, they could, or even last two years, I don't know, they could potentially evolve into a rental unit. But that would have to go side by side with short-term rental regulations. That, that's one bundle. And the other bundle is if you're going to rent it out long-term. And if you're going to rent it out long-term, then I want to make sure all of these things are discussed and vetted. And then finally, I think that we really need neighborhood input on this. So, I, I really think it should be okayed by a majority of a neighborhood, however you draw those lines, whether they have CCNRs or HOAs or not. I don't think, I don't agree with my colleague that we should be able to trump, I'll use that word, CCNRs at this point. I, I think that those are put in for a reason, to have a certain design standard. So, if your CCNRs, for example, Country Club Acres, which is, had previously been in my ward, says, "We're not going to have them," and it's by CCNR, I don't think that we should take an ordinance that overcomes that. Okay? So, I think we should do some neighborhood planning, and to me, that means more than go to the NABS. Okay? Because the NABS cover many neighborhoods. They cover neighborhoods with HOA, CCNRs, non-CCNRs. And so, I don't know how you accomplish this, but I do think it's important to get very specific neighborhood input. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the body? Okay, for my part, I'll say that with regard to the ADU, moving it forward, I think it's fine to do that. I think we're at a time where we can consider, I guess it came before the council in 2016 and get where it needed to go at that time. So, we'll have to have that conversation again. I do think that Ms. Doer's view of the, the issues is much more in line with mine and consistent with a belief that not every neighborhood is either, maybe it's historic in nature, and so that's not a good fit for it, or it's designed in such a way that it's not a good fit for it. So, these things about minimum lot sizes and maximum ADU sizes are attempting to thread that needle. And so, I think there will be other issues that are revealed through the process, but just to initiate it and have us come back and start having those conversations, certainly in favor. Okay? Any other questions at this time, comments? Okay, Ms. Doer, can I get a motion?
Sure.
Councilmember Reese, if you would like, we do have Mr. Lofton here. He was one of our public.
Oh, absolutely. Mr. Lofton, welcome. Sorry to keep you here all day.
Jeffrey Lofton for public comment.
But you're welcome to the dais.
Good afternoon, Council. Jeffrey Lofton. I just wanted to say thank you for taking these things under advisement that staff, that staff's working on. ADUs are, are an interesting hot-button issue in, in my work, both in realty and in small infill development. I see families trying to make their financial picture work and, and trying to do so with the property that they've purchased. In terms of density bonus, these are, these are all kind of creative tools that are my everyday toolbox towards helping people make their equations work. So, many of you know that when I moved here in 2010, I opened up a, a college bookstore at campus, and I don't know that I've ever mentioned to you guys that I was on an airplane sitting next to the late Mayor Bob Kachell, who I was telling my, felt like the city council wasn't listening, and I was trying to, you know, I was trying to grow my business. And in using language more colorful than what I will share today, he explained that there were big wheels turning and that's, and that I needed to do the best that I could for my business while I could, and, and I took that advice to heart. My point is just to say, these, these types of projects, so I think of these as projects. So, I do permit coordination and also do property management. So, I don't know how many people in this room wrote three leases yesterday, but I did. And that was for one person moving into a duplex with her, with her boyfriend, who was stoked to have a unit, and then two people moving into triplexes, or actually a, a group of three guys that don't have any cars at all, that commute back and forth to Chewy in a car-share kind of a thing. And it's like, look, our, our city is amazing. I actually lived in 17 US cities for, for durations of, of time ranging from, from six months to, to multiple years before I, I came to Reno. And Reno is amazing for all the reasons that you know. People are coming here for all of the reasons that we know. And I think it's really important to remember that a project like an ADU is very self-selecting, right? This is a family who has a plan that's probably more creative and complex and reasons that are probably more detailed. And I want to emphasize that because I do these types of projects every day, this isn't ma, waving a magic wand and a bunch of these things are going to pop up. I, I love the way staff will sit and interface. We have brilliant, dedicated staff, and I'm so grateful to be able to send an email and expect an answer back. I'm so grateful that staff does respond within 10 days. That doesn't exist other places. When I moved to Reno, that's not what was going on. And so, it's amazing that we have all these dramatic improvements and such a dedicated staff that's bringing these issues forward. Density, I'm the guy that's using this density bonus thing, and I can tell you what it looks like. At 470 Clermont, where they couldn't get that house sold, I told my client, "Hey, this density bonus will allow you to bonus in a basement unit where four, four veterans can, can get back and forth to appointments. They just want a room to their, to themselves or maybe a shared room." And that this is the type of thing that the density bonus is being used for in infill. To, to Mrs. Fu's comment, Mrs. Fu's comments earlier regarding the fact that infill is very different than what happens out in the North Valleys, it makes a lot of sense to provide CIP credits to infill projects specifically, specifically because they're different by nature. So, sorry about how much short, was, I didn't know I was going to be here for five hours. I thought I was going to come in this morning, so thank you so much.
We didn't know we were going to be here for that long either, but we, do me a favor, Mr. Lofton, just connect with my staff. I'd like to have coffee with you when we get a chance. I don't know that we've had the privilege of meeting, but thank you for being here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. And so, you were asking Councilmember Doer for a motion.
Yes, I am.
Yes. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that council initiate amendment to Title 18, which would allow construction of accessory dwelling units, and this is where I differ from the drafted motion, in certain districts and certain neighborhoods, and with specific design standards.
Second. I'd like to have discussion.
We have a motion by Ms. Doer, a second by Mr. Martinez, and now discussion on the motion.
Yeah. Let me just start by saying the reason I added "in certain neighborhoods" is just because, for example, we have single-family zoning. I don't think it's appropriate to put the ADUs in all single-family zoning, no matter what it is. So, I really think we have to go neighborhood by neighborhood. Thank you.
Do you have any?
Ms. Breckus.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm a little confused when you say certain neighborhoods. Who's going to decide what neighborhoods?
You're going to get input. My impression of how this would work is that they would do a series of meetings in different neighborhoods.
Okay.
To discuss the openness to that neighborhood to have an ADU and what those issues might be. One neighborhood might be parking. Another neighborhood might be something to do with heights or density. I don't know. That's the information I want to get back so that we can craft a good ordinance.
So, they're going to go out to the public then with this initiation? And here, you know, when they say certain neighborhoods, are they going to all neighborhoods for this input?
Um, what I'm saying is I said more than five, which are five NABS, more than five.
Okay.
And let's say less than 50. So, the, they will figure out what is a neighborhood and what make, they, we have something called Neighborhood Services. We have something called In Hand. It's called Neighborhood Development.
So, they're to go to council, to the public and say, "Council didn't give us any direction on certain neighborhoods."
No.
"We're here to hear what neighborhoods would be, you know, what neighborhoods sound like a good idea."
Let me give you an example.
So, the drawing, line gets drawn by this public input or compiled by staff on this public input on where the certain neighborhoods are.
Right. I'll give you an example, and I'm, I'm not sure if I'm over my skis here, but let's just take Collin Ranch. I don't know what their CCNRs are, if they have HOAs, if there's seven separate developments within Collin Ranch. Just as we have Somerset, there's many subdevelopments in Somerset, but one estate homes has allowed ADUs. What I'm asking is at least have a meeting in some of our bigger developments or areas that have become identified as a unique area, like Newlands. They're not an HOA, not a CCNR, but we know they've spoken on the topic. They have an opinion. Many of them do. Have a neighborhood meeting, talk to them. Is, is there huge opposition? Is there some support? And that's what I'm suggesting. And I can't say whether that's 10 or 15 or 20, okay? I, I don't know until the staff figures that out.
Well, I guess, you know, because, you know, like she said, this was based upon a discussion almost two years ago.
Right.
You know, and here we are. And so, I think we should set them up with the most specific, you know, direction and process understood to all. So, since your examples both seem to be related to CCNR-covered neighborhoods.
And non. That's why I use Newlands as an example.
Yeah. But why don't they have, you know, one citywide HOA meeting of HOAs that have single-family to understand, you know, the analysis in that and an illegal analysis too?
Totally fine with that. If that's what makes sense.
And have a legal analysis too. Because if the legal analysis is, "City of Reno, you can't do it. You can't override through your zoning regulations, HOAs," then put that off the table.
Right.
You know, so, and then we take it into another discussion in my worldview, which is the Nevada Legislature in Carson City. But, you know, that's how I would do it. I just, I'm really hung up on your certain neighborhoods because it sounds rather kind of exclusionary, and I don't want to have an exclusionary concept up, out there, which is either, you know, other neighbors feel they're being burdened, or some neighborhoods feel that they're not getting a development right that they want. So, I think, I think that's kind of, you know, where I'm looking for a little more clarity from you.
Okay. Well, let me just say this in the motion.
Hold on, Ms. Doer, hold on one second.
Yep.
So, normally after a motion's made, then we have some discussion on the motion. We've now exceeded that time significantly. I'll come back to the body to see if anyone else has additional questions, and then perhaps, Ms. Doer, we can come back to you.
Okay.
Ms. Ebert, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I, I had similar questions on just, you know, determining what, what neighborhoods that would be allowed and, you know, what that kind of process would look like. So, just kind of, you know, not to rehash what Councilmember Brecka said, but what was the second stipulation also?
I had said in certain zoning districts, using their language.
Okay.
And in certain neighborhoods. Again, they didn't identify a certain zoning district, and that would be a recommendation you're coming back with.
Okay.
And let me, let me interject. I think a good way to start with the neighborhood outreach would be to start with the NABS and then maybe expand outwards. We can create a map or list of different areas that would be impacted, and so that's kind of how we would identify neighborhoods to get input, and we would come back to the council, say, "Here's the input we've received. How would you like us to move forward?"
Yeah. Or maybe reach out to, you know, specific HOAs as well.
Right.
Okay. Look, Ms. McAden, this is a complex subject, and you are one of our subject matter experts. So, I'm trying to understand, when you hear the motion, which inserts an additional thing, you've got both the certain zoning districts and I think it was specific neighborhoods. Are you understanding what the motion is being asked to do?
Yes. From, just to clarify, from what I understand, we will go do outreach to different neighborhoods, different areas within the city, get feedback, come back to council.
I think the hard part there is that neighborhoods is a very fungible term, right? Which neighborhood, who gets to determine what a neighborhood is? I, I like your idea of starting at the NAB and seeing where that gets you. I, I don't know what it'll get you because what happens oftentimes is we ask a lot of our NABS, but we also accept the fact that our NABS are not entirely representative of all the people who live within the boundaries of the NAB. Some people still feel excluded because they can't make the location, the date, the time, whatever it is. And so, I don't want to add another layer of complexity because in the city of Reno, you have thousands of, we'll call it neighborhoods. I don't know how long that would take you and what resources we would dedicate to that. And so, I'm sort of agnostic about the change or the addition of the language. I think Ms. Doer is correct to say that it, it's sort of like hedging bets. It's saying that there are certain areas in the city that may not be appropriate for ADUs. No one believes, I don't, except for perhaps the Ward 1 member, that we should legalize ADUs everywhere in one fell swoop. I do not fall in that category either. I also think that this question of whether or not ADUs can trump CCNRs or other kind of restrictive covenants is one better left to the legislature. We are certainly not going to occupy or field preempt, to use the legal term of art, what happens there. They have done that in California through the legislature, right? And so, the legislature, in their wisdom, has said that ADUs cannot be prohibited by CCNRs. It doesn't work the other way. I don't think the city of Reno can say, "Your CCNRs, which have existed, will now be, you know, not relevant to our discussion of ADUs." So, I'll come back to Ms. Doer and see if you have any parting comments, and then we'll close this out and seek a vote.
Just one more question. Do we need a? Just one more question. Do we need to have specifically in the motion that, you know, it needs to be neighborhood and HOA or citywide communication or NAB communication?
I, I don't think it's necessary for the motion, but the motion maker might disagree with me. So I'll leave it to the motion maker.
Okay.
And could I?
Nope. Hold on a second. Ms. Doer has the floor.
Okay, um, I'll say, would allow construction of accessory dwelling units. I'm struggling. Um, in, what, what I want to do, and maybe you can help me. I want to take out this focus on zoning districts and move more to, um, areas, whether I call them neighborhood areas or planning areas. I don't know what's, do we have a, a, a unit of measurement that's smaller than a NAB?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay.
Not that's formalized.
Okay. Well, if I said certain zoning districts and left it at that, to me, that doesn't go far enough. So.
And I think what we can do is, this, like I said, this is the first step in the process. Um, we can do this public outreach. I think the concern is arbitrarily kind of carving, carving out certain areas around the city, um, because they were the ones that showed up to these meetings, which oftentimes happens too. Um, so I, I think it's important to do the research, see which neighborhoods have, um, the lot sizes that would even accommodate for an ADU. And then target those areas with our outreach. And so that's kind of why we use zoning districts, because zoning district takes into account the size of the lot. Um, it takes into account the density of that lot, um, so on and so forth.
So you're saying zoning district implies a certain size?
Correct.
It already does?
Yes.
Is there, could you tell us what that is?
Yes. So typically with a, um, um, each single family zoning district at least has a minimum lot size. And, and so that's helpful for us if, um, we were to say the minimum lot size to accommodate an ADU is 9,000 square feet. I'm just throwing this out there. Then we could go and say, these zoning districts have a minimum lot size of 9,000 square feet. We could map it throughout the city. We can say these areas will be impacted. So let's do outreach in these, these areas. Of course, we'll do outreach citywide because it, it affects everybody. Um, but that's a way we could kind of help target our outreach.
What if I said in certain zoning districts and certain parameters, because that's what you're getting at, with specific design standards?
Great.
Does that hit, hit it?
Well, Ms. Doer, as you know, there's a motion that's been made, a second that's been made. So we have some procedural hoops to get through. So our legal counsel will let us move forward. Do you have a different motion that you are proposing than the one you've already made and has been seconded by Councilmember Martinez?
Um, no.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
You know, I am not supportive. I, I think it's a very.
Ms. Breckis, I haven't recognized you, but I understand that you're voting no. Can I make sure that we get the motion and the vote count done right? Ms. Clerk, I'll ask for a roll call.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. Councilmember Breckis?
Yeah, I vote no. May I have a few minutes to talk about?
We'll come to it afterwards. Thank you so much. The, I'll record the vote.
Doer?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Ebert?
Uh, yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Reese?
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Now I'm going to come to you, Ms. Breckis. Normally we don't come after a motion.
Yeah, I tried to weigh in, I tried to weigh in before the vote was called. Here's the flaws I see, and I, I really need to emphasize that we have very junior staff focusing on this. And staff that wasn't around in 2016 when we got very close to an ordinance and it was drawn up and everything. And I feel that we're sending them out with kind of a thankless directive on how to get this forward. And I think we need to take a little more ownership at this point in time if we want to.
Understand.
I think what we should do is we should bring the 2016 ordinance forward. We should look at it. The motion should have said the 2016 ordinance is the starting place. I think that the comment of, you know, go with zoning districts and 9,000 square feet, I think it was 9,000 square feet, was the 2016 ordinance. Um, and I think staff should bring that ordinance to us. And you let us, because we have so many new members, look at it template by template and say, you know, this is where the parameters of how the council wants to see this. We want your response on this because otherwise you're just going to go into a neighborhood advisory board. Do you want an order, you know, meeting? Do you want an ADU or not? You really need a little more context to visualize it. And I was also uncertain because you were saying lot size, um, but you were also offering that they could be, um, detached and attached, correct? Did, yeah. So anyway, I just, I think that we should have, I don't know because I think we're sending them out with a flawed directive that is not framing the discussion properly. We got so far in 2016, this council should look at that ordinance, give the direction and put, and get the feedback on the parameters of that ordinance. That's how I wanted to go forward, and that's why I voted no. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Breckis. We'll close out this agenda item and move on to the final agenda item for today, item B6. Mr. Flansburgh, welcome and good afternoon. Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this item?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. We do not have any public comment on this item, nor do we have anyone registered.
Understand. Thank you so much. Mr. Flansburgh, pleasure to see you in chambers.
Good afternoon. For the record, John Flansburgh. I can be quick.
Famous last words.
I can be quick. Um, these are the list of projects that council has approved to date, even including the 1.45 million as of the last council meeting. Um, so as you're aware, and as we've been discussing today, the, um, there was allowing a legislation that passed. We, in, in 2019 and 2020, an ordinance came for the council that allowed for subsidies to occur through the sewer enterprise fund. Uh, to date, we're at 7.3 million. Um, the only thing that happens during these is that we have to come up with a, um, uh, we have to make the, council has to make determination that, uh, the sewer fund will not be adversely impaired in its order, ability to pay its bonds and other obligations. For the record, our bond debt service last year was 6.5 million. So revenue was 77 million. So there's a, we don't have, we're not set up like some utilities that have a large amount of debt. Um, we try to cover a lot of projects pay as you go. When we do go into debt, it's for capacity projects. Our current program really needs to establish some fiscal limitations because all expenditures without offsetting revenues are going to have a negative impact to the sewer fund. And then, um, just projects that have been approved by fiscal year, um, uh, just showing up here about a million dollars the first two fiscal years, uh, 3.6 in '23 and 1.7 currently, uh, fiscal year to date. Now, um, recommendations going, uh, recommendations I would bring to you today uh, would be to set up a, a limit of $4 million. How did I get $4 million, you might ask? That's a good question. We have two projects that we currently know would expect that may come forward. Um, one online drive, one in Orvada Street. That's a total of about $1.6 million. Um, they haven't come forward yet. So we don't, those are the only two projects that we're aware of. Um, so if we put an additional $4 million down, we'd still have 2.4 million. Um, there currently, as of today, uh, there's another round going out, uh, for affordable housing projects to go to, uh, Monica's group. And, um, and we don't know what those are going to be yet. So the 4 million additional really is taking into account that there's about 1.6 that we expect probably would come forward that we're aware of, and then that would leave additional 2.4 to the end of fiscal year '25, so about the next 18 to 20 months. Uh, so we would, we recommend that setting aside of 4 million, so we have a cap, something we can budget towards. Also, um, we do a, uh, every two years, we do a sewer fund sufficiency study, uh, where we go through and determine that the rates that we're currently getting in the user fee is going to be enough to cover the, um, expenditures that we have in projects going forward. And that, that'll be sufficient enough for, uh, the sewer fund to operate. We are recommending that you direct us to include some sort of an annual subsidy program into that sufficiency review that will occur next December, that we could report back to you in January 2025. And finally, during that same general timeframe of early 2025, when we're doing budgeting for fiscal year '26, that we look at alternative funding, uh, sources for your consideration for this program. And that is my quick report.
Well, you weren't, uh, you didn't lie to us, Mr. Flansburgh. I appreciate that. Look, I'll start off by saying, um, again, you are someone who I greatly appreciate and thank for your service to this community. I know that, um, you probably did not think that in your years of serving this community, you would be weighing the impact of sewer fees and affordable housing. Like those are not necessarily the two things. But given that we are where we are with the state of law in Nevada, it has been one of the tools that we've had in the toolbox. I appreciate your willingness to sort of step out in faith as this council has supported those affordable housing projects over the last several years. And of course, no one believes that they, uh, impact negatively the sewer fund in a way that would cause it to collapse. But you have charted for us what is the responsible thing to do, which is think about the sustainability of such a program. And I appreciate that as well. Um, I am generally in favor of what you've identified here. I suppose the one question I have is, what happens if in the fiscal year that we are, um, saying that we would limit the number of allocations that we could make, some fabulous program comes along or project comes along, and it is something that we are generally in favor of, but which without the credit, the subsidy would not, um, pencil. Uh, because what I hear sometimes people say, um, and even folks who are well-meaning and well-intentioned is that they feel like this is somehow our effort at subsidizing developers. And, and I just don't see it that way. I, I see it as a very complex, layered situation in which, uh, the development community, which is a small group of developers who are even playing in the affordable housing space, are trying to make everything work for everybody. I don't think any of them are, you know, becoming fabulously wealthy on the back of developing affordable housing projects. They really have a desire to do it, and they have a heart for this community. So how do we navigate that?
Um, I think there's a couple of things that we can do. One, of course, you set the limit here. We can come back to you when we have real-time information and let you know where we stand with the sewer fund. And if there's something that's going to take it over a half a million dollars or something, maybe there's, there's discussion. You set the limit here, you can unset it and do something different in the real time of knowing where we're at. This is more of a tool for us to help us understand what, what is potentially that can come forward. Second of all, you could look at the overall program parameters. Uh, we have certain amount of percentages that are, um, that we reduce the sewer connection fee by, depending on what kind of, uh, you know, 60% AMI, 50% AMI, what those projects may be. And, and we could look at some of those to determine if there's, what do we want to incentivize and where? How does that work? And what's, what, what's our end goal? We can, we can revisit those.
Well, let me ask a related question then. If we, when we do provide the subsidy out of this particular bucket, how do we ensure that the project remains in an affordability component and for what period of time? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
Sure. So that's part of the overall. I mean, Monica certainly can.
Or maybe Ms. Ballroth will be, is also here. I, I make an assumption that we, you know, button, the buttons take the suspenders. Ms. Ballroth, welcome.
Yeah, I thank you. Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. Um, the ordinance, um, requires annual reporting. We recorded deed restriction on the property, which if they fall out of compliance with, then, um, what happens is Alina is recorded for the amount of the connection fees.
And for what period of time?
They have, uh, by law, by ordinance, they have to keep it in place 20 years.
Great. Thank you so much. Great clarity. Appreciate it. Any comments from the dais? Ms. Breckis?
I mean, I've, I've been raising the flag on this one for some time, um, and I think you're getting there reasonably well. Um, and I'm, you know, really focused on the details here. Um, so you said 4 million through the end of '25 because through the home or the Q app, um, you know, the home or the, the tax credits, that's what you know is coming down the, down the pipeline?
That's correct. There's two projects.
And they're always tied to that, correct?
Generally.
Yeah, no, I think they have, I think all the ones that you put up before do have tax credit or home money in there. Yeah, Monica's, Ms. Cochran's nodding yes. You know, the affordability, I think, maybe is a little bit shorter because those are required to be in 40-year affordability. So maybe we, you know, as you revise it, you sync it up. But I, I think, I think that's good. Now, in terms of the 4 million, I don't know. You know, you say you do this every two-year sewer sufficiency and we're low debt. But, you know, I see stranded asset up there, $65 million with a, uh, can only get halfway, you know, done. And just sat through Tonworth, and it looks like there's a lot over there. So, you know, I want to know, you know, I, I see a lot of need up there. You know, I see, we need every dollar. But I also realize that you have a very generous, I don't support it, escalating sewer fund, which I heard about from people this week because the sewer bills went out with the escalating. But, um, but, you know, presumably when you do your suitability, um, that, you know, with 4 million's the number, 4 million's the, the number. So I think, I think that can be fine. And, and if you want to set it in every two years, I mean, the application process is going to be interesting too. Um, because, you know, the Housing Authority might want to come in or, or so on. But we manage, um, housing of, I mean, I think you could sync that up through those other processes of who, who gets to be an application, you know, application, qualifying application, and then within the year, who gets, who gets it, you know? Um, because their timelines are outlined. The, the one that I just want everyone to be honest is this alternate funding sources. There's no alternate funding sources. I mean, we just saw as much federal money, free money as we're going to see in the rest of our lives. And so, you know, it's not going to be general fund money. It's not coming from anywhere else. I mean, you know, I, I, I think that I, I just, I don't really agree with that. I mean, what, what, what are you, what are you saying, alternate funding? I mean, what would you see that as?
We don't know what would be available, but we, but that would be something we could bring back.
I, I don't know. I, I think it's always going to be the sewer fund. And it's much like the, the one we open up at the finance department and individuals come through. I think it is fine to tie it to, you know, the programs that get our other federal money. Here's one thing that I would suggest to you on your process is, I have heard from the affordable housing developers that it's been very, very helpful for them to go deeper into subsidy than they normally would. So my analysis on this, in addition to, you know, what's impacting the rev, you know, the overall sewer fund, is talk to those subsidized developers, you have access to their performas, and see where the sweet spot is, you know, that helps them, you know, maybe get where they need to go. And, and curb it from that, you know? Um, because some may be asking for more than they need, and we may not have to go that far, you know? That's what, I mean, what, can I ask Ms. Cochran, just, I know we're trying to get out of here. What, are you looking at those, have you looked at those performas, which you have access to and you see through the tax credit applications and seen where these sewer discounts get plugged in and what they do for the projects?
Monica Kirch for the record, uh, we do get the performas when the home applications come in. Elaine is the one that looks through those, so I'm going to let her comment on that.
What are you seeing, Ms. Weisman, on that, that subsidy is doing to the performas?
Um, I think it's, again, we're in a different market than we were a couple of years ago with rising costs. So what I've seen, like on the last application round from last year, is that it's helping them even to get to that 60 or 50%, you know, whereas they didn't need that two years ago because of, you know, the costs were much lower. So it's helping them even to get to that affordability threshold.
Yeah, so it's, so you're saying, they're saying right now that what I'm hearing is it's making a project go or not?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we know that. If that's the bar, that's, that's a good one.
Ms. Weisman, can you just make sure to stay your name for the record? Thank you so much.
Yes, Elaine Weisman for the record.
Thank you.
Because as we craft this project, I think we need to balance what it is doing to these tax credit or home projects. And maybe that's where other money comes in. I don't believe there is other money. Um, and then what it's doing to the overall sewer fund.
Thank you, Ms. Breckis. Any other questions? Ms. Doer, the floor is yours.
Um, I, um, like where you're going. I would add two caveats, um, and there could be more that I'm thinking about. One is you mentioned 20-year affordability, but I really think we need to be looking at 30. Um, so during our tenure, so many of these projects have come up where they're losing the affordability. Maybe at 15 years, some at 20. I think that this is sort of a carrot and stick. I want to provide this waiver of sewer fees to these homes. But I think that in exchange, they should commit to keeping affordable longer. That's my thought. And the second thought is, we've had a discussion at the council already about the fact that, and I'm seeing this in affordable units in my ward, which is that they start affordable, but then the rents start going up because they can float with the AMI. And as our wages rise in Reno, those rents can rise, even though these might be senior or people that are on fixed income, and they can't rise. So I would like to see two caveats. One, retain affordability as long as possible, at least 20, but I would. So I would like to see two caveats. One, retain affordability as long as possible, at least twenty, but I would recommend thirty years. And two, um, focus on the rent restrictions. I uh Monica is very familiar with what I'm dealing with, where rents, um, because of other initiatives, other programs are going up ten, twenty, thirty, forty, even, I have people that are looking at hundred percent rent increases. Okay, it's not sustainable. So if we're gonna do this, I think we have to ask for something back.
Again, Monica Kirch for the record, the twenty year uh deed restriction is what's set up in N R S, but all of these projects are Lytec or home projects, which have thirty plus years on them.
Then we should just put it in, is my suggestion.
Uh, they are, they are deed restricted for those years per their other funding sources, but this particular tool is set up through N R S with a twenty year restriction, so they're still restricted regardless.
I'm not sure what you just said. They all are thirty year or there are some are twenty year.
All of them are at least thirty years. Some are fifty, but not because of this subsidy.
I understand.
This subsidy through N R S requires twenty years. I'm just saying they have a lot, because of other funding sources.
Minimum of twenty years, can we max, can we go bigger? That's my question. Maybe it's a legal question. Ms. Balls, Roeth is behind you.
Susan Ballroth, Deputy City Attorney. The twenty years is what we put in the ordinance.
Yes.
We can amend the ordinance to thirty.
That's what I'm asking. I would like to see that.
Duly noted.
Just to sync up all the programs and that there's not these different requirements. And the second thing is, I would like to see it so that we've given this incentive, they've built the housing, the people are in, and this is what I'm dealing with, five years in, now we're looking at very substantial rent increases that they cannot meet, especially seniors. So the housing division's already taken steps in some units, right? Some units to restrict these rent increases. But I'm saying if you're gonna participate in this program, it should apply here.
Yeah, so, and for the record, John Flansburgh, Regional Infrastructure. I would just say that every one of these agreements comes before you, uh, as they have, uh, before they are able to obtain this money. So we hear what you're saying. Um, I don't-
Well, even if you don't build in a number in this master ordinance, if you just say that they can propose a period, whatever, or amount, I don't, it doesn't have to be the same for every development, but it's, we we shouldn't end up, we're giving money, we're waiving, and then they're coming back with these large rent increases.
Hold on, Ms. Breckus?
I think you're really not talking about the same thing. I think you're talking about earlier generation Lytec pro- program, projects. Because the ordinance was crafted, even though we have the twenty year, but they were crafted to go hand in hand with ones that have the longer affordability periods on them.
So why wouldn't we want to sync it up?
Ms. Breckus, your point is well taken. I think what Ms. Duer is trying to say is that um she's dealing with some very specific examples of this currently in her ward, and whether they were built thirty years ago and are just at the end of it, or they were built five years ago, they're not necessarily things that have been the recipient of this program. Um, Ms. Duer, I think you're asking about whether or not we would amend our ordinance, which we do not obviously have in front of us today.
Right.
To account for that, which might be something that we'll have to come back about.
Well, it says give direction, so I'm trying to provide some direction.
Yep, about the sustainability of the current program. And so if there's a different thing that we have, we'll have to, I think, take that in due course. Do you agree?
I'm not sure, because what I'm saying is that if we're, you're talking about an existing ordinance. What is our existing ordinance?
Well, Ms. Ballroth just told you, the existing ordinance says twenty years and could be amended if we brought it back through the ordinance process. Not today, and certainly in this motion.
Right, understood that. So I'm I'm trying to give where I'd like to see it going.
Yeah, and today we're talking about a funding source, um, putting uh limits on the funding source and directing staff to review the sustainability uh through a sufficiency review um in in a year and come back to you during the budget process of uh January twenty twenty five and beyond.
I don't know how else to be clear. This is our topic. We're discussing it. This is what I'd like to see.
Um. Noted.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Duer. Any additional questions on this item? Okay, I'm gonna venture a motion. I move to approve staff recommendations to approve an additional four million spending cap for sewer connection fee reductions out of the sewer fund through the end of the year fiscal year twenty five. Second, to give direction to staff to evaluate the sustainability impact to sewer user fees to maintain annual subsidy for the press per the biannual sewer fund sufficiency review due January twenty twenty five. And third, to determine alternate funding sources for consideration during the fiscal year twenty six budget discussions. Can I get a second? I have a motion that I have made, a second by Ms. Taylor. Any additional questions or comments at this time?
I'll just comment that when it comes back, I'm gonna look for some of the policy suggestions I've made incorporated in.
And Ms. Duer, I understand your inquiry, and your heart is absolutely in the right place. I think for me to get there when that does come back, we're gonna have to understand those performas.
Exactly.
And what it means to change the funding, funding metrics. Uh, I don't know what it means today, so I'll reserve judgment as to whether I would support increasing it.
Yeah, I agree.
In in theory, Ms. Duer is not incorrect. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
Got a book for this meeting?
Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Reese. So just again to clarify for the record, we are going to take no action on items B four and B seven.
That's true.
Okay, so we're moving on to item C one, which is City Council comments on boards, commissions, et cetera.
Any colleagues or comments?
Yeah, I I do. I'm I'm, I just, I'll bring it up, um, because it's a question. We we skipped over B four, correct? Um, Madam, we lost our city manager. Madam, um, Assistant City Manager, do you have a um idea when that will come onto the council agenda?
I'm looking at bringing that back uh next week.
Oh, okay. And then, um, which other item did we skip?
Seven and seven.
And what was seven?
Um, the Community Foundation.
And when?
Same.
Okay, so you, so, okay, because I have my agenda review yesterday for the, what's our next meeting, the eighth?
The eighth.
Okay, so you're planning on putting these on the eighth?
Be ideal if we can get an agenda sometime.
And then I did ask my um, my liaison um yesterday, but haven't heard back. And I didn't know if it was related to today's meeting, but I seem to have a hold for a council workshop on, oh, it got canceled.
Yes, on the twenty ninth.
On the twenty ninth. I didn't know that. That is not happening. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments by the boards and commissions, updates from any of the colleagues? Okay, I'll close item Charlie one and come back to public comment.
Thank you. So we're opening item D one, which is closing public comment for today's meeting. We did have a few individuals earlier who wished to speak but have subsequently left, and so just for the record, I would like to state that we have, oh, we do have one public commenter via Zoom, Dora Martinez. And while we get her transitioned over, I would just like to say that we did receive um correspondence or voicemails after four P M. yesterday, which were either associated with an item or general in nature. There are four items of support, two items of opposition, and two items of concern for item D one. All right, Dora, we have moved you over. If you could unmute, state your name for the record, and I will begin the timer.
Can you guys hear me?
We can, thank you.
Martinez, welcome. Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon. I apologize. I'm on the R T C access bus, um, traveling, so I'm sorry about the background noise. Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and the astounding, awesome um council folks. This is Dora Martinez, and I do represent the Nevada Council of the Blind and the Nevada Disability Peer Action Coalition liaison. And we just want to thank everyone who are trying to talk about um affordable housing. Um, we just wanna be, um, what's the word I'm looking for? We just want to put disability in the forefront of your thoughts while you guys are talking about affordable housing. Lot of people who are disabled, like what um Ms. Duer was talking about, are are um COLA does not raise as much as the inflation and the cost of living allowance. So please put that in your forefront. We do not want to see a lot of people with disability being homeless, given the fact that the care shelter is not adequate to support or um uh people who are visually impaired, hard of hearing, or people who are wheelchair users. And we do not want to, um, you know, I know that there's transitioning and and doing all that and trying to keep people, um, the homeless population um out of the streets. But if people with disability go to those places, it's pretty scary, especially when you are blind and have a service dog or hard of hearing or deaf. You need American Sign Language um accommodations. So please, um, thank you so much for the A M I, which would be great if it was a little bit, you know, thirty percent. But, you know, we we gotta start somewhere, and like what Madam Mayor always say, we gotta do better. And I know that you guys are trying, and it's, and it's awesome to see um that everybody are are trying to work and um compromising. So thank you so much for all that you do. Um, I also just want to thank uh um Jamie, the housing person there. Vice Mayor Reese, I know I always see you on these emails, because if I don't, I don't get anywhere. Uh, I feel like I have to see see either of you all to get somewhere, but with Jamie, she's always on top of things, and I know she's busy. And I know that she knows that I try my best to help um people who are disabled and seniors, because they come to me. Um, they're afraid of you guys, and I don't know why. Um, you guys are are, you know, friendly and and easy to talk to. Um, especially Jenny Breckus, when she bumps into me, I run into her, um, she always say, hi, Dora, it's Jenny, so I know who it is. And 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 also my um word rep, um, Ms. Taylor. So thank you so much for always uh listening and and uh and trying to work things out in our beautiful, friendly, biggest little city. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thanks, Ms. Martinez. Have a great day.
All right, Vice Mayor Reese, with that, we have no additional public comments, so I am moving on to item E, which is a a motion for adjournment.
A motion by Ms. Taylor, a second by Mr. Martinez. Any additional questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.